Okay, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Watera, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Paulette Wajato.
Present.
Councilmembers Roland Barretta. He's absent. Siva Campos. Here.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Jim Klein.
Here.
Mike Pusley.
Here.
Everett Roy.
Present.
Dan Suckley.
Here.
City manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
Seat attorney, city attorney Miles Rizley. Mayor and council, a quorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Great, thank you, Ms. Watera. So this morning, we're gathered today, excuse me, for our budget workshop that will include, but not limited to, water and wastewater. And so I believe we're going to do wastewater first. And for the record, Councilman Barretta will be with us. He's just running a little bit behind in another business meeting he has.
Right, that's why we're going to do wastewater first, mayor and council. And this, we have a lot of material. This presentation is, we were working on it till late last night, 124 slides. So it's meant to answer the questions that the council has had since we presented the budget on the 25th of July. We have our full team here, as well as our consultants that help us in the rate modeling. So we hope to make sure council clearly understands the recommendations and the rates that are included in this budget. And then, just as a reminder, tomorrow, we have a city council meeting. And then Friday is our final scheduled budget work session with the city council beginning at nine o'clock. And we'll do the capital budget then, engineering department, and some of our visitor facilities funds, our hotel occupancy tax, and wrap up with potential amendments that we've collected so far from the council's input from these work sessions. So, yeah, so with that, we're going to turn it over to Mike Murphy, our chief operating officer, over Corpus Christi Water.
Thank you, Peter. Good morning, mayor and council.
Good morning.
Mike Murphy, chief operations officer, Corpus Christi Water. So, let's see, if we can go ahead and get the slideshow up. Thank you. So just a quick tour of our table of contents this morning. We're going to go over the consent, this is wastewater, consent decree agreement, fiscal year, 23, achievements, proposed budget, and we'll take an in-depth look at the status of our capital improvement projects. And then I'll bring Reba George, Assistant Director over Support Services, to introduce water rates and cost components. We'll have Andy McCartney from New Gen Strategies and Solutions to discuss our rate model. And then we'll go through the same respective layout with the water fund. So just a reminder of how Corpus Christi Water is funded. It is an enterprise fund that provides essential services through fees and charges. Mission statement, for over 130 years, the city of Corpus Christi has been a vital, has been vital as a water supplier of the region. Our commitment to 500,000 residents across the coastal bend is to plan, produce, and deliver water that is affordable, drought-proof, sustainable, and reliable. And make no doubt about it, we are the regional provider of water for the coastal bend. This is a quick snapshot of our executive team on our organization chart. Corpus Christi Water is 590 employees, and we have 330 employees in our water department and 200 and, I believe this is, 60 in our wastewater department. Our surface water sources, Choke Canyon is 662,000 acre feet. Lake Corpus Christi, 31,000 acre feet. Lake Texana, 35,000 acre feet. And then we get water from the Lower Colorado River, delivering through the Mary Rose Pipeline. A little bit about Corpus Christi Water. We have four service water sources we just mentioned. We have one water treatment plant, which is the Owen Stevens Water Treatment Facility, one water quality laboratory, seven elevated storage tanks, three repump stations, over 1,800 miles of water distribution pipelines, 100,000 water connections. That's not right, the zero miles of service lines. What is the number on that, Wes?
112.
Okay. Oh, I see.
Yeah, we're checking to see what's wrong with the setup here.
There's something.
PowerPoint on the screen's not.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little bit different.
There's something wrong with the, I think they're using, there we go.
There we go, okay.
Yeah, we're using a different vert.
Yeah, sorry about that. So back to, we have 800, 1,821 miles of water distribution pipelines, 100,000 feet of water connection, or 100,000 water connections, 1,500 miles of water service lines. In the wastewater side of the things, we have six wastewater treatment plants, 100 and, or just over 1,200 miles of water pipeline, 106 lift stations, 93,000 wastewater connections, and 1,300 miles, or just over 1,300 miles of service lines, wastewater. Okay, let's try to see if it's still. Talking about the consent decree, we are in the third year of our consent decree, and we'll start the fourth year come January 1st. This is a 15-year agreement, the city, EPA, TCU, and the Department of Justice, that requires the city to upgrade its wastewater infrastructure by achieving various milestones during the time period. The agreement became effective January 2021. So as part of that, we've, some of the things that we've been working on, a $14 million lift station upgrades, $15 million to begin construction of Oso Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase Two, $15 million to begin construction of Greenwood Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase One, 1.6 million citywide SCADA upgrade, continued upgrade to the collection system, and then continued inspection of cleaning the collection system and continued preventive maintenance. Next slide. Okay, initiate, so the achievements in our wastewater department. We initiated the IDIQ contract on pipe replacement, manhole rehabilitation, associated collection system improvements, and then identify and initiate design for large capacity constraint projects, increase public education and outreach. Sewer line cleaning, so this is consent decree actions, and I want to recognize Assistant Director Nick Winkelman for his work. He oversees our consent decree program, he and his engineering team. So you can see from this chart that we are way ahead of our three-year goal for the consent decree, which is very important for the well-being of our city and avoid any repercussions from EPA or TCUQ. So sewer line cleaning, we're 120% of goal, line inspections, 128% of goal, and then force main inspections, we're at 100%. Air relief valve inspections, we're at 160% of our goal, and then lift station inspections, all the stations have been cleared. Okay?
Go ahead.
I just want to say, I'm glad to see that you have the bullet point there about increasing public education and outreach, because I think this is something that the public doesn't really understand and know a lot about. I get comments about this all the time from constituents about where are we at on our lawsuit with EPA. So we need to do a better job of getting out in the word of what we're doing and where we are on this.
Yep. Well, we'll be bringing our updates. We're planning on coming back to council in October to update you on where we are through the first three years of the consent decree, and then we'll precede that and then follow that with the necessary public awareness. Yes, sir. Thank you. So our proposed budget for fiscal year '24 is $83.7 million, and you can see how that is broken down into this pie chart, how we've got things. But so the revenues for 2024, we're estimating those to be somewhere in the 95.65 million-dollar price range. And then we've got expenditures budgeted at 83.75. A variance, you can see the variance over at the side, 14.34, and then 4.92. Currently in wastewater, 232 positions out of 260 are currently occupied. So fiscal year '24 proposed budget by service, treated wastewater, 31.9 million, maintain and repair wastewater collection system, 20.8, manage lift stations, 7.7 million, debt service, 20 million, administrative service charge and support, general fund transfer, 3.3, that equals our total expenditures for, or anticipated expenditures. So year-over-year costs, we talk about this a lot, I know, several meetings at council, we talk about how the prices of material and service and goods have gone up in wastewater treatment, so treated wastewater, 27, $27 million, anticipate FY '24, 31.9. You can kind of go down the list here, I don't really think I need to read them all, but you can see how everything has gone up, 18%, 16%, 35% to managed lift stations, debt service is going up 9%, administrative service and charges, 3%, for a total increase of And so more specifically, the year-over-costs, just show you what, how prices and inflation and coming out of COVID have impacted wastewater treatment process. Sodium hyperchlorite has gone up 138%. And these are all things that are critical in wastewater treatment. Sodium bisulfate, 67%. Polymer, 24%. Wastewater sludge disposal, annual lump sum is up by 27%. So manhole, these are obviously either internal or contractual services. Manhole repair, replacement inspection, gone up 98%. 24-inch ring sanitary sewer covers, 135%. Electricity per kilowatt hour has gone up 17%. So progress, this is, this is something that we're very proud of, and I know this is, this is a question that has come up in prior presentations from other departments, but in 2023, we had budgeted for 27 projects at a cost of $89 million, just over $89 million. So currently, we have one project in design, I'm sorry, pre-design, 14 projects in design, seven projects that are under construction, and we've completed five projects for a total cost of just over $80 million. Now, out of, out of this, we've had some delays in projects that were out of our control, and we've got those listed here, a Greenwood wastewater treatment plant, the Airline Road Lift Station, Williams Drive Lift Station, Force Main, and then Twin Line Rehabilitation. These are all either in pre-design, we have or have had engineering issues, land acquisition issues, and actually, one of them is waiting on a grant.
And Murphy, can I just add to this?
Yes, sir.
So we've transitioned from the operating analysis to the capital budget. Some council members have questioned, can we really do the capital improvement program that we laid out last year? This slide here is a kind of a report card on that, that pretty much says yes, we're doing it. So all the projects are either complete, under construction, in design, with the exception of five, or four, for reasons that somewhat out of our control, like land acquisition, the landowners won't sell as fast as we thought, and we're doing some redesign in some of the projects. But clearly, this shows that 80 million of the 89 million are in progress. So contracts have been let for design, contracts have been let for construction, or the work is complete. And Murphy's going to go over the detail in the next couple of slides.
Yep. So the team took a lot of time preparing these slides, hopefully to address some of the questions that, like I said, you've had earlier with other departments. And so like Peter was saying, we created what we call a wastewater report card, for some reason, I'm not shifting, there we go. And so what we did is, we laid out all 27 projects for you to see, and then we would check a box, I mean, that's how we're sort of following up on this, is we check a box on, if they're on schedule, and if, for whatever reason, they're delayed, then we put that information out to the far right. But you can see the projects that we're currently working on, the 27 projects that we're currently working on. Next slide. And it continues. And this should line up with what is in your capital project budget? All right. So wastewater CIP proposed for '24, $126 million. We've got it laid out into water systems, wastewater utility support, streets. This is, this is projects that is critical, so that once the street is planned, we get in there and do the necessary repair, replacement work, so that we don't have to go back in and dig up a brand-new street. Wastewater treatment plants, 52 million, that's a big one. Wastewater system maintenance, 31, and then wastewater lift stations, 14. And then the continuation of the strategic plan to do wastewater treatment plants, lift stations, and also the collection system itself. Okay. The FY '24, these are projects that were not planned, but were in the FY '23 budget, but were not scheduled to begin until fiscal year '24. And then the city manager has added one new project to this list, it's the northwest, at the top of the list, is Northwest Boulevard Wastewater Infrastructure Upgrade. As you can see, the budget layout for the next two years on this one.
And that one, if I can, we did something similar in the London area, which is, there's a lot of land that developers are developing on and putting septic tanks in instead of connecting to the sewer, because there's no main sewer trunk line. The city council approved two years ago to do, to do that in the London area. And so we're upfronting the cost for the design and the construction. We know that property taxes from additional homes being built will pay us back over time. The same scenario exists in the Cal Allen area. It's a tough area to develop because of the topography and numerous other reasons. So you can see the land that's undeveloped. We know that this is a prime place to build. We know there's interest for. We know there's interest for families to live here. That may work in Centon and the steel plant and the support industries that are there. And so we're recommending that we go ahead and put this main trunk line in. And then developers can tie into it rather than not building at all or using septic tank as a solution for sewer. So that's the one new project that was added.
Thank you, Peter.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Councilman.
So, Michael, on your, page 19, where you're showing your CIP plan, your $126.3 million. How are we paying, how is that going to be paid for? I think that's, how much of that is bonded indebtedness? How much of it is going to be through revenue?
Right now, it's all going to be debt. We'll be issued to pay for those projects.
Well, I know it's debt, but how are we going to address that?
It's revenue-backed debt, so it's utility. So the utility fees, in this case, the wastewater fees, support the debt that's issued to put these infrastructure improvements in, that benefit the utility.
So this will all be repaid through fees?
Yes. Okay, there's a little bit of money from the American Rescue and Recovery, the Opera Funds.
Okay.
But the majority is utility-backed. One thing we'll talk about later is, we do have a recommendation to eliminate the fee increase in wastewater. But what that does is, it doesn't allow us to do any pay-as-you-go financing for capital investment. So it just kind of pushes down the road the issue for the rate payer, which is paying interest instead of using some pay-as-you-go financing.
Okay.
But that's a good question, and that's the answer, which is all debt funded.
All debt funded.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And you can see, back to the last, no, go back to that slide right there. You can see, we've got the potential line laid out for you to see where that's going in the Northwest Boulevard area. Okay, now we go to the next slide. All right, so I'm sure this is the part that we're all waiting for, or at least half of it. We're going to go into our wastewater rate modeling, our study. And I'm going to bring up Reba George first to introduce our modeling team, our study team. And so Reba is the Assistant Director in Corpus Christi Water over Support Services. So Reba, I will hand the ball.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. We wanted to go and go ahead and review our wastewater rate structure quickly as we did back on the 19th of July. As a reminder, we review our rates, water and wastewater, every two years. And our proposed adopted rates would be effective in January 2024. And one of the goals, one of the biggest goals this year in our rate-setting approach is for us to create some equity between our inside and outside large volume, inside and outside city limit customers. Our wastewater charges have two components. We have a minimum charge, which includes the first 2,000 gallons. And then there's a volume charge per 1,000 gallons for every 1,000 gallons after that first 2,000 gallons. Our residential customers pay based on a winter quarter average, which is calculated during the winter months. Then their monthly charge remains the same until it's recalculated. And our commercial and multifamily customers are based on their water usage during that particular month. This is just a snapshot from our fiscal year '22 year-end annual billed revenue laid out here by customer class. Last summer, the city council approved an agreement to hire NewGen Strategies and Solutions to conduct a water and sewer study to develop and to develop a rate model that would replace the one that we'd been using since 2005. Our kickoff meeting for the project was held on August 30th, 2022. And Corpus Christi Water staff has been working with NewGen, meeting weekly, and more recently, daily, in the process. I'd like to introduce the main project team this morning as they've come from, to be with us today and to present some of the results of the water and sewer study. Andy McCartney, Principal Consultant of NewGen's Water and Wastewater Practice, has served as Project Manager for Corpus Christi Water. Mr. McCartney joined NewGen in early 2022. Prior to joining NewGen, he served as a Capital Finance Manager for Fort Worth Water for over eight years. And in addition, Andy served as an Assistant Finance Director for the City of Burleson and was Principal Consultant for Black and Beach for over nine years. Andy has also served as an instructor for the National Fundamentals of Water and Wastewater Cost of Service and Rate Design Class, sponsored by Electric Utility Consultants, since 2017. Additionally, he served five terms as Vice Chair of AWWA's Rates and Charges Committee, and now serves as Chair of the Rates and Charges Committee, which produces the Water Supply Manual of Practice M1 titled Principles of Water Rates, Fees, and Charges, which I believe Mr. Hernandez has a very early edition of. During his career, Andy has provided a variety of services, including but not limited to wholesale and retail cost of service and rate design studies, user fee studies, impact fee credit calculations, strategic utility services planning, economic feasibility studies, valuations, utility billing system audits, process mapping of operations, stormwater fee models, and litigation support throughout the United States. Andy has also numerous years of experience providing auditing services for local governments. I'd also like to introduce Tia Carnes, Senior Consultant of NewGen's Water and Wastewater and Energy Practices, and has served as Lead Analyst for our Corpus Christi Water project. Ms. Carnes joined NewGen in the fall of 2019 while she was completing her MBA. During her career, Tia has provided a variety of services, including appraisals and valuations, cost of service and rate design, organizational effectiveness training, and public power feasibility studies. Her clients include but are not limited to the City of San Diego, California, the City of Phoenix, Arizona, CPS Energy, Coachella Valley Water District, and Fayetteville, North Carolina. I would like to introduce now Andy to go ahead and take over and provide us with some of the results from the water and sewer rate study.
Just before we get started, I'd like to make one comment about the last pages. When we talk about commercial, when we break down the different classes here, customer classes, residential, multifamily, and commercial, we all take for granted that we understand what commercial means. But not everybody who reads this, and this becomes public information, understands what a commercial user is.
Right.
And I think it would be helpful for us somewhere in these reports to define what a commercial user is.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. And Reba can give us a definition now? Give us some examples, Reba?
Well, we have a number of different types of commercial customers, as you've noted. Everything from our large hospitals, to our restaurants, to business offices, our school districts. It's very broad.
But we'll get a definition, Councilman, and then...
Well, that's my point exactly. I mean, we, you know, the public needs to understand what a commercial user is.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, good suggestion, and we'll make sure we include that in future material. And we've stated that here. One other note is that large industry, you'll see that on the water side. They are not sewer customers, they're not wastewater customers of the city, CCW. They manage their own wastewater, if they have any.
Well, we all understand that, but when you say "commercial", some people might equate that to large industry.
Right, that's why I'm making the clarification now. Hopefully, people are listening. But our printed material, we'll make sure we make those adjustments. Yeah, good suggestion, Councilman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Reba. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. It's a pleasure to be here today. Converts back to the PowerPoint.
Yeah, there we go, okay.
All right. We talked to the agenda right now. Briefly introduce you to our firm, our project team, which you've already heard some about, and then the original proposed wastewater rates that NewGen developed.
And just, so the original, just to make sure council understands this, is the ones that we had in the proposed budget. So what we, when I presented the budget on the 25th, the quote-unquote "original rates".
Yes, sir.
That's what Andy's going to go over. Subsequently, we're going to go over a new recommendation based on community and city council input. So in the case of wastewater, it's going to be no rate increase, but we'll get to that. But Andy's going to, his whole basis for developing the proposed budget is what he's going to go over now.
Thanks, Peter. A little bit about our firm. NewGen came into inception in 2012. However, the predecessor firms go back to the mid-'80s when Jack Stowe left Touche Ross to start up his own consulting firm called Jack Stowe and Associates. Later, took on a partner, Keith Reed, Reed and Stowe. Then there was later, our current president right now at NewGen, Dave Yonkey, joined. It was Reed, Stowe, and Yonkey. And then they were acquired by RW Beck, an international consulting firm. And RW Beck was bought out by a couple of different firms, Lidos. Sometimes, if you go through the airport, you see the x-ray machines that say Lidos. It's a big international holding company. And in 2012, Jack and their employment agreements were up. So Jack and Dave decided to start NewGen and break away from Lidos. And so NewGen was started. It's got a history of serving municipalities, especially before electric utility rate cases at the PUC. They branched off early on to doing rates for water utilities, whether they're special utility districts, municipal utility districts, or municipally-owned water utilities, such as Corpus Christi. We also focus on energy, natural gas, electric, solid waste, and stormwater. We have a lot of clients throughout Texas, as well as the United States. We've done work for, as you can see, Fort Worth, Lubbock. We're currently working for Houston, as well as Austin Water right now. And I've personally done work for SAW, San Antonio Water System, in the past, when I was at Black and Beach doing wastewater consulting. Go to the next slide. Just, I won't talk about myself or Tia any, but Chris Eckert is the partner that I work for. And Chris has been a longtime consultant to South Texas Water Authority, which used to review the Corpus Christi rate model that was developed by HDR years ago, and was updated throughout time. So Chris is our, also our QAQC advisor. So he was very intimate with those contractual rates that we'll talk about on the water side for South Texas San Patricio, Nuasis County, Wicked Number Four, which is Port A, and Violet Water Supply, as well as the Alice, Beville, Mathis, and then the non-ratepayer raw water that we'll talk about on the water side. So Chris is, he teaches at the National Association of Regulatory Utility Commissioners. They have a week-long utility rate fundamentals course, and Chris has been an instructor there for several years. He also partners with me in teaching that rate fundamentals course for wastewater utility rate-setting through the EUCI that Reba mentioned. So we donate a lot of our time to these volunteer organizations, educating staff members at utilities, as well as young consultants throughout the United States.
Yeah, so Andy, in summary, you have 30-plus years of rate-setting?
Unfortunately, and I do look like it. I have aged over the years doing this, so...
So he's an expert in the field, 30 years. He's out, and then age, can you explain the AWWA real quick?
It's the American Water Works Association. It's the industry for water utilities. It sets out a lot of the manuals, especially some of the manuals of practice, not only for rate-setting, which is the M1, but other standards, such as the metering, which is M6. There's a water supply manual. They also do management of utilities, produce those manuals. And so it's of service to the water utility industry. And it's not just a national organization, but also with Canada and Mexico as well. So it really serves North and South America as well.
Okay, and it's the premier one?
It is kind of the, in accounting, we follow generally accepted accounting principles gap. And what we do on the Rates and Charges Committee is try to set those principles of rate-setting. So there's different methods you can use, you know, within setting rates. And we produce this thick manual, and we're working on the eighth edition right now. So I've got the last third of it I need to review by the middle of September while getting all my client work done. So hopefully, we'll get that to AWWA. Usually takes them a year to do all their editing and then gets published, hopefully sometime before 2024 is over with. So that's kind of the process and how I'm involved. And I joined the association in 2010. It was really limited to about 20 individuals that kind of opened it up. And when I was Vice Chair, we tried to be more inclusive and get more people to join and help out, because it's a heavy lift producing these manuals. And if, you know, the same 20 people are doing it. And our philosophy is nobody smarter than all of us put together. And so that's why we try to get as many people working on this manual as possible, because there's a diversity of views on rate-setting. And we want to capture and incorporate all those while, you know, giving a nod to the history of the rate-setting process. The M1 was first published in 1954. So there's a lot of engineering principles and operations that go into rate-setting. So, thank you, Peter. Then the next slide is very important. And it's just a reminder, you're aware of this, but utilities operate like a business, unlike the general fund. And the service being provided throughout the community is a vital resource. And it's shared by all members of the community. And so US council have to address a lot of complex challenges that the water and wastewater utility has to face, such as rising cost, increasing regulation of your water treatment plants, wastewater treatment plants, what you can discharge back into the streams, creeks, that ultimately flow into the Corpus Christi Bay. Needed infrastructure improvements, as Mr. Murphy alluded to and went through the CIP for wastewater. And you have to balance that with customer affordability. And AWWA has objectives, there's like 34 when it comes to rate design. And so we've got to balance all those. And council also has to ensure the viability and long-run sustainability of the utilities to make sure that the revenues match the cost or slightly exceed them, and make sure financial metrics are met. By financial metrics, I'm talking about cash reserves, as well as debt service coverage that the bondholders require. They want to be guaranteed that they're going to be paid back in the future. Cash reserves are important, because credit rating agencies look at your cash reserves. And the healthier balance that you have, the higher rating you can get. And so that higher credit rating means that you will pay less interest on your bonds. And it's been asked by Councilman Pusley, how much of this is debt-financed and all? Historically, Corpus Christi Water has debt-financed a lot of it, CIP. One of the recommendations you'll see later on is that we're recommending more, as Mr. Zanoni said, more pay-as-you-go type of funding. And so we're trying to increase those reserves in NewGen's proposed rates to do that. The next slide is just an overview of the entire wastewater system, how we calculate that net revenue requirement. Again, we're doing this, and for wastewater, it's not the AWWA M1. It's the Water Environment Federation, WEF. And we follow the Manual of Practice number 27, which is the financing for wastewater systems, setting the rates. So it's the water equivalent, but for wastewater. And so you have to go through the formula, how to calculate the cost of service or your net revenue requirement. And you can see the O&amp;Ms having some increases that we're alluded to. There's a lot of work involved with adhering to the terms and conditions of the consent decree that you have with EPA. The debt service is increasing as you're improving your collection system, tightening that up so that you don't get a lot of I&amp;I or inflow and infiltration. I know it hasn't rained in a long time, but when it does again, there's going to be rainfall. And those collection system pipes that aren't tight, water seeps in. And then it gets transported to the various, to the six wastewater treatment plants where it has to be treated, as if somebody had flushed a toilet or had gone down their drain. And so you're having to treat that water once it gets into the system. So when you tighten that up, then theoretically, you'll have a lot less wastewater flows to treat at the wastewater treatment plants. And so your debt service is going up to accommodate that. You can see where you've recommended for '24 and '25 to cash fund or pay-as-you-go a half-million in CIP, respectively, for those two years, because we're trying to set rates for two years, for '24 and '25. And then from these total revenue requirements, we deduct out other operating revenues. Anything you collect as a specific fee from customers that are imposing that cost on the utility, such as disconnection, connection of service, late payment fees, those revenues get taken out. You don't want to double-collect, and so that's why we're making that offset. And also, other non-operating revenues. It could be gain or loss on sale of property. It could be gain or loss on sale of property, sale of scrap material, anything that's not really due to the operations of the utility. So we deduct that out to come up with a net revenue requirement. And you can see that it's increased about nine million over the twenty-three budget or twelve point two-two percent. And then there's another increase of just over twelve point two-five percent for 2025. So a lot of this is generated by the infrastructure costs as well as the inflation that Mr. Murphy had talked about earlier with some of the treatment chemicals and other costs of services, such as when you go out and do repairs on manholes, how expensive that's gotten. And that's just not germane to Corpus Christi Water. Before I retired from Fort Worth Water, they were seeing similar increases on instruction. After the pandemic, it kind of got astronomical. And so we were having to revise our CIP plan almost weekly because we would project costs, try to account for that. Then we'd go out for bid on a construction project and it would come in overbid. So we'd have to do value engineering to try to get the fee down or try to come up with alternative funding source to take care of that increased cost.
Mr. McCartney, what is your projected fund balances for these years where you're showing these numbers?
I don't have that off the top of my head, sorry.
Reba has, Reba, you have it there? Reba has it? That's, yeah, go ahead, Reba.
The proposed fund balance at the end of twenty-four would be thirty million. And that was in our budget book page, I don't know what page it was in your budget book. But that's the twenty-four projected fund balance with the proposed rates.
That's after the twenty-five percent reserve, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So this fund has a, you know, following city council policy, there's a twenty-five percent operating reserve in the case of a catastrophic event and utility payers can't pay. That twenty-five percent reserve is there. So the thirty million was on top of that, which some in the community and the council commented seemed large. So that's how we use, we're using that, you'll see here momentarily, to not have a rate increase. We're going to draw down the fund balance in lieu of doing more pay-as-you-go financing and having longer reserves. NewGen's recommending ninety days.
From ninety days, which is twenty-five percent to a hundred and twenty days, which is about thirty-three percent.
So that thirty million could have been used for more reserves in a volatile area by the coast here. And secondly, more pay-as-you-go capital infrastructure. But we're going to not recommend that at this point based on the feedback and use that thirty million to offset the rate increase.
So what was your, you say you always want to try to keep your twenty percent or whatever?
Right, well, we have the twenty-five percent. So Reba, after, what's left after the use of the fund balance? Do you have that there, the two-year fund schedule? You know, since we're going to use some of that thirty million, what's left after?
With the proposed budget, the original proposed budget?
The new, the new one using the?
The fund, the net ending balance for wastewater would go down to twelve million.
Twelve million, so there'll be twelve million left, right?
And that gives you your twenty-five percent?
Yeah, that's on top of the twenty-five percent.
Correct.
So twelve million, if you think about it, is not a whole lot in this type of a business. One sinkhole, a wastewater line collapse, that's not scheduled, the plan, can be millions. Greenwood is a good example, where after years of, where tech's got drilled into the pipe unknowingly, after years of that, it finally gave way. That was a six million dollar unplanned expenditure. So if you have two of those a year, that twelve million is easily gone. But we're taking it from thirty to twelve. We think we can manage it. But again, it's a choice. We want to make sure people are clear about that. The choice is borrow money instead of doing some pay-as-you-go and forego having a longer reserve more than the three months. NewGen's recommending?
But the twelve, but the twelve million gives you your twenty-five percent?
That's on top of the twenty-five percent.
Yes.
That's on top of the twenty?
Yeah, that's in addition to the twenty-five percent.
So it's twelve million on top of twelve, of thirty?
What's the twenty-five percent amount?
Well, we're looking at that second year. The second year, if we, when we amend the rates by the second year of the rate, our fund balance for, net ending balance for wastewater would be twelve million. That is in addition to meeting the twenty-five percent.
Right, the twenty-five percent is about, what, fifteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Okay, so Councilman Posley, in the second year of this, and FY twenty-five, the sixteen million for the twenty-five percent reserve, well, the three-months reserve, sixteen million, then remaining in fund balances, twelve million, Reba?
Twenty-eight million.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Mr. McCartney, we're going to, we're going to have probably questions during your speech. I just asked the council to use the light system so that we can get everyone in, you know, accordingly. Councilman Klein.
Thank you. I just wanted to get some clarification on, I guess, on the fund balance. You said it's going to be at thirty, thirty million? The 2022 fund balance was twenty-nine million. That doesn't seem like a drawdown.
The 2022 ending balance is projected to be, or was seventeen million? Are you looking at the financial statement?
Yeah. Yeah, Councilman Klein, the twenty-nine million that you're looking at for the actual rate FY 2022?
Twenty-nine million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-two.
Yeah, and so the next line says reserve for contingencies at twelve point five million. That's the, that's the three-month reserve. That's the base in council policy and our recommendation as well, that we have three months in reserve in cases in event where rate payers can't pay. At least we can keep the system running for three months. NewGen's recommending adding two more months to that? Three more months to that. But nonetheless, right now we have three months. So that fifteen million is for that. And then the sixteen million left after that.
I just want to be clear, I make sure I'm understanding this right?
Yeah, no problem.
The twenty-nine million, it's accurate to say that that's the fund balance for 2022, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the, I'm looking at the revenue, I guess, for twenty-two as well. The actual revenue was eighty million.
Eighty point four million.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So that would make the fund balance, if I'm calculating this right, thirty-six point seven percent of the revenue coming in?
We can do the math, but?
Did that last night, I don't know if I got it right or not.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
And I'm sorry, we're proposing to add thirty days, from ninety to one-twenty, that's one month.
Oh, okay.
You've got to four, you've got to four months.
Four months, yeah.
Right. All right, thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. McCartney.
And, you know, as many know, you know, if you ever read the Wall Street Journal, your financial, personal financial advisors always recommend people have six months worth of their salaries in reserves and, or in savings for emergency purposes. And so that would be a fifty percent, you know, reserve requirement for a family, which is a lot greater than twenty-five percent for a large organization. In fact, I co-wrote a paper on cash reserves. And it's out there on behalf of the AWWA where we recommended certain types of reserves. And we noted that, you know, a lot of publicly held companies like Home Depot and companies of that nature have a lot more in reserves than twenty-five or thirty-three and a third percent. And so, especially, I grew up near Galveston, so I had to, you know, suffer through a couple of hurricanes. The last one, Hurricane Alicia, which hit in August eighteenth of nineteen eighty-three and saw how utilities were down, pump stations were down in the town I grew up in because they couldn't get electricity, so therefore there was no potable water. And that's why, as a consultant, I'm bringing that and recommending to the city of Corpus Christi that to increase those reserves for the water and wastewater utility to a hundred and twenty days. So they aren't built into that rates because it was a recommendation. But I've got a slide with other recommendations that I'll go over in a little bit. Guess we're ready to go back to the slide deck.
Yeah, go to the PowerPoint, please, there we go.
Okay, next slide. So the wastewater rates for the inside-city customers. So we're proposing an increase on the minimum charge and that includes the first two thousand gallons to increase from thirty-three fifty-eight to thirty-four ninety-two. That's an increase of a dollar thirty-four, thirty-four per month. And the volumetric charge for anything greater than two thousand gallons up to the cap of twenty-five thousand gallons to increase thirty-five cents from seven dollars and two cents per thousand gallons to seven dollars and thirty-seven cents. Want to remind you, for the residential customers, there is that winter quarter average where it looks at your water usage over the winter quarter months and takes an average of that water usage. And that's what determines the wastewater volumes that residents are billed on for the remainder of the year. So that resets, you know, in the spring of each year, based on their historical water usage during those winter quarter months. So the next slide shows the outside-city residential wastewater rates. And I'll go over this later in the slides, but we looked at the inside versus outside and that differential was all over the place. Some outside-city limit customers were getting a huge discount versus the inside-city limit customers, which did not make sense from a rate-setting standpoint. And so some of the wastewater customers were paying over two times what the inside were. And looking at the geographic service area of Corpus Christi Water, we decided and proposed to the utility to converge the inside and outside so that they are equal based on the service area. And so what we're doing here with these volumes, that currently the outside residents pay fifteen dollars and sixty cents per thousand gallons and to reduce that to eleven dollars and six cents. And that takes it from a multiple, multiple of the inside of two point two-two times to one point five times. A lot of the disputes at the Public Utility Commission are because the outside feel like they're unjustly targeted by paying a lot more than the inside city. And that's what was going on, it appeared, based on what the previous consultant was doing. So we recommended lowering that and eventually phasing this in down the line to where outside pays no more than inside. And so that's what we're attempting to do here. On that monthly minimum, it's an increase of a dollar sixty-six per month for wastewater.
Councilman Posley.
So give me an example of an outside residential user, I mean?
It is somebody that is not a citizen of the city of Corpus Christi?
I realize that, but Peter, what?
Looking at Reba, Reba will help us. Do we have a lot of those accounts, Reba?
There are very few outside-city limit wastewater customers. I can't remember off the top of my head. It's less than, I think it's even less than fifty.
Is it a, so it's a homestead outside, right?
So why would we, why would we even, why would the city go outside the city limits to provide wastewater services?
Typically, that's done out of convenience because the city of Corpus Christi would be the nearest utility provider. And so it would be too cost prohibitive for, you know, another city to serve them or?
I think the council wants to apply specifics. Reba, do you have any?
A number of our outside-city limit wastewater customers are actually residents of Robstown. And I don't know why it's that way because I don't do the engineering. But I know that the city of Robstown collects that and then we collect it from them. So a number of those customers that are inside, outside-city limit residential actually reside in Robstown.
Okay.
They take their water somewhere else.
We can get you more detail on it, Councilman.
Yeah, I just, I wouldn't, I don't understand why we would do that unless we were planning to annex an area, which we no longer can do unless they ask us to.
Right, it could have, in the four years?
Maybe this is a holdover from?
I think that's what it is, a holdover from prior years. But we'll get a map and show, show what those are.
Okay.
On the, the next slide, we show the inside-city commercial and other wastewater rates. That monthly minimum charge, again, that includes the first two thousand gallons is going to increase from forty-six ten to forty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents a month. That's a dollar seventy-four increase per month. And the volumetric charges are going to increase two dollars and eleven cents per month. What we found was the former consultant had hardcoded a discount in there of twenty-eight percent. And we could not ascertain why that they were doing that. We talked to staff, they had no idea, so?
Mr. McCartney, since when was this discount hardcoded into?
I have no idea because we just reviewed last year's model. And so we got that, you know, back to where, you know, eliminated that and just let the calculations flow where they did. But we had, we had asked staff early on, you know, there's a, you know, it's supposed to be seventy-one point six percent of the residential rate. And we couldn't find out and determine. We asked the consultant and they said that they had no idea.
Did the customer know? Did they know they were getting a twenty-eight percent discount?
No, no, they would have been, it would not have been transparent to the customer at all, why they were.
Right, so the prior model, we said in the beginning, but is just under twenty years old. Reba's been doing this for about, how many years, Reba, seven, you said? So it predates, Reba couldn't, she didn't know. So it's at least ten years old and it could go back all the way to almost twenty. Andy found a lot of this in the rate model, hardcoded, you know, things that didn't make sense. And we're going to especially talk about it when we get to the water conversation. But it's important to be able to justify the rate, especially if you're challenged at the Public Utilities Commission. And that's strong advice from Andy.
And that's how I attack any project that I've done as, when I've been a consultant over the years. I think it goes back to when I was CPA, working at CPA firm auditing clients, including municipalities and counties that, to make sure your work can withstand the scrutiny of others.
Right, right. And Mr. McCartney, do we have a dollar amount associated with that discount?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
I would like, and that's fine, but I would like to know what that twenty-eight percent equates to, not only in its percentage, but over the ten years that it's been received?
Yeah, and I'm not sure because we only got one year of the model. So I don't know how long that discount was baked into the model at all. But we can definitely get that calculated for one year, Mayor.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Councilwoman Camples.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McCartney, just to be clear, and, and, and Peter, as far as we know, then, I mean, we have not had a hard look at these rates for over ten years. Is that, would that be clear to?
I would say closer to twenty, Councilwoman.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Because two thousand and five is when the prior rate modeler began the work. And so that's almost twenty years.
Okay, and so when we say that we're going to be reviewing the rates every two years, is that?
That's what we do, that's what the business process has been for the city council is to look at rates every two years. So we have a two-year rate-setting process.
But I'm curious as to why, I mean, I guess, you know, we're here now, right?
Right.
We're here now. But in the last, I guess, every two years, we've never really looked? We've never had a consultant look at the wastewater and water rates?
We have, and let me clarify, let me make a couple of points. One is Andy and the prior consultant continues to look at the rates, you know, through the, through a fiscal year. As revenues come in, as expenditures come in, we're looking at the business of the rate to make sure we're going to be okay financially. So we look at the rate more than two years. We rate-set, meaning we come to the city council with a rate adjustment proposal based on prior city council desire for a two-year period. You know, so it's a two-year rate adjustment that we set a rate and that's good for two years. But we're constantly looking at the rate. But as we just evidenced here, there's a lot of anomalies, a lot of hardcoded factors in the prior rate model. A lot of things that a thirty-year expert like Andy could not make sense of.
Okay.
A lot of inequity, right? A lot of inequity and a lot of things that we couldn't withstand a challenge at the Public Utilities Commission.
And that's one of the things I looked at because, because my boss used to work, be the consultant for South Texas Water Authority. He was very adamant that with the contractual customers on the water side, you've got to make sure that you follow that rate-making because it's all based on settled contracts that were long-term. And so that's why we took a very detailed, hard look. And, and, and later on, I explained the water. Once, we started looking at, looking at things on a cost of service to each customer class. And the former rate consultant never did that.
Okay.
They never did that. They just came up with rates to generate enough revenue to cover the remainder of the cost for the retail system. And that's, that's acceptable. But for a utility the size of Corpus Christi Water with over five hundred thousand customers, you, you really need to break it down by customer class and to define classes, which you already had, you already report, you know, on how much revenue from residents, commercial, large volume on the water side, commercial and other, and residential on the wastewater side. And so it made sense because I knew, you know, going in, based on the previous litigation with the contractual customers, that all the i's had to be dotted and t's crossed. And that's why I've had to explain that, yes, we started working on this about a year ago. But we had to be very thorough in this because we developed a new model, but we had to adhere to a lot of the functional contractual rate-making for the raw water and other treated water contractual customers. They have long-term contracts based on settlements, number of years. They have long-term contracts based on settlements a number of years ago.
Well, the reason that I, I am here, got voted in was because of the inequities of the water rates and wastewater. And, and I'm here to, to listen to you, but also I hope that, that y'all are listening to us and that it is time that we do something about the inequities. And I, it looks like we're attempting to do that. I, I hope and, and I pray that, that this, you know, will start the fix. At least if we can know what it is costing all of us.
Right.
It doesn't matter if you, you know, I'm sorry if you use it or not, but it's costing the city of Corpus Christi money and time and people to continue to have our utilities up and running and making sure that it's provided for all customers. Because if it goes out for the resident, it's going to affect, you know, some of the other customers at the outside because we'll have to be, you know, taking care of that issue. So anyway.
Yes, ma'am. And, you know, the revenues, I mean, it's a zero-sum game. So that's why we look within the retail system at the customer classes to make sure that they're close to their cost of service.
Yes.
And we'll get into that later.
Thank you.
Okay.
Fair is fair.
Councilwoman Sekley.
Thanks, Mayor. Related to Councilwoman Campus's comments just now. So going forward, do we have a way to, I mean, this essentially ended up being an audit of, of our rates. And so with what you found, regardless of, you know, the dollar amount, we're getting it resolved now. But do we have a way going forward to validate our numbers on a consistent annual, year-to-year basis? So when we're here next year, we feel comfortable that there's not been anything changed, hardcoded, whether intentional or not, probably wasn't, but it is, it happened. And so how do we, are you helping us set up a way going forward to continually validate the numbers so we don't have to come back and do another one-year engagement to audit the numbers and?
Well, we are engaged in future years to come in and, and do the update to the rates and look, look over the model and provide assistance to staff. So that contract was let over a year ago. So, you know, it's five years. The first year was a heavy lift coming up with a new model, but we, there is money in future years for the updating, come in and review and, and update the model on behalf of staff.
So, so we would need a third party to come in and continually validate our numbers? We wouldn't have a method internally to oversee the numbers?
The method internally is, we've built that into the model to, to look at, make sure that the rates we build are going to generate the revenues that are sufficient, you know, to cover the cost. Now, the cost may, something may happen and that's why you review rates every year. So, you know, the problem was, we, we had just found that. So, you know, that would be up to the city to engage another consultant to review our model, you know, next year.
Yeah, we don't have that contract in place, but it's something we can look at, Councilman, which is kind of a peer review or an audit review, peer review of Andy's work and his model.
And I'm okay because I'm, I did the peer review for another large engineering consulting company on Detroit Water and Sewage. Only I was, I was on the, a little bit of the different side in that I was representing the commercial and industrial customers. They had set rates based on residential customer for their large volume. Well, the first allowance here at Corpus Christi Water, it's 10 million gallons. In Detroit, it's 4,500 gallons. And if you're in the automotive industry, you can use 4,500 gallons real quick. And so peer review is a good thing. And that's why we've done this work, Tia and I and others, to withstand peer review. Because I've done so much of it and, you know, it's my professional reputation, especially being Chair of the Rates and Charges Committee, to do a thorough job. And, and I've had to do work for the Public Utility Commission before, reviewing rate filings of investor-owned water utilities. And so I'm, yeah, and, and I don't like to use the term audit, being a CPA, because we're not a CPA firm, so I have to use that disclaimer out there. But we did vet all the calculations in the model. And we would just do that, even if I wasn't a CPA, we'd have done that anyway, just as a consulting firm. Because it's part of our quality assurance, quality control. We've got a 12-step method with an acronym for checkup, where we look at things holistically and all that. But that's just part of our process.
Well, thank you for all your work, your team's work. This was critical to kind of get a baseline again going forward. So, thank you.
Well, and there's a lot of work by Corpus Christi Water staff and the city manager's office staff working in budget. I mean, it, it's been a team effort and it's been almost non-stop for several months. So, you know, we're answering questions on the weekends while they're working and trying to get them responses as soon as possible. So I have to give credit back to staff because a study is only as good as the staff is responsive to you. So I really have to give them credit for the hard work as well. The next slide that I need to go over on the wastewater is that, is the next slide, the outside city commercial and other wastewater rates. That monthly minimum charge, again, that includes that first 2,000 gallons is going to increase $2.43 a month from 57.63 to $60.06. You see a, just a 56 cent increase on that volumetric charge because that 10.50, what the outside commercial are paying now, that is at two times the inside city. I think it was 5.56, and so we've lowered that to 1.5 times. And that's why it's only 11.06. So again, in two years, we're proposing to converge those outside and inside city limit rates as well as the monthly minimums to where all customers are treated the same. Because you don't have that many outside commercial and residence that you serve. And with that, the next slide is the amended proposed, and Mr. Murphy's going to take over. Thank you, and I'll be back up later.
Great. What Andy went over were the rates that we had in the proposed budget. And since that time, though, with this council's input and our five community budget workshops or work sessions with the community, we've heard, try to not have a rate increase in the wastewater. So in the wastewater, as Murphy's going to show us, we can use fund balance.
Great.
May, may not be the best financial long game thing to do, but we're recommending it today to use the fund balance in lieu of a rate increase for the residential customer. And Murphy will go over that right now.
Thank you, Peter. Like Andy was saying, and thank you, Andy, I, I mean, we enjoy working with them. They're very smart, which is good for all of us, right? So we've, as you all know, we've finished five district work, input sessions. We've heard what council is saying, we hear what our residents are saying. So the rates that Andy is proposing, we're going to amend those. Our recommendation is to amend those to maintain equity in the rates. We developed a two-year financial statement to analyze fund balance impacts. We've reviewed current and future debt service. And we had in-depth discussion with, with our consultant. Now, like Peter was saying, this is going to, this is going to impact or reduce our capacity to cash fund CIP projects known, known better as the pay-as-you-go financing. Future proposed change in fund balance will be delayed and structural integrity will be impacted. And also it could impact our current credit rating. So let's go to the next slide.
Yeah, just to, just to elaborate, the structural integrity means current revenues should equal current expenditures. And I think in wastewater was, for the second year, we'll have issues in the second year. So the first year, meaning twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four, the revenues will equal expenditures. Current revenues equal current expenditures. You don't have to use any beginning balance of fund balance. And that's what we refer to as structural integrity. You want that when you're running these businesses. But in year two, in FY25, we'll have to use more fund balance to have enough revenues to pay for the expenditures. So we'll be structurally off balance because of this adjustment in year two. So, go ahead, Murphy.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Peter. So inside city limits, what we're, what we're proposing, and we've, we've put a couple of, of layouts here based on current, which is residential minimum zero to 2,000 gallons, and this is per month. Thirty-three dollars and 58 cents, that's current. And the original proposed, and there's a little typo there, that should be 34.92, not 34.02, but that, that doesn't really matter what we're talking about. So the original proposed that Andy just went over was 34.92. And we are recommending that that stay at 33.58 with the 0% change. Two thousand, over 2,000 gallons, the current is seven dollars and two cents. The original proposed that Andy talked about was seven dollars and 37 cents. And we're recommending that we go to the, to seven dollars and two cents, which is a 0% change. So commercial, inside city limits, the current number is 46.10. The consultant recommended 47.84. And we're recommending that that stay at 46.10 with the 0% change. 2,000 and up, five dollars and 26 cents. We are, the, the consultant recommended 7.37. We are recommending that we drop that 7.37 down to seven dollars and two cents for a 27% increase. Next slide. Outside city limits, and like we had talked about, this is, this is not a whole lot of customers on the wastewater side. So the minimum charge of up to 2,000 gallons, currently 41.99. The proposed amendment was 43.65. We're recommending that stay at 41.99 at 0%. 2,000 and above, we are, the consultant recommended a correction, like he just described. And we are agreeing with that, that we stay with his recommended correction at 11.06, which is a decrease to our customer, outside customers of 29%. Commercial outside city limits, 2,000, up to 2,000 gallons, 57.63 is the current. Consultant recommends a 60-dollar fee. And we're going to amend that back down to 57.63 with the 0% increase. 2,000 gallons and, or 2,000 gallons and above, 10.50 as an equity adjustment. We're going to recommend that that's 11.06, complying with what the consultant recommended. Okay, next slide. So this is just a sample. Sorry. Sample water bill, you can see, Rick.
If I, on this one here, so we're on slide 39, this is a good summary of everything that was just said. This is a sample water bill for the average homeowner using 5,000 gallons of water in this case. So go ahead, Murphy.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So this is a sample, just like Peter was saying, sample water bill for residential inside the city limit, 0% increase. Commercial, this goes from current of 140.78 to 172.46, is 31 dollar change, 68 cent increase. Okay, so outside city limits, residential, we'll actually see a decrease of 13.62. Outside commercial, and this is 20,000 gallons, we'll see a 10.08 increase. So that is.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Councilman Hernandez.
Peter, you'd main, you'd mentioned some things here that I need some clarifications on. You said that we're, we're keeping the rates the way they are. Your revenues are going to be, are going to be what?
If we, if we kept.
Under the proposed budget, with the revenue increase, with the increases, you're projecting a, an amount of 95?
Point six.
95.6.
Right.
So what is your estimate now?
Reba has that. Go ahead, Reba.
It'll go down to 85.6.
So 85.6, so you're still going to have surplus because your expenditures are going to be?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, 7.54, right?
Yes, sir.
So roughly, what, two and a half million? Surplus? I mean.
It'll be larger than that. What's the fund balance in year one?
Oh, well, yeah, revenues over expenditures, about 2 million, that in '24, on the amended proposed.
Okay, so go on to your, so that's going to go, that's going to go from 11 million or close to 12 million down to 2 million. So about a $10 million difference. So your gross ending balance should be 35?
Point seven.
35.7, just rough numbers. Take out the 15, you should have 20, right?
19.8.
19.8. Okay, so you still have a surplus for this timeframe. And you're only going to transfer 500,000 to your pay-as-you-go CIP?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So going forward into the following year, in 2025, your projected expenditures increased by $10 million.
Yes, sir.
According to the rate model of 93.7, right? So you're going to be short 8 million, is what you're saying?
Yes. So that'll come from the fund balance.
Okay, and, you know, we don't see what your projections are in terms of what that 10, additional 10 million is going to be. What is that 10 million going to be? Because your, your expenditure, I mean, didn't raise that much from '23 to '24, right? It only.
It's more in the debt service, right?
Yeah, we had some debt service decrease and we had some other decreases that weren't operating, direct operating, like legal fees went down almost a million from the previous year. But our expenditures are driven by increases, about a 4% estimate increase in personnel, 3% for operating. And then we use our debt service schedule for existing debt and proposed debt.
Okay, speaking of debt service, your projection for debt service increases significantly to 30% in 2025.
Right, 28.5.
31.2% in 2025. Okay, so this kind of goes back to my concern with funding everything with debt and the amount of projects that we have is that you continue to have debt service requirements. Now, this debt service that you're projecting for 2025 are things that happened last year and this year, correct?
It's whatever debt needs to be sold, yes.
It's probably, is it this, it's probably a few years back still.
Okay, so just based on the calculation for debt service this year.
Right.
I'm, I'm calculating at 24% because I'm using the 83 million number.
Yeah.
When you put 20%, I'm assuming you're using the 95 million number because that kind of what it equates to. But if you, if you're using 24 million, 24% of your budget, your operating budget going to debt service, and then you're projecting that continuing increase over the years, I mean, where does it stop? I mean, what is your balance of how much debt you want to carry on a percentage basis of your operating income?
Constance, do you have any analysis on that?
Maybe our rate modeler can give us some examples of, from other places as to what that debt percentage should be.
Yeah, Andy, do you know that answer? You know, what should be, what's the benchmark of our best practice for debt to?
No, I don't because it's really utility-specific. Really, the, the cap is when the bills get so unaffordable, you know? Especially when you look at affordability for the residents. There's various studies out there. EPA has a 2.5% of median household income. Other studies have narrowed it down to certain zip codes and what that household income is and the percentage. But generally, that's a limiter on the debt. Now, if it was an investor-owned utility, they would be looking at something like, as far as capitalization, like no more than 65% debt. They really like that debt-to-equity ratio being around 55 to 50% debt and the rest equity. And that's one of the recommendations we're making is to utilize more cash funding to build up those excess cash reserves above the cash reserve policy requirement and utilize that. But you have to build it up over time because some of these projects are really large.
Okay, so.
Construction projects.
The concern here is that we continue to increase our debt ratio here. And I want to know what that, what that should be, right? What, because at some point, I mean, in order, you, you got to pay the debt regardless. And so that cuts into your operating budget.
Yes, sir.
And the only other way to, and the only way to generate revenue is to increase rates.
Right.
So by authorizing a significantly high capital improvement plan today necessitates increases in the future, for the foreseeable future, because these are 30-year bonds, right?
Right.
So I want to know what our comfort level is in terms of how much debt we have. We already have 30, over 30% debt on our water side.
On the wastewater.
On the wastewater.
Well, this is wastewater, but I'm talking about water side.
Okay.
We already have thirty percent over there. So what, what are we looking at? What's the, what is the place that we wanna cap it at, so we're not going beyond that? And I understand we have a lot of things we need to fix, but we also have to understand who's paying for it.
Right, Councilman, so you know better than anybody that we were sued by the federal government, right?
Well, absolutely.
Because our, our system wasn't, uh, we weren't keeping up with it, and we had too many overflows into the federal waters, uh, because of a poor, poorly maintained system. So when we do, we do have a ten-year capital plan, and, um, the highest that our capital plan gets is in fiscal year twenty-five, at just under a hundred and sixty million, it's a hundred and fifty-nine million. And in our seven-year outlook, it levels off to the, to the eighties, and then the highest amount would be a hundred and twenty million in fiscal year twenty-thirty-one. So I think the answer to your question is the peak would be in fiscal year twenty-five, when we work through the major expenditures in this five-year plan that we laid out last year for both water and wastewater, for investment in the system.
Okay, that, that consent agreement was, um, over a three-year, over a fifteen-year period.
Right.
Am I correct?
You're correct.
Right, so, I mean, I, I understand, you know, I'm guessing the EPA realizes we're not made of money either, um, and we still have to make this, uh, these, these improvements. Can we get kind of an idea of what that looks like over that fifteen-year period, so we're not killing ourselves on the front end and then saddling ourselves with a bunch of debt to where we can't, you know, where we're gonna have to raise rates, um, on, on the short term?
Right. Yeah, that plan's laid out in our capital, yeah.
Well, I mean, I see what we're planning to spend, but how does that affect what our rates are going to be over the next ten years?
Right.
Right? So last time I saw a long-term rate schedule, it was consistently going up over ti, uh, over time.
Right.
There was no downturn, uh, at all, right?
There really won't, shouldn't, you know, Andy can explain that, but there really shouldn't be. You saw the cost just in our operating...
I'm with you.
Everything's going up, chemicals, labor, electricity.
I got you. Again, you can, you can only squeeze a lemon so much, right? So before you run out of juice.
And, and I can relate this, you know, to my past experience at Fort Worth Water, in the, you know, two thousand and five, we weren't using that much cash to fund capital projects, and one of the benchmarks is to at least use the amount of cash, and you should be doing your repair and replacement of your system to equate your depreciation expense. That's kind of a benchmark.
So, I mean, you could probably fund your IDIQ program out of, you know, or sum up a portion of it through, uh, through reserve balances, right?
Through, yeah.
And have the huge projects, the large projects where you're operating, you know, you're, you're working on your facilities for your debt service.
Like the, right, like the Oso wastewater treatment plant, which is a seventy-four million dollar project, that's not a pay-as-you-go.
It's not a pay-as-you-go, but your IDIQ would probably be...
But the five million dollar line replacement, right, that would be a good pay-as-you-go project.
Okay, so I, if you can do some work on that and find out where, you know, because like I said, all I'm seeing is rate increases for the foreseeable future, and, you know, at some point, you're gonna have a lot of pushback on that, and then, then what? You're gonna sacrifice your bond rating? I, I, there's gotta be a balance.
Yes, sir, Councilman, we understand.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, you know what, and I've said it before, but we're, there's some substantial catching up that we're doing here, after decades of neglect, I hate to say it again, but we're to the point where we, that some of these systems, when I was touring them four years ago, were on the brink of collapse. The biggest wastewater treatment plant?
Well, I, I understand. Trust me, I understand.
Right, you know, too.
When I got here, four and a half years ago, it was, it was god-awful disaster.
Yeah.
I fully understand.
Right, and so we're trying to...
We gotta have a balance of what we need to fix and how can we pay for it.
Right, and we have, right, but we'll get you more analysis of it. Our recommendation is what's in the ten-year plan today, but we'll get you more detail to show you the, the impact of the debt, because there is a slight delay in the debt versus when it's programmed.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Pusley.
We can always do some COs.
Those are next, Councilman.
Private, private. No, just kidding. So, a couple of questions. Uh, Peter, if, if we could have, kinda to Councilman Hernandez's point here, and, and for me specifically, if we could have Reba or whoever prepare us, what exactly the treatment is gonna be to our wastewater fund balance as we do these things, and we do the...
Yes, sir.
Right? So I, I need to understand, I think we all need to understand exactly what that does to our fund balance.
Right.
How much are, you know, what's the magic number we need to carry to make sure that we're not in trouble, bond ratings or any of the thing? So we, we need some information, or I need some information.
Okay. Yes, sir, we verbally said it here, but we'll get it to you in writing, so you probably should have passed it out.
Yeah, I know, we've been talking about a lot of numbers here, if we could get that...
We'll pass it out later today.
Yeah. And so, and to go along with that, um, and I don't mean to sound cruel here, but why are we worried about, I mean, if we're supplying wastewater services to customers outside city limits, of course, Christie, why are we worried about whether or not we increase or decrease their rates?
Because they could contest their rates, and Andy can explain that, and we could be challenged at the Public Utility Commission.
Exactly, Peter, uh, that's, that's the problem, because probably twenty-five years ago, a, a lot of utilities had two times a multiplier, meaning the outside were two times higher, one point seven-five percent higher, and what we saw was greater, uh, protests being filed at the Public Utility Commission, and, because of that, and so then the safe harbor was one point two-five times to one point five times, and at two times, it's hard to justify, so you have to go in, your rates are calculated on the, on the cash needs approach or cash basis, which reflects your, uh, the, the budgeting process that most municipally owned utilities adhere to. The other method of calculating your revenue requirements is the utility basis, which a lot of investor-owned, uh, utilities, uh, utilize, or, or municipally-owned utilities that have a lot of wholesale, like the city of Fort Worth, so they will use this utility basis, and how those two methods differ are their treatment of capital items. So cash needs uses debt service and pay-as-you-go funding for capital. The utility basis utilizes, includes depreciation expense to reflect the natural wear and tear on infrastructure, as well as a rate of return, uh, on the rate base, meaning your, uh, your plant in service with some other adjustments that are made, uh, for regulatory. So those are the two methods. So if there's a protest, generally you have to go out and calculate for, you know, fifty-some-odd wastewater customers, and then five hundred or so water customers, what it costs to serve them on the utility basis, which is an intensive approach, and you have to go out and calculate this. And then the PUC tells you what the rates are gonna be, based on that, and they'll have their own witnesses.
But, but, so, with respect to the rates that you're proposing, that, that wouldn't be an unfair, if we left their rates at the same and not gave them the fact that we're going to not increase for people inside the city limits, you're not doing anything that's going to be outside the parameters of what you set out, as being a fair rate?
We're, we're, yes, we're trying to converge those outside-city limit customers to where they're paying the same as inside city, and it's because of the service area, there's not that many outside-city limit customers.
Okay.
And there's not much, you know, operationally, that's, you know, causing a big cost difference to serve those customers.
Okay. I, well, I guess maybe I'm not asking the question right. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Peter, I applaud the, a decision to hold water rates flat for residents, uh, I think that, that's a good move. I just have a couple of questions about, um, some of the, the budget numbers here generally for the wastewater department. I'm looking at, uh, the budgeted expenses and then the actual expenses, uh, so the most recently, I guess we got over twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, there's nearly a ten million dollar difference there, uh, that, that, uh, the budgeted numbers, amended budget numbers was eighty-one point eight million, and then the actual expenditures was seventy-one point five million, a little over, a little over ten million dollar difference. Um, I'm happy that the actuals came in less, that's, that's good, uh, but that seems like a pretty large disparity, and it kinda gets back to, once again, to the, the fund balance then as well. That's grown pretty dramatically, I, I guess, um, I only have just information on two years, it went from twenty-point-seven million in twenty-one to twenty-nine point five million in twenty-two. Uh, and so if, if we're holding these water rates steady now, flat, uh, will allow us to still increase, or maybe perhaps, uh, slow that increase in the fund balance, I think that's good. If it's thirty-six point seven percent of the, um, revenue right now, that, that seems pretty high to me, but I, I don't know, uh, I'm a historian, so, so I'm, I'm out of my wheelhouse here.
So, Councilman, two things. One, um, the, as we mentioned, while the fund balance may appear large to some folks, uh, we have a substantial, uh, capital improvements program, uh, where it's over a hundred million annually, and we're paying for that actually a hundred percent with debt, so borrow, we're borrowing money even to do what is considered routine maintenance, like replacing sewer lines. So ideally, we should be using some of that fund balance to do pay-as-you-go financing for capital investment.
So the twenty-nine point five million, you expected that to get drawn down, or that, that you said earlier?
So we would recommend, prior to, um, prior to the conversation with the community and the council about we don't want a rate increase, uh, we would have been here today recommending using some of that fund balance for pay-as-you-go financing and eliminating some of the debt. However, today we're recommending not to do that, and to rather use the fund balance to subsidize the rate increase.
Right, so that would draw down the fund balance?
That would draw down the fund balance, right. We're gonna get, as Councilman Pusley asked, we're gonna, we're gonna deliver to the council today, uh, the numbers on a piece of paper, but basically the fund balance draws down to twelve million by the second year of the two-year program. So by fiscal year twenty-five, we'll have twelve million, uh, net fund balance.
And, and again, I only have information for a couple of years, twenty-one and twenty-two, uh, but again, there, there seems to be a, a pattern of, of the actual expenses coming in significantly lower than the budgeted expenses, um, and, um, again, I'm happy, the reverse would be a problem. Um, I'm happy about that, I just, concerning us about the discrepancy between those, that, that it can appear to the public as if we're, we're stockpiling money unnecessarily, um, but you said it can go towards some of these capital improvement projects.
Right, yeah, and a ten million dollar difference, I wouldn't label that as significant.
Right.
It's, uh, it's, it's, this is a hundred and, um, this is nearly a hundred, this is a, let me get, this eighty-three million dollar operation, so, um, we try to be as precise as we can in the budgeting, um, and sometimes costs come in lower.
Sure.
Uh, sometimes things are delayed or deferred. Uh, nobody here is in the business trying to stockpile money...
Right.
Or, uh, overcharge rate payers. Uh, so our goal is to run the business, have appropriate fund balances, and take care of the capital investment that has been neglected for decades, and we're trying to balance all of that. So, uh, we have the rate payer as the top priority. We do, even staff does, we're not trying to have high rates, just to have high rates, just to have fund balance, uh, but rather, we're trying to have a rate that's commensurate to pay for the business, uh, take care of capital investment, and then have appropriate fund balances.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Suckley.
Thanks, Mayor. I won't belabor this, because this was already, uh, addressed by, uh, Councilmen Hernandez and Pusley, but just the concern about, um, the comment that Mike made in the impacts section of the, uh, credit rating could possibly be impacted, um, and understanding, since this rate model is from January of twenty-four to December of twenty-five, is just making sure that we understand the effects of, of, um, cannibalizing our fund balance in order to do that, and the impact on the rate, uh, on our credit rating, because that in turn would increase potentially our interest expense for debt service, which continues to do what Councilman Hernandez says has increased our debt service into the future. So, obviously, it's a, it's a fine line we have to walk there, but just wanna make sure that we're consulting Victor and our experts that we engage to, uh, to better understand what that impact may be, with whatever our final decision is.
Yes, sir, Councilman, yeah, Victor Arioga, I'm not sure if I'm getting his last name pronounced right, but...
Kierogin.
Yeah, Arioga, but, uh, from our new, uh, financial advisor did caution us this spring that rating agencies look at cities that run a utility to make sure they're adjusting rates, if you have to. If you have to increase the rates, you should be, uh, they look at that. So if we don't have a rate increase, and instead we use fund balance to pay for the rate increase, I can tell you right now, Victor already told us, that's not a good thing. Uh, so the rating agencies will look at that, but they'll take everything into context to include the size of the fund balance, uh, how we're managing the program. Uh, I think they'll also consider that we have numerous rate increases in this budget, including, uh, uh, stormwater, solid waste fees, we did propose two in, in these areas, in the water and wastewater. Uh, but as you said, Councilman, you're, you're, you're in the profession, Victor already did caution us, uh, about that, so, yeah, it's just, it's good to talk about it, so the council knows. The, the impact of a credit rating downgrade is basically you pay higher interest rates, which is yet again, not a good investment for the rate payer. So it's a, it's a short game, the way I've been talking about it, versus a long game. The short game is, yeah, we can have no rate increase. The long game is, rate payers are gonna pay more, uh, potentially, because we have a lower, uh, credit rating, higher interest rates, and deferred maintenance that only gets more expensive down the road. It's a common phenomenon every utility's dealing with, and Ray, Andy and others can certainly explain it better than I, I suspect, given that they've worked for numerous utilities.
Okay.
Mayor?
Thank you, Peter. Councilman Hunter?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Uh, I just, I, I partially disagree with some of the council members on that. I wanna congratulate Constance Sanchez, Eddie Houlihan, and Heather for their performance in the financial and economics of this city. We took advantage of the lowest interest rates in the history of the United States to fix a lot of different things in this city. It might have been a risk, probably shouldn't add to it too much, but I think that they did a great job, and thank you for that. The question I have here, I still don't understand this, I don't think anybody truly does up here, is outside the city limits, we have to send a pipe all the way out there, so why do they have to pay less than us? Why is the Public Utility Commission suggesting that they have to pay less than us? If so, those board members need to go.
Well, and, in some instances, they're paying a lot more than inside, like on the wastewater side, they were paying on the volumetric rate two point two times...
They should.
Which, which is, is excessive according to the Public Utility Commission, it needs to be something more reasonable, especially if you're not...
Everyone else has to pay for their pipe?
Especially if you're not having to extend service that far to them.
Yeah, well, ours is pretty far.
Every situation's a little bit different.
I understand that you're just relaying their message, I'm just...
Right, and, and trying to prevent, since there's been a history of litigation, especially with the contractual customers, just trying to take that, because, you know, litigation, I mean, only the attorneys win during litigation, and so trying to avoid that. Also, you have, you've got the fact that the outside are paying less than the inside, which is a real problem, because they shouldn't be, uh, theoretically.
It sounds like inside-city limit customers need to hire better lawyers.
Well, and there hasn't been, on the retail, on the retail side, but, but, that's, that's the reason, Councilmember Hunter, is just, you know, i- it shouldn't be that much, because if you went in and did that study based on the utility basis, you can't justify a two-times multiplier anymore. One point five times is really difficult.
So the rest of the citizens, they're suggesting, not you, they're suggesting that us, who take the risk of living inside the city limits, have to pay for all their stuff.
Well, not, it, it all depends on the circumstances, it's kinda like...
We break it down to the basics.
Yeah, it's kinda like real estate, it's location, 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 and it depends on where they're located, you know? But it's true, if, if you have to extend a pipe way out to serve them, it's probably not economically justified. Now, there's some times where, now that the PUC has water jurisdiction, th- they will name a provider, well, we've looked, and X utility is closer, therefore you need to serve them. And so that's kind of the name of the game with the rate regulation of water, wastewater utilities moving from the TCQ over to the PUC, and so...
And, Councilman...
Just trying to look out for the long-run sustainability, kinda like the reserves and the interest rates.
Yeah, and I understand we're not trying to get another flower bluff situation, I understand that.
Right.
And I know that we've talked about that, where we get stuck and not being able, everyone has the septic tanks and we can't connect them onto our, I understand that, but if, if we give them, if they're paying half the price for water, will it really cause, you know, right now, what do we have, y'all said fifty residential homes, OCL? That's what y'all said earlier in the presentation?
Yeah, and lowering them down to like one point five times, it's not that much revenue in the, in the grand scheme of things.
It's, they're still paying more, Councilman, if we look at the two slides, thirty-seven and thirty-eight, the two top boxes, so the proposed, the amended proposed rate for the residential inside is thirty-three fifty-eight for the minimum, versus if you live outside, almost forty-two dollars, so thirty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents, and then if So $35.58, and then if you're outside, it's more, it's almost $42. And then kind of the volumetric rate for sewer is inside-city limit 7.02, outside is $11.06. So it is almost not quite double, but. So they pay more, both in terms of the residential and the commercial account. What Andy's saying is that they were paying excessively more to where it couldn't even be justified.
Yeah, and I'm saying that I think we should go back to that.
I hear you.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, okay.
That's my opinion, though, one of nine.
Okay, Councilman Bada.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mike, and Andy, and Tia for catching me up on a Sunday evening, knowing my situation today. So, and I'm going to kind of go back to the same thing that I brought up last night. You know, I'm looking at the CAFER, or the numbers from the CAFER, and for '21, '22, we had 71 million expenditures and some change. '20 to '21, 66 million and some change. '19 to '20, 75 million and some change. But yet, we're anticipating here that we're going to have, let me see, I need more, I need more screens. $83 million in expenditures. Well, we had, and we have $95 million in budgeted revenues. I mean, that's what I don't understand. I mean, I hear all this about rate equity, but what does it cost to serve the, to provide the service? And then if you're going to include debt payments in there, then include debt payments in there because the expenditures are still by far less than the revenue that we're raising. And so I'm really having a hard time. And when we talk about water, I'm going to say the same thing. I told you I was going to bring it up. I don't know how, when we're only spending, we're still spending less than we bring in. I mean, the expenditures for the debt payments, aren't they in there?
They're in the fund schedule, Councilman, yes, sir. So the $83 million you referenced includes 20 million of transfer to our debt fund.
Okay, so I understand, but also with the increase in revenue that we're explaining, we're going to increase our fund balance by an additional 12 million. And, you know, I would have preferred to have had Victor here, and, you know, and it's like I said last night, you're putting us in a position where you're going to give us a, well, maybe three-hour presentation, to make a very substantial decision that's going to affect the entire region, not just the citizens of Corpus Christi, the entire region. And so you haven't been able to help me understand, we're already spending way less than what we're bringing in. That already includes debt service. And as Councilman Hunter so eloquently, you know, commended the finance staff, that we've had excellent bond ratings, we've had excellent ratings already. So I'm just worried that we're painting doom and gloom when we are in a very good position. And, you know, if we've got $45 million in a fund balance, and we're only anticipating, and even then, here we're anticipating $83 million in expenses. But if I go back to the CAFER, the last time we expended that was one anomaly back in 1819. I mean, not 1819, but 2018, 2019. So, once again, I don't understand.
Councilman, earlier this morning, unfortunately, you weren't here, but we recommended a lowering of the rate to where it'd be the same. So the balances that you're talking about now would not exist under that proposal.
Okay, well, then, but then, right now, you were basically stating that, which side are you picking? It's going to hurt our bond rating? Or now, all of a sudden, now, we're going to have that situation? I mean, that information is not in here.
Right, it's on the, we presented it this morning.
Yeah, exactly. So it's not, once again, it's not provided to us, so.
No, it is, it's in the PowerPoint in front of us.
Okay.
Yeah, we provided it this morning at 9 o'clock.
Yeah, I understand. So here you are, you're providing it here, and you're minding us to make a decision within two, three hours.
No, not to interrupt, but we have the first reading of the budgets a week from, actually, eight days from today.
Well, I don't think that's adequate. And I'll go on about it when we talk about water rates.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
But just, you know, any excess fund balance above the requirement of 25%, basically, what we're trying to do is look after the long-run sustainability of the utilities. So any of that excess fund balance, we can utilize to fund capital projects in the future, which alluded to what Mr. Hernandez's concern was, that we're debt financing everything. But you have to build up the cash through the excess cash requirements to be able to do that because unfortunately, the city's not like the federal government can just print money. You have to build it up over time.
Sir, I agree with you, but you haven't, at least, maybe it's in the PowerPoint presentation that I missed, but I haven't seen such a graph to be able to provide me with a projection that indicates the goal that we're trying to get to.
Yeah. It's over time, it's in our rate model.
I understand, and I would prefer to see that projection if that, all of a sudden, because we've got half a million people that we've got to protect.
Exactly.
And we've got half a million people that we've got to protect, and we have to be fiscally prudent, and we have to be able to understand that it's their funds that we're utilizing. And right now, within three hours, or if you want to give me two weeks, or I've got another eight days.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you that the questions that I have, when we have a $45 million fund balance, you haven't, all you've told me is your intent. You haven't really illustrated for me what the whole purpose is and how it would affect our fund balance, other than a theoretical statement that you've made.
On which statement was that?
Well, you're basically saying that, you know, individuals are looking at, you know, what is it, bond companies are looking at.
Bond rating agencies.
Bond rating agencies are looking at, what is it, at A, B, and C.
Yes, sir.
And I agree, I agree, you know, I mean, I would agree, but you haven't illustrated that.
Okay, we'll illustrate it for you.
Because I could tell you, for these two gentlemen, they've got to have a performer that, and they've got to be able to figure out what their expenditures are and what their revenues are, and not just say, okay, we're going to raise the rates.
Yeah, we can illustrate it for you very easily. We'll get that for you.
Well, I wish then if it was very easily, that you would have taken care of it a whole lot sooner.
Well, we'll get it for you, Councilman.
Appreciate it.
It's not a theoretical. I mean, I've worked with dozens of financial advisors, given presentations to credit rating agencies, and have delved down into their ratings and trying to understand how they evaluate an issuer's creditworthiness. And so I really understand that. I'm also on the Finance, Accounting, and Management Controls Committee of the American Waterworks Association, where we work on the financing. In fact, we've got the Capital Financing Manual that's due out. We're already working on that, and so we work with, you know, the FAs.
I've got no doubt as to your credentials and your credibility. However, the general public is not aware of that, and they're counting on the nine of us to be able to make that decision.
Right, and that's why some of the steps we're taking right now are short-term in nature to try to build up the cash reserves, to have enough cash for pay-as-you-go. It just takes, working on a utility, these projects cost a lot of money, and it's, you've got to have cash in hand.
You know what, everything you're saying, I agree with you. All I've said is that, and just like I said last night, in something that is so volatile, the public trust is quite volatile. And the thing is, is that we can't just say, take our word for it. They've got to understand, they've got to understand because it's their investment.
Right, and we modeled out 10 years into the future.
I understand that.
Even though we're setting rates for two years.
And once again, I haven't seen that.
Okay.
Now, maybe it's my fault, maybe I missed it, but I think, and I think the public needs to be able to see that. So anyway, thank you.
Councilman Roy.
You know, a couple of things. I kind of reiterate the other council members that have a concern about the implied impacts because, you know, we've worked hard. I was on council in 2017, 2018, when we had an increase in terms of our credit rating, and that was nice to be able to celebrate that. I don't think anybody wants to take a step backwards. And I understand also where we sit in terms of working with our residents and hoping not to have an increase. So we went from a proposed increase to no increase, right? And staff, you've worked on that the last, what, over the weekend and everything to try to meet what you believe this council wants. But is there, and I ask this because at the end of the day, and I think Councilman Suckley said it best, is that we don't want to take a step backwards if we do have an impact on our credit rating because we're sharpening, I guess I could, sharpening the pencil too much. And so, did you look at any other alternative?
The other alternatives are cut spending, and we don't recommend that, obviously, because of the way the system is and the fact that we were sued by the federal government. So it's revenues and expenditures. We're using fund balance, basically increasing the revenues there, keeping the expenditures steady, and trying to manage within the context what we showed you this morning of escalating price increases on everything that we do to provide the service, whether it's chemicals, labor, electricity.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And you know, the average, I think, my opinion is that the average resident really doesn't, what they look at is when they open their bill up and they see, is there an increase or not? In terms of what they were paying before and what they're paying now. And as far as looking at the impacts of our structural integrity, or looking at our credit rating and things of that nature, most residents aren't sitting there going, oh, did we tweak this too much? But we have the responsibility of making sure that we don't do that. And that's a really, that's a heavy responsibility. Because the last thing I'd like, you know, I want to do as part of this council, that all of a sudden, we have taken a step backwards. I do think also that if we could have more information in terms of understanding how you did come up with those numbers, the better it's going to be. But I'm not sure that, you know, unfortunately, right now, the cost of everything's going up.
Right.
And that is, that is just a reality of where we're at right now.
Right.
And sometimes I wonder if we need to step back and take a look at this and say, okay, should we have a slight increase? I know that's not the popular thing to say, but is that the right thing?
Right. That's what you'll see momentarily, Councilman, that's what we're recommending in the water. So about a 50% reduction in the proposed rate increase, but still a slight increase.
The only saving grace is that we have raised rates in other areas.
Right, and I think that's something that, we'll get Victor to come here. We contemplated having him on WebEx, but we didn't get it.
Yeah, I think that's important.
We'll have him here Friday morning at 9:00 in person.
Especially before we vote. I think that's a conversation that we need to have.
Right.
In detail. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, Peter, and I know you're getting beat up here on this stuff, but just in looking at what we need, right? We need the balance for the long term.
Right.
As to where, you know, what do we need to do to maintain our credit rating? What do we need to do to keep the rates in check? What projects can we do for long-term debt? You know, like I said, you have your debt service increasing to 30% of your wastewater's operating budget.
Right.
In 2025, based on your projections. So you've got to find that balance so we're not losing our credit rating, we're not doing too many projects to increase our debt, and yet, and then also trying to keep our utility rates reasonable. Okay? I understand things are going up, I understand all that stuff, but there's, like I said, there's got to be a balance as to what we pay and what we can do within that, within the realm of our consent agreement, right? So, I mean, we understand the parameters, you've just got to find that balance. And I think you can do that with the, you know, with the help of our rate modeler and our staff. I think we've got enough smart people in the room to be able to figure this out. But give us that balance, and that's all we're asking for because I think that addresses all our concerns here. And as long as we can explain that as to what that looks like, then we'll be fine. I don't want to beat you up too much on wastewater. I think you guys got to have a plan in place, but find that balance. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, just to summarize, we have two options, I guess, on the table. One was a slight rate increase, and then today's option, which we think is a balance, but we'll get the financial advisor to confirm it.
Well, you may look at also not going to a two-year model and see if we can do it year to year, because we're not seeing year two in the budget.
Yeah, we're going to pass that out.
So you've got, I mean, it's hard to make a judgment on what's going to happen in two years, especially since your estimates are kind of, you know, two-year estimates.
Right.
And so it may be something to look for in the future.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, to go along with that, you know, we, there's a presentation, and Andy, I respect everything you had to say, but there's, the presentation here spends a whole lot of time talking about what we're going to do, how we're not going to increase rates, what that impact is going to have. But you didn't show us the numbers on how that's going to impact our fund balance. I, for one, believe that we're not going to impact it significantly enough to where it's a problem, but we needed to see that information. Everybody here on this dais needs to be able to say with confidence, okay, we can do these things, we can not increase the rates, we can hold it flat for this year, and it's not going to impact our fund balance to the point where we don't have emergency funding, we don't have a problem with our bond ratings and any of that. So that's the information that I'm looking for, so.
Right. And we're going to get you that, Councilman. I'm thinking this morning, with the Friday presentation, we'll probably start with this, do an hour or so of just the recap from this meeting.
Yeah.
With our financial advisor. This is, for the council and for us, this is a huge endeavor, running this utility. Many cities in Texas don't run a water utility.
Yeah.
Water, wastewater, San Antonio, as an example, does not. So that city council has nothing to do with the water and wastewater, it's an independent agency. So this is for you all, for the nine council members and the community to understand, this is a big business.
No, I understand that.
It's not only in Oasis County, but it's in six other counties.
Anything where you're talking about $93 million worth of expenditures, that's.
Right.
Even in this place, that's big money.
And this is all part of the process. Right. So we'll take a little bit of time Friday.
$10 million is pocket change, but when you get to $90 million, we're talking real money.
Yes, sir, and the water's even larger, so we'll make sure we get the questions answered in person.
I'm being facetious.
I understand, yes, sir.
Okay, so I want to go back to my friends in the outer city limits, outside the city limits, just a minute. I would assume that, based on the fact that we're providing wastewater treatment, that we're also providing those same customers with water, is that true?
But shaking our head, yes.
Yeah, we are. How else would we calculate what their usage is?
Yeah, it's based on that water, winter quarter averaging.
Okay.
Reba, you have?
Unless we've got another magic.
I'll go back to those customers that only receive wastewater services.
Right.
And they actually receive water from whoever gets, Robstown. Yeah. And that, we work with the Robstown City, their utilities, to make sure that the winter quarter averages get calculated and so forth. Yes, sir.
Okay, so they do that for us. Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's all the questions.
Okay, great. Now, we're going to move on to something a little more exciting, which is our water, our water utility. So, right, Murphy's going to start on page 42.
Okay. Next slide, please. Slide 42. You told me that wastewater would take about 15 minutes.
Peter, and why don't we address that now? So this is likely going to take more than an hour.
Right, right.
How are you?
I mean, we've been here for two hours for wastewater, so you understand some of the fundamental concepts, but this could take another two hours or so.
Right. How's everyone's schedule?
This does not.
Are you able to stay? Yes? Okay. So we might as well plan right now on being here until 1:00.
That's fine. And then we do have, just to let you and the community know, we have staff monitoring the Gulf Coast storm.
Right.
There is a webinar at 12:30.
At 12:30.
We have staff on it, so, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Hello.
Okay, thank you. We'll get into the water side of the fence. So the achievements, we'll just quickly go through these. Water conservation, there's been a lot of things going on in that, and I won't read through all of these slides, you can read these yourselves. Water resource planning, we're going to talk about our desalination actually on tomorrow, Tuesday. We're going to give you an update on all of these, so we don't need to really go over those items right now because we're going to do a little bit more in-depth presentation during City Manager's comments tomorrow. Resiliency measures, obviously, Mary Rose Pipeline is really big, and Owen Stevens,
Resiliency measures, obviously Mary Rose Pipeline is, is really big, and Owen Stevens, of course, only water treatment facility that we have. Utility billing, office and customer service, and the experience there, just so you know, we realize that, that there are issues with, with that department. We recently hired eight additional staff, I believe, Reba, to help in UBO, and we're working on that right now, and we're, UBO, Corpus Christi Water is working with IT Department, Heather, and, and Peter Collins and his team, and so we're working on that, and hopefully we'll be able to bring you some good news here in the very near future on that. Okay, next slide. So performance measures, these are indications of what, what we think makes, how we determine if we're having a successful year, and how, how we rate that. So we've got water production, water quality, and service response. And so right now, the, on the production side, we plan for 93 million gallons a day. We estimate we're going to produce about 87 million gallons per day, and for, for '24, we're looking at 92 million gallons per day. Right now, our wastewater treatment plant is currently rated with a reliable daily flow, or comfortable daily flow of about 105 million gallons per day. Water quality, obviously, 100% is our goal there, to maintain our superior rating, and we're happy to say that we, we've hit those numbers. And then on service response, this is Wes, Wes Nebgen, who oversees our, he's the director over infrastructure for Corpus Christi Water. He and I have a conversation about this all the time. And so our goal is to address 95% of all water line breaks within a 24-hour period. Our average is about 18 hours, and that's probably, we, we're trying to verify that's the best in the state, but if it's not, it's, it's in the top three or four. Our estimate was, that we're going to hit is about 93%. And the drought, the reason, the reason we're having so many water line breaks this year, and also last year, was the very dry ground. When the ground moves, the pipe doesn't move along with it, and so cracks and separation happen. And we're planning for another year, this year, or 24 of 95%. And that's our measure of success. Okay? Next slide. Uh-oh, back one. So proposed budget for our water fund this year.
Yes, Ms. Campos.
I had a question.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Back to page 42, Mike.
42.
Your conservation, 365. I see what's still missing is conservation plan from our large water users. When will that ever happen?
So we're working on that right now. We've just, I think I reported a couple of weeks ago, maybe, that Flint Hills has given us their, their draft of their water conservation plan, and in our, in our discussions with our CBI A group, the, hopefully we'll see more of them follow.
Okay, but that's one, right? One out of how many?
I think out of that group, we've got nine.
How many?
Nine.
Nine.
Yeah.
And do we know what is the issue with them providing that information?
Well, these are private companies. We don't tell them what to do, right?
But we sell them the water, so we do have some leverage. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I get it. So we're just waiting for them to provide that information to us. And we, and what we're trying not to do is to, and, and they wouldn't do this anyhow for us, is provide sort of how they, how they do their, run their business with water and all that. They don't want to give up that, that, I don't know what, technical knowledge of how they do their business to, that somebody else could use and take advantage or whatever. So it's, it's a balance on how we do that. But we've got a good template, and Roger is in the audience right there with Flint Hills, and so he, thanks to him, he's taken, his, he and Flint Hills have taken the lead in the water conservation program, and they're passing that template along to the others, and hopefully they will follow.
Right. Well, you know, the same thing could be said for the residential. I mean, we don't ask them how they use their water, they just pay their water and they use it, right? So.
It's not the same as residential.
Why would that not be the same?
No, it's not.
Why?
Well, they pay a drought contingency fee, a water surcharge drought contingency fee, and that doesn't say that they don't conserve water, but water conservation is built into their model.
Right.
I mean, they're in, you know, these are for-profit companies, right? And it wouldn't make sense that they're not doing their dead-level best to conserve water.
I'm sorry, but we still don't know that. I disagree. I think that if there's no initiative for them to cut back, they won't cut back. It doesn't matter.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, for 25 cents for, you know, the 10,000 gallons, right? I'm sorry, what? Millions? Thousand? I get lost in the zeros. So, again, we're just asking for equity, making sure that, that they're doing their part, is, you know, every time that we, we get these type of reports, or we're being asked, it's always the residents that have to cut back, so just, you know, please, we need our, our neighbors to do the same thing. We need to be able to conserve as much water as we can. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Pesley.
Yeah, I just want to say, I've, I've seen a copy of Flint Hills' report. It's very good, very extensive. I met with Valero the other day, they provided me a copy of theirs. I think all we have to do is ask, so, and, and I will tell you, I'm going to take up for my industrial customers a little bit here. I know that business, I've been involved in that business for over 40 years, and they don't do anything that's going to waste anything. They're very conservative about everything they utilize, including water. So, thank you.
I appreciate that, but it would be nice for us to know.
I'm not debating you. I'm just, I made a statement, I did it, I turn. If you want to debate, the mayor wants to let us do that, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. So proposed budget, operating budget for water this year is going to be 160.6 million. You can see the numbers that are set aside here, so, I'm sorry. Our revenue is projected for 2024, 162 million, and our expenditure is estimated to be 160.61 million. Oh, also, so number of employees in the, on the water side is 330, and we're currently operating with 309 positions. So the proposed budget, we'll just kind of walk through that. 1.2 million for water resource planning, managed raw water storage, 17.8 million, treated water, 37.8 million, maintenance and repair, water distribution, 29 million, utility billing, customer service, 6.9 million, utility engineering, 5.3, debt service, 56, administrative services, 5.5, for a total of 160.6. Year-over-year costs, you can kind of see how prices of everything have, have gone up. We, we had mentioned that in the wastewater fund also, it's, it's probably even much greater in the, on the water side. So managed raw water storage has gone up 140%. You can kind of go through the list here to see where everything is going up, by several percentage points. And so that brings the total at the end of the year up to about 17% cost increases. And that's due, there are several factors, supply chain issues, inflation, coming out of COVID, employee, employees harder to find, and having to pay more money to hire.
Mike, the utility billing and customer service, 47%? How is, give us a little input on that.
Yeah, so.
There she is.
That's largely due to increase in bank and service charges for more people paying with credit cards, and also, we have to adjust our, our mailing for postage. Every time the federal government raises it, we have to cover that increase. So that's mostly where those increases come. We also added staff this year, so we have eight new, nine new positions that we added this year, so that's one of the reasons why that went up.
Okay.
Right, we had a call taker, you know, a call taker staff in our utility billing assistance office. Thank you.
Okay.
To handle call volume and walk in.
Right. And this is right here, right?
This is right here at City Hall. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we're going to look at, I've challenged Murphy to look at it, because, you know, the stories that don't pan out to be true, that people wait for an hour. It's still, a lot of people call, and it's, I'm, I'm, I've challenged Murphy to see, why is that? Is it that our bill isn't clear, or is it that we don't have good information on our website? Because a lot of these calls are routine, and the fact that somebody would wait even a half hour to get a basic question answered.
Right.
So we've got to look at the business of why are they calling? Do we really need that many? We have 30 call takers, right? Is it 30 UBO? 30, 27 assistants, assistants to help persons with their bills. It seems to me a lot. And in the end, everybody, the rate payer pays for it, so.
Right.
So we've got to see what's wrong with our business that we have that many people calling in.
Yeah.
Right.
In, in the operation of UBO, the call center is different. UBO call center is much different than 311, because we, it depends on what their question is, how much time we have to spend with them, and so it kind of piles up, so adding more staff is critical, and so we're going to be looking at all those things.
Okay. All right. Councilman Suckley.
Thanks, Mayor. With, with that being said, I'm sure Everett's seen it as well, over the past number of years, with more people using credit cards, more and more businesses, in fact, I think probably the majority of them now have figured out how to change the model with their merchant provider to pass that cost on to the, the person using the credit card. So I'd encourage the city, if we haven't done it already, that'd be kind of surprising because it is so impactful, I'd recommend making that change.
Right.
Councilman, or Councilwoman Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as the, the additional staffing, nine, right, y'all are recommending? Okay. So when we're getting additional staffing, what happens? Does that decrease our, our regular UBO staffing? I mean, where are we? I mean, since the calls are not going to be going entirely to the 311, right? It's going to be diverted to.
No.
Your, no? How does that work?
There she is again. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Prior to June 12th of this year, the 311 operators helped us with some real basic billing questions, like what's my balance, what's my account number, I need to set up a new account, and so there were two or three things that they could do, and they could take care of very quickly. Those other more complicated issues would come to the utility billing office, like I need an adjustment, why is my, my meter says this, but I showed this, and, and I need an adjustment, so they need to be told how they can make an adjustment. I had a water leak, what do I do to get an adjustment? It's, there's a lot of very in-depth questions. Our average call time for, for utility billing is actually close to 12 to 14 minutes, so they take a little, a lot longer to resolve. So we were, since we are started taking all the calls now that have anything to do with utility billing, we needed additional operators, and that's why we, we proposed that for this current year, and we've hired them, and we have the last two getting trained right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilman Banata.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I guess this is for Reba. You know, echoing what, what, what Councilmember Suckley, I, I'm just kind of wondering, I mean, typically the fee is 3% for a credit card transaction. I don't know how it equivalents to, I mean, I guess you guys can get us the breakdown, but I, I just can't see that 3% of revenue that we're collecting all of a sudden is going to have a two, a significant impact.
Well, that entire increase is not due, of course, just to be, it's just one of, one of three main drivers.
But how much revenue do we collect?
How much revenue does the utility billing office bill for?
Yeah.
Over 350 million?
Okay, I understand that, but the thing is, how much of that is residential, and how much of that goes back down to, you know, anyway, I guess that's, that's, anyway, I'm sorry, I just, I, it's just, like I said, it's only 3%, and I can't see that it's changed from one year to the next, because it was still 3%. Well, I, it just doesn't.
We have more people taking advantage of the online options.
Yeah.
And we just recently implemented with a new payment or a merchant vendor, and so we're still getting some new features added, like auto pay. Lot of customers wanted auto pay. So we're getting ready to, to open that up, and that'll increase again the number of people that either use autodraft off their bank account or use a credit card.
Very good. Thank you, Reba. Go ahead.
All right. So, next slide. So year-over-year cost, we've got several, several things that we're proposing this year, or not proposing, but comparing, billing specialists, and, and these are, one of the things the city manager has to do, is let's look at labor costs, what's going up, what's the difference in hiring these employees? So billing specialist, up 53%. Lead resolution specialist, and these, these are what the employees at Reba was talking about, trying to hire good people that, that have good customer service skills and are very smart. Instrumental electrical technicians, not, well, you can go through the list here, and you can see that every, just about every class is going up. It's just harder, especially in the environment that we work in, the field that we work in, and the competition that we're, that we're up against locally. So we have to, we have to stay competitive. Year-over-year cost, and this is similar to what we were talking about in wastewater, just earlier, is pretty much everything that has to do with wastewater treatment, not pretty much, I, I would say 100% of everything that we do, drew, in wastewater treatment has gone up. And we just, we're listing out some of the things that we use on a daily basis, and you can see the percentages over here, some are, are, are pretty high, 121%, 128%, chlorine probably the biggest hit, over 700% increase, and they, they go right down the list.
Murphy, this is for water treatment, right? Because you were saying wastewater.
Yes, sir, water treatment.
This is at Owen Stevens, the water treatment plant.
Yes, sir. This is at our Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant. Yes, sir. This is on the, the infrastructure side of the fence and water, and water delivery, and you can just, you can see everything that we use on a daily basis, the, how the prices have gone up, and it could be one of a number of things. It could just be availability of material, it could be supply chain issues, it are just, you know, if prices are going up for us, the people who manufacture these for us to use, it's going up for them also. But you can see, you know, 58%, 225% on certain, certain size plastic pipe, that's what that one is, right down the list. Everything's going up. And so in our cost to provide service, that we're going to be talking about later in Andy's rate, rate study, you'll see that the cost to provide service, these, these are big factors that lead to the prices of water delivery and, and water quality are going up. And we, you know, I think there was a question that it's going to eventually come down, probably not, you know? I don't know what would, what would drive these numbers to come down. I mean, it would be great if they would, but not sure that that's going to happen.
Yes. Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Murphy, if you go back one slide, I think it was a couple of years ago, I'm not sure, but we had a supplier for one of our, I guess, I think it was a chlorine supplier? I can't remember, a chlorinate supplier? It was something, but I think it caught fire.
Oh, permanginate. Yeah, the permangate. Let, let's go back one more.
Yeah. And, and at the time, y'all said that there weren't very many people that supplied this, especially on the size of cities, but you did say that we were going to look to see if there are any. Was there any luck there?
I think you updated us on this like a couple of months ago, actually.
Yeah. Hi, Councilman. Yeah, so we, there, like you said, you've got it right on the head there, as far as there's not a lot of competition in the market. The supplier that generally provides all of the sodium permanginate in the United States is, oh my gosh, I'm trying to remember the name of them, right on the tip of my tongue, but they, they were impacted, obviously, and we were able to secure some supplies from overseas, and the, the company that had the issue up in Indiana, they're back in business, so we're, we're, we're buying product back from them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Klein.
Before that, but you can see, if you, I'm on, I'm on slide 40, 48, I believe. I'm on slide 48. You can see at the bottom of that list, sodium permanginate, 104% increase.
Yeah. Mike, before you get off of 48, I wanted to come back to the liquid chlorine, because it's such a huge increase. I mean, i- is there any possibility to find an alternative? Or if this is a one-time increase, you know, I'm uncomfortably willing to swallow it. But if this is going to be a persistent thing, year after year after year, at some point, this is going to be untenable.
Yeah, so we don't know if the percentage rates are going to go up every year. They're going to, they're going to follow, I guess, business models that, that identify this. But we don't see them going down. Not necessarily they're going to go up at the incline that they're going up right now because of the, you know, there were so many things that have happened in the last three or four years that have caused prices to go up. That may level off. Okay. But what I'm saying is, we probably won't see, it's sort of like, you know, houses, you know, that they keep going up. They're probably not going to go down. Same thing here. Consumer Price Index is probably going to level off at some point. But seeing these prices drop, I'm not going, I'm not saying they're going to go up 104% every year. What we're saying is-
700%.
We're, we're comparing them with 2022 prices and where they are today.
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilman, we're, we're one of, we're one of a few water utilities that use this liquid chlorine that comes in a railcar. That's extremely dangerous. We do have in the works, a replacement for this liquid chlorine, which would be, we would, we would generate our own chlorine, basically. It's a pretty expensive capital project, but we think the return on investment, especially now, is proven. So the short answer is, go ahead, Drew.
Yeah, so I was just going to catch, so Charis, Charis is the name of that company that provides the sodium permanginate. And then back to the question on the chlorine. So the chlorine costs in the industry are absolutely extraordinary. Everybody is taking a beating on these chlorine costs. It, it's not just here in, in the city of Corpus Christi. It's, it's all over. But to the, to the point of what are we doing to try to be more proactive to sort of manage these costs? I, I don't think they're going to continue to go up at the rate they are. I don't think that's going to be the case. But there is a project that we're working on. It's, it's in design right now. It's an onsite chlorine generation facility. We'd be one of a very few number of municipalities to generate chlorine onsite. And it's simply using salt and electricity. And, you know, salt and electricity, those costs are a little bit more stable. And, and then the other element to that project is, is not only do we get more cost certainty, there's a, there's a huge safety factor that goes into that because liquid chlorine, as, as most of us could probably imagine, it comes in on 90-ton railcars. There, there's some hazards associated with that. And so the risk profile that we expose ourselves to with that is pretty tremendous. So this project is, is in design, and you'll be seeing it here, you know, in the next probably few months.
And are we looking at just that usage for the city, or are we looking to try to sell it to other municipalities or other users?
Well, you know, that's not necessarily something that we've looked at in terms of selling it outside the city of Corpus Christi. We're really just, the project is focused on just, you know, concerns about taking care of our own business.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Drew, before you go, what, what would be the, just estimated timeline on a that type project?
Yeah, so we're, we're in 90% design. I, I'm thinking that we're-
Sort of bid in spring 2024, and then we're looking at like three-year construction.
Three-year?
Three years of construction. It's, it's, it's a, it's a long construction project.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Roy.
Don't sit down too quick. So on the same lines, right now, when you look at our treatment plant that we have now, if we look at expanding and building another one, you know, and I know we've talked about that in the past, to be able to shut down and maintain one, are there alternatives that we could look at in terms of building that plant that do not rely heavily on chlorine?
Well, I would tell you that chlorine is, is a pretty major ingredient in any and every water treatment plant. So, you know, I don't think we're ever going to get away from chlorine. Now, now, there are other disinfectants, there are other disinfectants that other utilities do use. Ozone, for example, is one. But you, while you may reduce, if you're using something like ozone, you may reduce the amount of chlorine that you have to feed, but you're always going to have-
Have some-
-a certain element of chlorine that you have to feed to maintain a chlorine residual in the, in the system, in the water system.
So my only other question is, you know, we were sitting here back in the last presentation, worried about in terms of pricing and what it costs for us to deliver. It seems like we should be able to do something when somebody goes out and increases their product to such a drastic level that the industry as a whole should have some way to prevent that. I, I guess that's the, the good thing about, I guess, entrepreneurship, that maybe you can't do that. But it just seems crazy that they can get away with increasing their chlorine. I mean, does it come with at least a steak dinner or something?
I, I wish. No, we're, we're at that, we're at their mercy. There's no doubt.
It just seems like there's something as an industry that we can all, the industry as a whole should get together and get a handle on that.
Right.
Councilman Pusley.
Well, if you go back and look at the chlorine industry, and Drew, you know this as well as anybody, there's not that many places that make chlorine. And in, what was it, 2019, one of the major manufacturers of chlorine in the United States, in Louisiana, the plant blew up and burnt down completely. And that created a huge national shortage. Plus, before that, there was already supply chain issues with respect to the materials that they utilized because of the COVID business. So they think the new plant's going to be up and running by the end of 2023, and that should start helping prices come down again. But, you know, it's just, it's a tough industry, and there's not that many people who make chlorine.
Right. So to your point, as I understand, there's really only two places. Louisiana has, has chlorine facilities, and then, and then Mexico has, has some chlorine capability. So it's limited. Yeah.
Thank you, Drew.
And just to add to that, you know, municipal governments or municipal water sources are sort of at the end of the line as far as chlorine delivery goes, because we're probably their smallest, where did Drew go? Smallest customer in the business. So that's another challenge for us. Okay, back to the, so we'll get back on track here, hopefully. So CIP projects, this is, this is something that we, we've talked about in detail. We went over this similarly with, with wastewater. So total number of projects, around 41 projects with an asterisk, at roughly $128 million and some change, was our investment total. Projects in pre-design are two. Projects that are in design, 26. Projects in construction are nine. Completed projects are four. And we're at 83 point, let's see here, 83 point, just over 83 million. And so we'll list the projects with delays. So $20 million Owen Stephens, you can kind of see how these are. Most of these are rebids, meaning there's a, there's something that had happened during the bidding process. Either the bids, we've got zero bids on a project, which happens. We got one bid on a project, which happens entirely too often. Or the project came in so grotesquely over budget that we decided to do value engineering and rebid it. So you can see projects here, raw water affluent chemical facilities, rebid, ship channel, waterline relocation, that was a rebid. And, and I've got Nick Winkelman here. I won't read through every one of these. But if you have a question about what, then Nick can come up and, and address your questions. But these are the, the projects that, that we're rebidding for whatever reason.
And this is, can I just add, Murphy, that this is Councilman Hernandez, who's been working closely with us on this type of analysis. But in summary, the, last year, we put together a five-year plan for capital investment in '22. So this is a second year, FY '23 is a second year. And the, the report card here says that we're pretty much on schedule. There's a few things that are out of our control, like we had to rebid several projects because of either irregularities, or we didn't have a large number of bidders, or pricing came in too high. But 26 projects in design, nine in construction, four projects complete, and then a few other anomalies. So the message that we're saying today is similar to the wastewater one, which is, the plan we put in place is manageable, it's in progress, and they're all critical projects. There's no, we've already moved back projects last year, and we did it again this year. We moved a few, meaning out in the future for rate savings, as well as just being able to focus on the more critical ones. So. Go ahead, Murphy. So wait, on the next couple of slides, Murphy will go over it, but we have each of the projects listed out.
Okay. Councilman Pusley?
Yeah. And, and I know it's only $400,000, Mike, is what your projection is. But Texas Parks and Wildlife Department has a wonderful boat ramp grant program. I built a $400,000 boat ramp in Hazel Baysmore Park, was completely funded by Texas Parks and Wildlife.
Okay, thank you for that.
We're going to be applying to them for both a boat ramp and, and flower bluff area, and this one as well. This one, the pricing came in double. So the budget's 400, but the bid pricing came in at almost 800,000. So we're going to, we'll especially need that grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife.
Okay.
So here's our report card. And the projects that we, we listed there, we're all laid out here, and this, this should track very closely with, or exactly with your capital project budget book. You can see those. And I do want to thank our work with our engineering department, Nieman and Jeff Edmonds and their team, for helping keep these projects on schedule. A lot of work. And these, the reason we put this slide in here, these are, these are capital projects, and we thought this was critical to today's conversation, that are, we're working on that are strictly for benefit of large volume users. These are LV projects. And so you can see how they're listed out here. And over the next few years, the projects we're going to be working on in that area. So we've got navigation, waterline replacement, Leopard Street, Upriver Road waterline replacement, and Oasis Bay Boulevard, both, both lanes waterline replacement, and then water line underneath the ship channel.
Do you support that? You said, do you support the large-volume users?
Yes, sir. Is there a LV project?
Okay, 53 million?
Correct. So that, that's the total at, at the end of the day.
The three are total? Yeah.
Okay. So our CIP program, you can see it all broken out here, 222 million gallons, or gallons, 222, 222 points, that's a lot of two, million dollars for our 24 budget. And that includes, you see the water facilities, water utility support, water sources, water supply lines, water treatment, obviously, would be our biggest one, and then water distribution lines. So these are projects that we added. We're trying to be, we're trying to be very conscious of how many projects we're, we're putting on, because we do have a lot of work in, in our water, water side that we're working on. And so we wanted to be very conscientious that we're not going to overload ourselves. I think this is one of the critical things. But we're all aware of the fluoride system improvements that we have to do. We've had conversations with council on that. Navigation Boulevard Waterline Replacement Program, project, State Highway 358 Waterline Replacement, wash rack for our, our utility vehicles, and 16-inch water main extension highway 286, and then San Dollar Connection, 16, 16-inch connection. So the total project budget here that we're proposing is 37 million on this.
Can I just add that there was some community conversation about our fluoride in our water? So the city, for many years, has, has put, has added fluoride to the water, which is a health, health best practice, undoubtedly. The system, though, wasn't built that great, apparently, and it's had, it's had trouble in delivering the fluoride into the water. This naturally occurring fluoride at about 0.3. However, the recommended dosage is 0.7 per whatever. But, so the system we have, we're able to get it going again, but we really need a new system. So this 2.4 is a new project that's added to the budget to have a, a higher functioning and dependable fluoride treatment system.
Okay. Thank you, Peter.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Councilman Hernandez?
Yes. You know, I've, I've always said for us, you know, to balance out what project we had, this is probably one of those projects you can put to the side and for later date. You know, from what-
Yeah.
I understand our health department recommends the fluoride at a certain level, but it doesn't really affect the operations of the water department.
Councilman, the medical community is the one that really brought it to my attention.
The what community?
Medical, our local-
I understand.
Yeah, our local medical, medical community-
Right, I, I get it. But, I mean, I would love to have it as, as much as that goes. But if we're looking at places to cut, that would probably be the one, because it doesn't affect us delivering water, correct?
That's correct. It has nothing to do with the distribution of water.
Thank you.
On that note, we would need to know what it would affect.
We could have Dr. Mary Del Peterson or any pediatric person be here.
I remember this. This was probably six years ago or so, when all of this conversation, I think, roughly.
And we, and we sent out a pretty extensive memo about six weeks ago, I think, to council. We can, if you would like, we can resend that regarding fluoride, this very issue.
Well, yeah, we would need to. I mean, I understand the councilman's point to operations, but we also need to take into consideration-
The impact of not doing it. Yeah, so-
Exactly.
You know, Dr. Khan was very, I guess, direct in her, her email, or her memo. So-
Right, it was a memo she had her PR.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can do that.
Okay.
Okay. So a couple of other budgets that we would be interested in, the drought surcharge exemption fund. This was established back in 2018. This is a non-mandatory fee to develop drought-proof water, a drought-proof water supply. In addition to utility bill surcharges, nine customers using over 100 million-
Thousand.
Yeah, 100,000 gallons per day, paying optional 25 cents per thousand exemption from applicable allocation surcharge of City Code Section 55154. We anticipate an end in balance of, of 2024 being around close to $24 million, just a little bit over. Now, this, this, this surcharge fee is earmarked for desalination and helping offset debt on that project.
There.
So-
Oh, yes, sir, Dan.
Yes, sir.
Mike, on that, so it said nine folks are paying that? Is everyone that qualifies of the 100,000 and over, is everyone paying it?
No, I think there's, get Esteban to help me with that. But I think there's a couple that have opted not to pay that.
Yes, that, that's correct. And it's, you're opt-in, you're in until you opt-out kind of system. And of, there's Epic and a few others that have chosen not to. And so, like, SDI, they don't, Steel Dynamics, they don't choose to pay into it also. But again, this fund goes to help construction costs, debt service on raw water supply projects. So it is very beneficial to our overall system to supply our entire community.
Thank you.
And typically, I might add to that, counsel, typically, those who have opted out have a redundant source of water from some other place, like a, like a, a groundwater, groundwater well, something like that. Okay, so, good questions. I'm going to turn it over to Reba, and we're going to go through water.
So as with our wastewater rates, our water rates are reviewed every two years with adopted rates to be effective January 2024. Actually, we have our water rates for our contractual customers reviewed every year. Sorry. But our retail rates are reviewed for possible changes in the, in the rate every two years. And as with wastewater, rate equity in our water weight, water rate structure is being proposed. This is just to touch base about who our customers are. And these are our customer classes, residential, commercial, large volume. And then, as I just mentioned, our OCL or network or contractual customers, Nuasis County Water Control Improvement District Number Four, Port Aransas, and Violet Water Supply, our OCL wholesale customers, San Patricio Municipal Water District and South Texas Water, and then our raw water contract customers as are listed here.
And Reba, on this slide, so the last one, two, three, the OCL network, OCL wholesale and raw water, those are all set by contract?
Yes.
Right. So the rates today are only for the residential, commercial, and large volume?
The amended proposed rates, yes, sir.
Right. Because there's contracts that have been set by councils in the past that have, in some cases, indefinite terms, and the rates are prescribed in those contracts.
And as just a reminder, we have different components to our water charges. Every customer pays a raw water charge per thousand gallons. We're not recommending that that be amended in our amended proposed rates. We have a minimum charge, which is based on meter charge, meter size, and includes the first 2,000 gallons, except for our large-volume customers. They don't get that extra 2,000 gallons. There's a large volume charge, charged only to our large-volume customers, that includes the 10, first 10 million gallons. And then, for all customers, a volume charge per thousand- the first 10 million gallons, and then for all customers, a volume charge per thousand gallons.
Councilwoman Campos.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Reba, back to page 60 of the water customer classes, when we're, you said that we look at the rates for the residential customers every two years, right?
Our retail customers, which includes residential, commercial, and large volume.
Okay, but the OCL network, we don't, right? You said?
The OCL network, the OCL wholesale, and our raw water contract customers, we update annually.
Okay, okay, thanks, thank you for correct.
And that's based on the cost of service study, and Andy will provide some additional information on that process.
All right, thank you.
So we saw this slide back on July 19th, and I wanted to just draw your attention to something that's been updated because of the current method in which we're assigning the cost of service by customer class. This is referring to the water system functionalization. So the previous rate model used cost functionalization and rate setting, and while our new approach also uses this functionalization, the new rate model, as Andy will be talking about in just a moment, uses the full cost allocation by customer class method in our proposed and amended rates outlined today. You will notice that in this approach, the distribution part of the system is attributed to our large volume customers. This is different from the chart that I showed you back on the 19th. It was determined by New Gen and Corpus Christi Water that the distribution system backstops the transmission system regarding pressure, and is therefore a cost component for all of our retail customer classes.
Reba, can you, let's just go over these headers real quick, so you have raw water, people understand that, the diversion or the pumping, that's from the Owen Stephens plant?
From the water source to the plant.
Water store, okay, from water storage to the plant, treatment is at Owen Stephens, the cost, and then transmission, that is large diameter pipes?
The 16-inch and greater, yes, sir.
16-inch or greater, and then the distribution is the neighborhood smaller than 16-inch pipes?
Yes, sir.
This is an important part, and it gets to Councilman Hernandez and Councilman Pusley's baseline questions, which is how are the rates set? So this is kind of the foundation that each of these, one, two, three, four, five components has a cost, and the rate model will get into those, but this is an important foundation for the rate modeling. The customer class is important, and then the five different costs for service are there, and you can see just about all the customers pay some portion, it's not the same portion, take the distribution, the residential customer pays for more distribution than, say, the large volume user, but still there's some portion attributed to it. Thanks, Reba.
Sure. This slide is just a snapshot of our fiscal year '22 data, again, based on the annual billed usage and the annual billed revenue. We showed you this slide back on the 19th as well. So at this point, I'd like to hand the mic over to Andy and let him walk through the water portion of the water and sewer rate study.
Thanks, Reba, and I wanted to apologize to Councilman Pusley, because you had asked about the long-run graphs, and we've got that in the model of the cash reserves over time during the 10-year forecast period, the debt service coverage, as well as the projected revenue and expenses, and projected debt, and projected CIP. So it's in the model. Unfortunately, sometimes I get buried in the weeds and get too much in the details and forget about the big picture, so I apologize for that. It should have been, you know, part of this presentation, so. So anyway, I wanted to talk about some background methodology, some of the cost drivers and the cost of service, and then the, what we, what's called the original proposed rates that New Gen came up with. First, some of the background and methodology. We wanted to, ooh, where did that slide go? Anyway, we wanted to ensure compliance with not only the M1 manual I talked about earlier, but that Water Environment Manual Practice 27, and it was of utmost concern to ensure compliance with the existing contractual agreements, as well as the bondholder commitments. So under the old rate model, the retail portion of the rate model basically determined rates to generate the remainder of the net revenue requirement, or referred to as cost of service or COS, after the raw water, composite raw water diversion, wholesale treated, and the wholesale treated network rates and revenues had been determined. So we're funneling it down, so we've got to start with the contractual first and ensure compliance with all that rate setting. And then we looked at, you know, the outside city limit, and we proposed that the outside, proposed water monthly minimum charge be kept at 1.5 times the inside city monthly charge for now, and we'll revisit that in two years about converging those costs. The outside volumetric rates would be set equal to the inside city volumetric rates, which would be an increase for the outside city volumetric rates on the water side. Wastewater, we already talked about that, the minimum charges, we kept that at 1.25 times on the volumetric, we set that at 1.5 times, it would have been a decrease from just over two times, and wanted to note that the outside, and we've made note of this, that the outside city residential and commercial customers are a very small part of the overall customer base. So we expanded the rate model that we developed to determine the cost of service for each retail customer class, utilizing the full cost of service allocation process, where as before, once they determine those contractual customers' rates and revenues, the remaining costs that needed to be recovered, they just adjusted the rates, however they saw fit, whether it be residential, commercial, or large volume. So we decided to follow what's in the M1 manual and develop a full-blown cost of service allocation to the customer classes. It's basically how they utilize the water service, and so not only do you have the functionalization, but you have the classification of a functionalized cost and the cost components, and finally you distribute that to the customer classes based on their proportionate usage of the system. And so we're, what we're proposing is to take one of the customer classes for irrigation, the golf course irrigation, and just collapse that into irrigation, because all irrigation customers should be treated the same. And our goal is to eliminate as much as the subsidies occurring between customer classes as we can, but we're trying to phase that in, you know, over, you know, a number of years. So here's a graphic of kind of our rate setting process, and first you determine those revenue requirements, again, we use the cash basis or cash needs approach, where we took the operations and maintenance expense from the budget, the existing debt service, we looked at the capital improvement plan, and determined the future debt service on that for '24 and '25, and then we made the adjustments for the other operating expense, revenues and the other non-operating revenues, to get a net revenue requirement. And then we perform the cost of service allocation. As I mentioned, we functionalized, classified, and then distributed to the customer classes. And part of the classification, there's two different methodologies, you can use the base extra capacity method, over 90% of the water utilities utilize this, it recognizes how the customer classes utilize their water, looking at their average day demands to their peak day demands. Finally, we look at the revenue increases that are needed, and we forecast that out throughout the projection period, and we use the 10-year period to do that, and finally we designed the rates and the fees and charges that were necessary to support that cost of service to the customer class. So utilizing the cash needs or cash basis, the revenue requirement elements, I mentioned them, O and M expenses, debt service, the pay-as-you-go capital, sometimes it's called pay-go or cash-funded capital, and then amounts needed to meet your cash reserve requirements, as well as your debt service coverage, which is very important to the bondholders. They want to make sure that that coverage is there to make sure that their future debt service payments are able to be made. And I mentioned about the other revenue sources being subtracted out. And once you determine that, the costs are functionalized into raw water, raw water diversion, treatment, network, which includes the transmission pipes, pumping and storage, distribution, billing meters, as well as administration. And then I talked about the base extra capacity method that we utilize, so those cost components are base, max day demand, and customer. And finally, we take those cost components, we distributed them to the customer classes based on their proportionate usage of the system. So some of the study recommendations that we came up with, and this first one really applies to the raw water customers of Alice, Beville, and Mathis, they're, it's called the raw water composite calculation, and that needs to be simplified, so in the future, if there's any negotiation of those contracts that need to be done, all of them need to be set on the same terms and conditions, and remove the need for a raw water cost adjustment where you come back later and true it up for the actual cost. The city budget process goes through several layers of approval, as you know, with final approval by this city council, and so that really eliminates the need for any cost true-ups based on actual expenses. You know, first level of process, Reba and her team developed the budget, then it goes to the executive level, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Molly, and Wes, and then finally, once it leaves the department, it goes to the budget office, where Eddie and Amy look through it, and then finally goes to the city manager's office before it even comes to city council, so there's lots of opportunities, and what we saw in this whole process is that the budget was constantly changing and being reduced as it went through the process, we were having to upload different levels of the budget into the rate model, and so there is a process out there, and it just seems like so much has to be done outside the rate model with these true-ups, that that's just one of our recommendations. Finally, on the wholesale treated water and the network treated water customer rates, just to have uniform standard contracts in the future, should the opportunity arise for those contracts to need to be negotiated, that's one of the recommendations that we're making. The other one was the elimination, we talked about this in the difference of OCL rates, outside city limit rates from inside city limit rates, and I've talked about the service area for the utility, that's more defensible if challenged at the PUC by the outside city limit customers. We're bringing the volumetric rates into alignment first due to such extreme differences between inside and outside. And what we found out that with the outside large volume class, they were actually subsidizing the residential, because they were paying $1.95, they were also subsidizing the inside city limit large volume customers who are currently paying $3.94 per thousand gallons. And looking through the rate model, I could find really no justification for why that had been done in the past. Typically, if you're going to have outside city limit rates, they're going to be higher than the inside city limit rates, because basically your citizens are basically the owners of the system, and so it made no sense for the outside to be actually paying so much lower. I've never seen that before in all my years of experience.
Excuse me, Mr. McCartney, Councilman Pusley, do you have a question now?
Yeah.
Sure.
I guess maybe, I don't know when the exactly the best, when you were going through your chart back here on page 72, so my question of the day is, in all of this, Andy, are you able to calculate what it costs the city of Corpus Christi to provide a gallon of water?
Yes, sir, and I'm going to show that, the actual cost to provide the water service to each customer class.
Okay, so, yeah, and that's my question, each customer class, what it costs us to produce that gallon of water?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, it's coming.
All right.
So, as I say, wait for it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Campos.
All right, just thank you so much for this presentation, this is where, where the, what do they call it, the, where we meet, actually, which is, I would like for you to repeat what you just said about the subsidizing, and that it has been going on for years, and that there, as far as you can tell, there has been no justification.
It appears to be that way, and I'll show on later slides, you know, how, you know, the cost of service for 2024 and 2025, how that compares to the revenues at current rates, so that's coming up.
I am just grateful for you to be pointing that out. For years, I think the customers have known that, but for you, for the constituents to hear it is another thing from you, Andy, so thank you.
Well, if I'd have been an inside city large volume customer, I'd be wanting to know why I'm having to pay almost $2 more per thousand gallons for water versus outside. So it was just one of those things that I just saw, and the New Gen's team saw as part of our review of the existing model, that, you know, why is this? Because I had been asked, you know, why are, why are large volume customers, why is it cheaper to serve them? And I came up, well, they use water more efficiently typically in comparison to residential customers and all, but when I saw the huge differential, especially in comparison to the inside city limit large volume customers, it didn't make a lot of intuitive, logical sense, based on my experience and everything I've learned over the years from a lot of people that are much smarter than me that originally wrote the M1 way back then, and I was fortunate enough to learn from them, a lot of really smart engineers and CPAs that came up with it, and it just didn't make sense.
Well, I'm just grateful that it's being brought to light.
Oh, thank you. The other recommendation we found in there was the graduation of the monthly minimum charges by meter size, they did not make sense, and that some of them were repeated, and it seemed, based on the meter equivalency factors that we use, it had slipped a little bit, in that it wasn't being applied to the correct meter size in the former model, so we fixed that, just from, it just needed to be fixed because it was wrong. So it really affected meters that were two inches and larger, but it had a major impact on those four inches and larger, in that they weren't, you know, paying what it should have been by that meter equivalency factor. And we use, there's two different methods, and one's the installed cost of the meter, so you graduated by a factor of how much more expensive it is to buy and to install a larger meter, and then the other method is the capacity factor. So it's not linear, a two-inch meter doesn't supply two times the amount of water that a one-inch meter, that's why there's the M6 manual, and so there's scientific engineering calculations behind, and it's not a linear, it's more exponential of the greater capacity. So a four-inch meter doesn't just supply two times the amount of water that a two-inch meter does, it's greater than that, it's like eight, or, you know, eight times or something like that. I don't have them memorized, so you'll have to excuse me. And then we wanted to reduce those monthly minimum charges to a maximum of no more than 1.5 times ICL, and two years we'll come back with another recommendation, to set that OCL monthly minimum charge to equal the inside. This is kind of a phasing in. We've talked about this, we recommend that we utilize more cash funding of the CIP plan in the future.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. McCartney, I'm going to interrupt you.
Sure.
We have, Councilman Hernandez has a question.
Sorry, I was trying to get in here, but the raw water rates that you said that were Alice, Beville, and Mathis, but they're not in your, you know, the pages further on is what they're being charged, what are they being charged?
Right. I don't know off the top of my head, because that calculation is normally done in December, once the audit adjustments are known, because those rates are based on actual charges. So, you know, we're using a perspective test year 2024, but those calculations for Alice, Beville, and Mathis, per their contract, which was, there was some settlement, it's based on actual expenses. So we go through the calculation.
So I guess we need to have some more clarification on that, as to what they're actually paying for the raw water, I guess, a year back, what did they pay for it this year?
Yeah, because how they take water from the system, they have their own, basically, straw in the Nuasis River.
They have their own straw to the.
Pump it out, so they're paying for some portion of the cost for the actual water, and what that is, it's, their contract is based on actual, and so we're using projected, and so I don't recall off the top of my head what Alice, Beville, and Mathis are actually paying.
I apologize, I don't have that rate schedule in front of me, but at the end of the year, once the fiscal year's actuals and does a true- once the fiscal year's actuals and does a true-up compared to what had been budgeted, and so then that rate is determined based on their usage, and it's done, then we notify them, give them a chance to ask any questions. But I could provide additional information and confirm their rate.
Yeah, problem.
I don't have it with me, I'm sorry, the current rate.
The prescribed rate is set by contract, but that's another phase that we need to, we with the council, need to get into. These contracts, some of them are beneficial to the contract holder, not so much the city. And it does impact the rate payer. So that's, once we get past the budget, since these are set by contract, you can't really change them unless both parties open the contracts. But we will get you the detail, but I do want to, in the fall, review all the contracts with the council and talk about what are the details in each of the contracts, the pros and cons, how we can negotiate different terms in the future. It's step two in the rate modeling or the rate audit assessment. Right now, we can control the residential, commercial, and large-volume user. Council sets those rates. The other users are set by pre-approved, prior approved contracts.
Okay, if you can get us the information on what they paid for 2023 and then what the projected, what they're going to pay for 2024, and I guess on a per-thousand-gallon basis.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And that was one of my earlier recommendations, to make that part of this whole process so that the department doesn't have to come back later in December and try to get those rates approved. Just, you know, use it on the budget, go through all the process, and then get it set all at the same time, just for, you know, streamlining the process.
We've got one more.
One more question.
Councilman Pusley.
Back on page 76, Andy, where you said that the residential, commercial, and ICL large-volume customers were subsidizing the OCL large-volume customer class paying only $1.95 per thousand gallons. So who is that? Who is paying, who has that contract? Do we know?
Well, there's no contract on that. That $1.95 would be the outside-city limit large-volume customers.
So is that to all outside's large volume?
That are large-volume users, yes, sir. There's like 11 meters.
All of them were paying $1.95?
Currently, yes, sir. For any gallons used beyond 10 million gallons.
Is that raw water?
No, that's treated water.
Treated water.
Yes, sir.
$1.95 per thousand.
Yes, sir.
And all nine of our large-volume users are paying that rate?
Currently, along with the monthly minimum charge that are outside the city, along with that monthly minimum charge based on their meter size, and then there's a fixed amount for the first 10 million gallons that they're paying as well.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I wanted to, on the cash funding, there's also a benefit for that in reducing your future debt service, but it also helps out with the debt service coverage factor based on how that debt service coverage factor is calculated. And so by using more, you know, pay-as-you-go or cash to fund capital projects, it actually helps out with that calculation. Again, we've talked about the increase in the reserve requirements of 90 days of O&M, up to 120 days, one extra month or 30 days. It's just important, I grew up on the Texas Gulf Coast, went through hurricanes, and I know what a disruption it can cause and how it impacts the revenues. And I just felt like 90 days probably wasn't enough. And it's what we recommend to our coastal utilities that we serve, that you might need a little bit more. And especially to our northern utilities after going through this winter storm, Yuri, because it really impacted revenues because there was main breaks all over and customers, you know, had water breaks inside their homes, and so they weren't able to utilize water service. So we saw a dramatic drop in water revenues, and it lasted for more than a month. So that's the reason behind that. And also, finally, the last financial policy that we've recommended to the utility and to the city manager's office was to change the debt service coverage factor from 1.25 times to 1.5 times to provide a little bit more internal cushion for the utility. It just provides the utility more flexibility in the future. Also, the credit rating agencies view that favorably because you're increasing that, so.
Okay. We have a question, Mr. McCartney, I'm sorry. Councilwoman.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I know that was not mentioned, and I've discussed this with our city manager, is, you know, the block rates, the, you know, the more you use, the more one would pay. I don't even see that model in this presentation.
It's coming. So yes, we've kept that inclining block rate structure, but I'll show that later on. But now, large volume.
That's what I'm referring to.
Under what we're proposing, they would be having a slight inclining block rate structure based on that first 10 million gallons. If you take that fixed cost that they would pay and divide it by 10 million gallons, but you'll see it's lower than the next rate for any gallonage exceeding 10 million gallons, that they'd pay slightly more. So there would be an inclining block, and I'll point that out when we get there.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Just real quick, on the volumetric side, though, that would be a next, that would be a phase-two recommendation. We're not recommending block rate structure for volumetric.
Well, it's inherent in that, in the structure, in the current structure. So some of the cost drivers, and you've heard this from Mr. Murphy, you've got the CIP or needed infrastructure, which causes future debt issuances, which causes the debt service, as well as the debt service coverage requirements for the utilities. And also, we've talked about the inflationary pressures on the O&M expense. So here's the increase on the water system. I showed this earlier for the wastewater system, so you've got increases in O&M that have been gone over as part of the budget. You see the 11 million increase for '24, there's another 3 million increase in the '25 budget. You see debt service going up quite a bit, 3.5 million in '24, and then another about 18 million in 2025. And remember, for the retail, we're trying to set rates over a two-year period. And so we've got those, remember, the wastewater system was 12.22% increase in year one and 12.26% increase in year two, which is 2025. And here on the water side, it's slightly elevated in 15.35% over the '23 budget, and then another 14 and a half percent for 2025. Next, I talked about doing the contractual customers' rates first. You really have to as part of the model. And then what falls out are the retail costs that have to be recovered from residential customers, commercial, and the large volume. So I wanted to talk about what's called the non-rate payer raw water. So this only applies to three different customers. San Patricio Municipal Water District, they take raw water, so this is their cost for raw water. You've got Selene's Corporation that takes raw water, and you've also got Coke Flint Hills. Coke Flint Hills also takes treated water as well. So this is the cost for the raw water. So it's going up 4 cents per thousand gallons. Next, we have that.
Excuse me, Mr. McCartney, Councilman Hunter.
He can go first, I think we're going to. So do we have a cost for producing or for providing that raw water?
Yes.
Okay, is that in here somewhere?
Well, we just have the rate.
Yeah. But that.
But we can, it's in the rate model.
That's what I keep getting back to, Andy, is what does it cost the City of Corpus Christi to provide that raw water?
And we've got the cost, it's in the rate model, we can provide that to you, the total cost.
We're going to get to some slides at the end that talk specifically about those costs for the large volume.
Because, you know, here's the deal, we say, okay, we're going to propose that we're going to provide this raw water at $1.5 per thousand, okay? Well, is it cost us $1.20 to make it?
No, this is, this is the cost divided by the.
Or does it cost us 95 cents?
This is the cost divided, yes, sir. It's the cost, total cost, provide the raw water to these three customers divided by their projected volumes.
Say that again, then?
It's the cost to provide the raw water for these three customers divided by their projected volumes.
Still not what I'm asking.
You're wanting the total cost of water.
I want to know what it costs the City of Corpus Christi to provide that water.
It's $1.5 per thousand gallons.
So we're providing the raw water to these customers at cost?
At cost, as prescribed by the contracts.
Okay.
And I thought you were wanting the total cost to provide the service to all three.
Just this one here is a different, this is a different setup than what we're going to show you soon.
Yes, I'm going through all the contractual raw water, then treated water, and then the treated water network customers.
At the end of the day, what I'm looking for is what it costs the City of Corpus Christi to provide water on a per-gallon basis or per-thousand gallons, I don't care, pick whichever one you want, so that I understand or we understand what cost it is to us and what rate we're going to charge the customers who are going to be taking that water to see if we're doing it on a fair and equitable basis to both the customer and our taxpayers.
Right, and for these customers, it's prescribed, I mean, it's pretty much like following a recipe, you have to follow the contract.
There's a contract with these three, Andy?
Yes, sir.
And how long are those, and are those contracts negotiated yearly, monthly, or what?
They've still got terms left on them.
They still have a term left, so this fall, when we, we're going to bring all the contracts back so council understands them. Again, that's phase two of the audit rate assessment. But these, this is water directly out of, let's go through the sources, so San Pat, is that the Mary Roads Pipeline?
Can you rewind the, I'm sorry, go back, we're on the wrong slide.
Yeah, go back one slide, just so we can understand this, SP, the San Pat Water District, go to slide 82.
Forward one.
There you go.
Yeah.
Is that the Mary Roads Pipeline?
I don't, I don't recall.
Okay, we don't, okay. Well, Selene's, what about Coke Flint Hills, is that from the Neowasis River? Neowasis? So Flint Hills is from the Neowasis River, so they just draw it out of the river. So the expense of the city is, what would be the expense? I mean, right.
The water supply, water supply cost.
Yeah.
And so there's certain, there's certain functionalizations of the raw water department, so to speak, within the utility that'd get allocated to this cost pool or functional cost pool. And so because of these contracts, you're having to, like, step through the system, you know, and, you know, unfortunately, there's nothing we could have done about this, but that's why we're suggesting renegotiation and do this more holistically rather than this stepwise, you know, functional contractual type of rate-making. Because you're segmenting at the function level as you step through, you know, not only to the Owen Stevens Water Treatment Plant, but also beyond it for those two customers that utilize the network.
Yeah, and Mr. McCartney, I think that the thing of, the point of greatest concern is, as Mr. Pusley just mentioned, is that we know and understand point-blank, this is the cost, this is what they're paying, and then we know where we have to go.
Yeah, and this is the actual cost, so there's no revenue deficiency, meaning the cost is below the, above the rate and versus a revenue sufficiency where the revenues are above the cost. This is actual at the cost.
Yeah, because, see, we're supplying raw water to Steel Dynamics at $1.25 a thousand, is that right?
They have a contract with them, but.
No, I think it's cheaper.
What is it?
What's that?
Step on, yeah.
Yeah.
Steel Dynamics has a contract through San Pat Municipal Water District, so that is who we.
I didn't hear the first part of that, step up to the.
Steel Dynamics, Steel Dynamics is a contractee of San Pat Municipal Water District. So our customer is San Pat Municipal Water District for that raw water. The others, Selene's, Flint Hills, we have individual contracts with those two companies.
Steel Dynamics, that's the one in Centon?
That's the one in off the Mary Roads Pipeline.
Okay, and we don't charge them?
We. We charge San Pat Municipal Water District. $1.3.
$1.3.
$1.3.
Okay.
$1.3.
Wow, okay, yeah. Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, I need some clarity here because the raw water cost from different location, from different water sources costs different.
Yes.
Is this the weighted average of the raw water cost for us?
No, for these contractual customers, it's the cost incurred to a certain point. And they were very specific, you know, in the contracts.
Okay, so when I look at the raw water, and it changes depending on where we get our water from, right?
Yeah.
So if we get 50% of our water from Mary Roads Pipeline, both phase one and two, this is way below cost. Is that, I mean, is that your understanding?
No, this is at the cost for these particular customers.
Okay, but like, for example, for, does San Patricio Municipal Water District get the water from the Mary Roads Pipeline, or do they get it from us at the Neowasis River?
With, excuse me, with respect to SDI, they get it from the Mary Roads Pipeline. They do also have a backup into the Neowasis River. But we're talking about the large-volume customer SDI, they take from the Mary Roads Pipeline.
Okay, going back to the San Patricio Municipal Water District, do they get the water from us from the Mary Roads Pipeline, or do they get it from the Neowasis River?
Again, they have two straws.
Okay, so give me, give me the, give me the percentage here. What do they mostly get?
Mary Roads Pipeline, that is their majority of the raw water.
Okay, so.
Because it feeds that SDI.
That's much higher than the 105, isn't it, from Mary Roads Pipeline, if they get them, if they get all that water from Mary Roads Pipeline? It's more expensive water than Neowasis River.
It is, because when you start looking at cost of water from a individual source, you have to see how much water we've taken for that particular year. That amount changes. What we're talking about, when we're talking about rates, is an entirely different way of looking at that.
Oh, I'm looking at cost coming in and cost going out, right? And revenue coming in, revenue going out, or what it costs us to provide that service, right? Last time I checked, and maybe I'm wrong, if you're going on a weighted average about how much water we get from Lake Corpus Christi and Choke Canyon, how much we get from Lake Texana, and how much we get from the Little Colorado River, I think it's above $1.5.
That goes back to whatever my operational costs, contract costs from the Colorado amount or the LNR A amount, which is Lake Texana, it gets individually different. So those costs.
Right, but if you do a weighted average, based on the percentage of water you get from each of those sources, you should have your total raw water cost. Am I incorrect by that?
It's not calculating a weighted average cost for these, they're specific.
But I mean, you're selling this water to these groups for less than what it costs us to get that water.
Because the contract says you're going to consider these costs. So you have to.
So we have to incur loss based on the contract?
No, you're providing them out of a certain source of water, of raw water.
Well, wait a minute, but you just, we just said they're not getting it from the Neowasis River, they're getting.
Well, they have, they have a pipe in the Neowasis River, but they're, I guess that's a secondary intake.
But they're not, right.
And so.
Okay, so, Peter. I want a very clear understanding of what it costs us for raw water to these individual locations, based on where they're getting it from.
We're going to have to redefine this one. So at issue, Andy, is we know there's three different costs for the water depending on the source, the Neowasis, the Mary Roads, and so on. So if they're pulling it from different sources, the question of the councilman is, how could it all be the same rate, $1.5?
Right.
You would think that if somebody's pulling it from the Neowasis, it's going to be.
Even if you did a weighted average of all those raw waters, I don't think it's $1.5, it's higher than that.
Right, we'll bring it back, Councilman. This one we're going to have to bring back with more explanation. It is determined by contract, but we'll bring it back just so we can keep moving forward.
I can't imagine, I mean, I understand we're, we don't want to sell water below what it costs us to provide it.
Right.
Because then somebody else is subsidizing it.
That's what's been happening.
Okay, well, you know, if, San Patricio is doing this to us, we need to have a conversation with San Patricio Municipal Water District about.
And that's why my earlier recommendation was to renegotiate these contracts.
That's, that is the point, Councilman.
That's part two, Councilman, because it'll be beyond this budget because we're not going to open the contracts right now. They have to be willing to open them.
Right.
We can't just say, hey, we're going to redo these contracts, so, but that's going to be part two, that's much, we need a whole lot more time than this budget cycle to address those. But agreeably, based on what we've seen, what Andy's seen, some of the rates in these, even in these contracts are too favorable and not favorable to the rate payer. So the subsidy happening even there in the contract.
Even if we sold them at cost, right? You know, you could make some argument for that, right? Because they have to treat it and all, whatever.
Yeah.
But if we're selling below cost is a problem, and I don't think any contract requires us to lose money.
But the contract is very specific because as part of this engagement, I had to read all these contracts.
The contract requires us to lose money.
No, it says you're going to calculate rates in this manner.
Right, right. So, Councilman, that's the whole point. That's a whole nother conversation. Right, right, so, so, Councilman, that's the whole point, that's a whole nother conversation, but that is the point, they're educating us on exactly what everyone up here feels, which is, it must be fair, we must know the rate, and then we must price accordingly, and it's that simple. So let's, in the spirit of time, let's move on, but one last question on that, those agreements, and we're going to come back, I'll.
We're going to bring those agreements, but what the council can change now is the, is the rates we have for industrial, commercial, and residential customers, that's, and there's inequity there as well. So that's, and we're going to show you that, we're just trying to get to it, it's in this presentation.
All right, let's move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so here's a public agency, and it's to San Patricio for their treated water, South Texas Violet, and then Port Aransas, or Nuasis County Water Control Improvement District Number Four, and so they're seeing a penny decrease in their raw water. Again, this was by following their contracts for raw water, so it's very set and rigid.
Can I put the, the presentation on the screen, please, I'm sorry, Mr. Pardini.
Page eighty-four.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
Go up two slides, please, eighty-four, eighty-five at this point.
Yeah, okay.
So this is the, the public agency rate payer raw water, so this is for the wholesale treated water, the wholesale treated network customers. Next is the raw water diversion. And basically, it, it, it's applicable to, whoa, it changed.
Yeah, that's it, page eighty-four.
Yeah, it should be eighty.
Oh.
Yeah, eighty-four, raw water diversion. So it, it doesn't apply to Alice Beville Mathis, San Patricio's raw water, Salines, Coke, slash Flint Hills. So it's applying to San Patricio's treated water, South Texas water, Violet, and then Port Aransas. And so this is for diverting raw water into the O.N. Stevens Water Treatment Plant. And here's the treated wa.
Okay, go, you have to hit two slides, Andy, around eighty-five, if you can advance, there you go, okay, that's it.
It's, it's not synced up with, well, it's not synced up there, sorry, that's what my confusion is.
It's synced up now.
Okay. Okay, so the treated water, again, San Patricio, they buy treated water as well as raw water, so this is their treated water, South Texas Violet and Port Aransas. And so they're seeing their increase to a dollar sixty-two per thousand gallons from a dollar nineteen, or forty-three cent increase. Again, it's following their contract.
It's contract based, Councilman, we're going to show you the price, it's more, it costs more.
San Patricio is really doing us a disservice here, and, or, I apologize, not San Patricio, San Patricio Municipal Water District is really putting the screws to us here, and this looks worse and worse.
It, it was.
I knew I didn't like that guy.
It was a settled, it was a settlement of dispute, and this is what all the parties agreed to and signed the agreement, unfortunately. But this treated water rate, you have to add the functions, and we're going to see that, they're not just paying a dollar sixty-two, there's other cost functions that get added to their rate. So it's like a buildup rate, and I'll show that in later slides. And so the last piece is, I already did raw water diversion, network, okay, so this only applies to Violet and Port Aransas, because they're using part of the transmission network, the, the pump stations, and the sort, the storage, the, either ground storage or elevated storage tanks, to provide, to receive the service from Corpus Christi Water. So next is the wholesale treated water and the treated water network, so it's, it's the, it's the dollar seventy-four that we're proposing for twenty-four for San Patricio treated water in South Texas, a dollar seventy-four, that's the summation of the other rates, meaning the raw water diversion, the treated water, and then the network water. So you add those three up to fifty-seven cents for diversion, the dollar sixty-two for treatment, and the diversion of twelve cents, you get the dollar seventy-four. Okay? And then for the treated water network, Violet, you take that dollar seventy-four, and you're going to add the fifty-seven cents for those, for those network function costs to get to two thirty-one. They're also going to pay for the public agency raw water rate that's, that's going to be a dollar two. So they're going to pay, you know, if they're network, Violet, or Nuasis County, or Port A, they're going to pay per thousand gallons on a volumetric raise, basis, three dollars and thirty-three cents per thousand gallon.
Councilman Bananas.
I'm, I'm sorry, so what's public agency water rate?
Uh, that's the, that's the, for the wholesale, it was back up. If we could get the presentation back up.
Yeah, but who does that entail?
It, South Texas for the treated water, San Patricio treated water, then Violet, Port A.
I guess because I'm confused, because you have there.
And trust me, going through this, earlier this year, my head was spinning, because this is the most complex rate making I've ever seen, having done Dallas, Fort Worth, Austin, San Antonio, Pittsburgh, Tampa Bay, Miami Dade, these are most complex rate setting because of these contractual customers that I've ever seen in my career.
Wow.
And I hate to admit this, but I'm almost sixty. And this is, I mean, it's, I've seen the, some electric rates that weren't as complex as this. And so this is very hard to manage, it's very hard to understand, it's very hard to communicate, because it's different, and it's all according to these contracts.
I think it comes from the legacy, this system used to be buried in the organizational chart. If I get an org chart from four years ago, it was way down below some other departments, it wasn't even, we didn't have leadership on it, and so a lot of these contracts, I think, slid through, and it's, it's very complex, you just heard him, it's, this is a, he's never seen anything so complex. So we're elevating this to a major utility. This conversation we have with the council is unprecedented, the amount of detail we're giving you. But we're going to get to in, in the years coming, some real equity and some, a better system. Just elevating it to where it is in our organizational chart, we give it, we gave it a name, we have a chief operating officer, that didn't exist four years ago, it was just kind of hidden, hidden in the organization, and we didn't even know how many customers we served when I first got here. That was the first question I asked, how many, how many people do we serve, anyway? It took the then staff weeks to get me that answer. So just a side note to say, there's a lot of work that has to be done, and you heard Andy, so there's a lot of cleanup work, a lot of consistency work. Today, though, just to remind us, this, this council has the ability to set the rates for commercial, residential, and large volume users, and we have a plan for that to bring cost for service in line with the real cost for service, so.
Yeah, and, you know, I voiced this to the Corpus Christi Water Staff about it being the most complex I'd ever seen. I voiced it to, to Peter, when he first joined the call, I think in May, and then when we met in person, I, on my first trip to Corpus Christi, I reiterated the same fact, that it's, it, it would be very difficult to manage these contracts. And that's why I read through all of them and did a summarization and forwarded that to the utility, because to get the concise, the, the really pertinent parts of the contract and how it applies to rate setting. And so we really had to, because I know, because my boss, Chris Eckert, he used to be the consultant to South Texas Water, well, I know South Texas Water, they've hired another consultant, she used to work at HDR back in the day, and so she will be reviewing this, because it's part of the contract, that they review the rate model to make sure all these contractual stipulations and covenants are, are met, so.
Councilman Presley.
Well, Peter, which lends itself to, it looks like on the surface, the reason why our residential water rates are so high is because they have in fact been subsidizing these contracts, which are completely out of line with what it costs the city of Corpus Christi to provide water.
I agree, Councilman, one hundred percent.
Yes, they have contributed greatly to that.
And we're going to get to that this fall.
So it was just easier in the past, let's just raise the residential rates.
You know, Andy said the rate setting in the past was the path of least resistance. So the easiest way to go to get money, that's what they did.
Yeah.
It's tough, this is tough, you're going to see the rate increase for large volume users, it's double, but it's the right right, the right price, it's the right rate. So in the past, the councils or the staff didn't even want to present it, let alone ask you all to vote on it. So the path of least resistance is just to slide in a rate increase for the residential customer and get through this. That's, I'm not doing that, that's what we used to do.
Well, if you look at, if you look at our water rates versus San Antonio's.
Yeah.
For residential customers.
Yeah.
Now, I realize they have their own water to, separate from everything, but still, it's almost double.
I, right.
For residential customers here in Corpus Christi.
We have some, some customer classifications that aren't paying the cost that it costs us to make the water, therefore, everybody else pays for it, i.e. the residential customer.
And that's why we've all up here saying, we want to know what it costs us to make a gallon of water.
Right, and even, and we're going to get to that slide.
Raw water, treated.
Right, even with the recommended rate that we have, there's still a, a, still some coverage from the other classifications, we're not quite even at a hundred percent of recovery. Yes, sir, we're going to show it to you. Go, Andy.
All right. So that's the contractual, and next is retail, and I've shown this slide earlier with increases, and remember, once we do all the contractual, then we have to determine those rates, we apply them by the, by the volumes used to make that rates, because rates are just a fraction, so we have to back out those revenues. Next, this next slide shows the adjustments that we have to go through. So all those rates I just previously talked about, raw water diversion, non-rate payer, or public agency raw water, the wholesale treated water revenues, the wholesale treated network water revenues, we have to back that out. We're only focused on what does the retail customers need to provide from the department's total cost of service that's derived from the budget.
And so, Andy, the retail is the, the.
Residential.
Residential.
Commercial, large volume.
Yes, this is our customer, this is the one, the rate setting you all can do, so it's for the residential, commercial, and large volume users.
So it's another part of the funnel where costs get funneled down. And so, in the past, our former consultant before me, he would just calculate rates based on what was needed to recover that total retail cost of service, and he never looked, they never looked at customer classes. Because in our last meeting, Bob Paulson asked me, oh, yeah, they did, and I said, nope, I, I, I was willing to bet a hundred thousand dollars on it. And I should have made that bet, because just to backstop me, in that I always like to have somebody else, because being that CPA, I like peer review, somebody else, and I said, and I asked Chris Eckert, who had reviewed the HDR model for South Texas Water, I said, Chris, did they do anything on the retail side based on, on customer classes? And he was like, absolutely not, never did. I've reviewed that model several times in my career for South Texas, and never did it do that. And so I should have made that bet, I could probably retire now with a additional hundred gur in the bank account, but here I am today. Anyway, so here's kind of the calculation for the twenty-four retail net revenue requirement, showing these costs that have already been functionalized, and so backing out these other contractual revenues to get to the retail net revenue requirement. Here it is for twenty-five, and so it started at one fifty-eight, and you saw that in a previous slide, one hundred fifty-eight point three million, it funnels down to we need from the retail customer class on the water side, one hundred and thirty-two point two million dollars. So we, we're doing all this work for all these contractual customers, but it doesn't amount to a whole lot of revenue, essentially. So once we've functionalized, and we've got the net revenue requirement for the retail customers, then we looked at the, the classification, and we looked at allocation factors. How is each customer class, inside or outside, how are they utilizing the system? And so, based on their total volumes, we, you know, divided by three sixty-five to get that first column, average day demand. And so we just took percentages for each of the customer classes, then to determine the max day demand, which is that fourth column over in the blue, we looked at the, the month of maximum demand, and I believe it was August of twenty-two, and then we divided that by thirty-one to get that maximum day demand. You don't have hourly billing data yet, and so this is a proxy to do that, and it's an acceptable methodology. We used fiscal year twenty twenty-two as the data, it was the actuals. I, I wanted to look at twenty-one and twenty, but that was during the pandemic, and there was such a huge shift in usage between the residence and the commercial, because if you recall, everybody was staying at home. And so instead of those commercial businesses utilizing water, a lot of them were shut down, people weren't going into the office. And so I did an extensive study when I was at Fort Worth Water, and we saw the residential usage go up and the commercial usage go down. And so I discarded those two years. In the future, you know, we will add years to it and look at maybe a three-year average and, and doing some things like that. But given the data, that's how we calculated that maximum day demand. And then you calculate a, a factor based off of that, which is the fourth column, max day demand divided by average day. And what I saw was very surprising, because the inside residential was at one point two-two, the inside commercial was at one point one-three, showing that they're more, a more efficient user. The inside large volume was at one point two-one, meaning they're utilizing water almost the same as the residence. You go down to the outside residential, they're not that big, but they had a higher peaking ratio, the outside commercial had about the same as the inside residential, the outside large volume were at one point one-eight, that wasn't, you know, four, four points difference than the inside city residential. And so that was very enlightening to me to see how the, these different customer classes, how they were utilizing the system. So they weren't utilizing it all that much different based on actual twenty-two. So here's just a, kind of a description of, of what I had just discussed for the large volume customers. Typically, they provide a benefit to the system by having a low maximum day demand compared to their average day demand, meaning their average volumes aren't really differentiating much from their maximum day demands, that's just called the efficiency and the usage of water, but it wasn't that significant from the other customer classes. Also, with the large volume customers and speaking to the operations folks about, you know, how the plants operate for, you know, average day demand and maximum day demand, it, it was revealed that during the winter months, the large volume customers, I mean, they're taking it year-round, daily basis, so it's hard to do planned maintenance on O.N. Stevens, having the one water treatment plant with such great demand. So they have to be a little bit more agile in how they perform some planned maintenance, because you have to utilize and, and perform planned maintenance on your water treatment plants. For instance, during the clarification process, at some point, you're going to have to go out, contract with somebody to get the plant sludge out of the bottom of the clarifiers, that's, and the only way to do that is to shut it down. Because you, you have a, a system that takes the sludge out, but sometimes it gets stopped up, and you just need to do that planned maintenance. And so that's why they're, they are a benefit to the system, but there can also be costs that they impose, because you can't be as flexible having that constant demand like that.
Yeah. Yeah, well, they clarify, the big clarifying concrete ponds at the treatment, you've seen them.
With the rake arms that operate in circular manner.
Andy said a lot, but the main takeaway is our large volume users contribute a lot of stress to the system. The whole system really, more than fifty percent of it, is to provide them water. So therefore, there shouldn't be a rate reduction necessarily. And then secondly, it was, it was assumed that there was a constant flow of water to large volume users, which if there is, then it's less stress in the system. But in fact, what Andy found out, that whole peaking thing, was they're very similar to the residential customer with his big peaks and, and dips in water usage, also causing stress to the system. Where your system has to be flexible enough to be able to provide that peak flow to large volume users. So the two notions that were debunked was, one, this, they don't cause stress to the system, in fact, they do, because we need a lot of water all the time, it's tou, tough to take the system down to, to clean it and replenish it. And two, there is no straight volume, as this peaks and valleys, just like the residential customer.
And based on the data that we looked at, I mean, I was just proven wrong, because I was almost certain that it was going to justify it somewhat, having such a lower volumetric rate, but it really didn't. This next slide's just of the retail, so taking out all the volumes for the contractual customers.
Let me, let me get, jump in here, Councilman Klein.
Yeah, thank you. Andy, I want to go back to slide ninety-three, I just had a basic question here. In, under the classification there, about halfway down, it's inside unbilled city use, I just needed clarification, maybe you missed, maybe you said that, I missed it. I was noticing that in particular, because the max day peaking ratio, ratio is highest by far.
Yes.
What, what is unbilled city use?
That means other city departments, so the water department doesn't issue a bill, and they don't pay the water department, it just gets absorbed by the entire system.
So it's actually city government offices rather than?
It's like our parks department, like the Parks and Parks Department.
And there's a lot of parks irrigation in that.
Right.
But again, that's a, been a pol- a historical city policy not to charge the other departments.
Alright, thanks.
Sure. As shown in this, yes.
They create the most stress, kinda like at my office.
So again, this is just to show how, how significant for the retail system that the large volume users are. They constitute just over forty-six percent. So that's almost as much as the residential and the commercial combined. There's a very small gray sliver, uh, for irrigation, and I was very surprised that the irrigation constitutes such a small amount. And, and thinking about this, you know, with the inclining block, you know, rate structures to promote conservation, I think people have gotten the message, so they're not irrigating as much during the summer, that, uh, don't frown at brown grass, kind of mantra is what we're seeing. So there's been a significant shift in the consumer behavior of the residents in that they're not irrigating their lawns as much. Uh, because it, it's so small, it's almost insignificant. And that was part of our recommendation to go ahead and collapse the golf course irrigation class in with the irrigation and treat them all the same. So just some, you know, just overall that there's a, a, what we call concentration risk and that you have fourteen large volume meters, and, but they constitute about forty-six percent of your revenues. And you have no long-term contracts for water service with these, uh, large volume users at all. Uh, on the electric side, they usually, uh, the electric providers usually have contracts for service, and there are none with, with, you know, long terms in there. Uh, you're having to add with the D-SAL a significant, uh, new water treatment infrastructure due to the demands, not only for, uh, the, from the large volume, but the raw water. Uh, because you, you have to run the, the water from the bay through the D-SAL unit in order for it to be usable raw water. And so it, it's, raw water's impacting that demand, the wholesale treated water, sand pat, violet, uh, and, and the network, which includes, uh, Violet and, and Port A. So they're really increasing, uh, that needed infrastructure, which is increasing the debt service. And there's this limited capacity right now on the Corpus Christi water system, so they're having to invest in this needed, uh, infrastructure. Now, if these customers come up with any kind of alternatives and then, and, and don't need the, 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 uh, water service in, in as great a quantities, well, that falls back on the existing captive customers, which is the residents and, and the commercial customers because they have no treated water alternatives unless they want to buy bottled water and use it to shower, to flush with. I mean, there's really no alternative. And so that is a risk. Uh, so there's a, there's a great amount of risk too. And, uh, you're not, we, we, we weren't seeing in projections a large amount of residential and commercial growth either. So next are our proposed, New Gen's proposed retail water rates for residential, commercial, and large volume. So first is the inside city monthly minimum charge. Again, I mentioned that meter equivalency, uh, unit factor. So we fixed those. That's why some, there's larger increases on a lot of the larger meter sizes. So we determine what the cost is for a five-eighth inch meter. And three-quarter, they're, they're usually equivalent meters, so they get a meter equivalency factor of one. Uh, one-inch meter is two-point-five times, and then five times for inch and a half, eight for two inches. And so that's how we graduated those monthly minimums. It's all based on the capacity of water that those customers could take utilizing that meter size. Again, this applies to residential, commercial irrigation, that golf course that we want to collapse into irrigation, and then the large user, uh, large volume user customers. Now, I talked about that ten million gallon for the large volume users, their first, um, block. That, they have historically had a, what amounts to a take-or-pay type situation where they pay a fixed amount for that first ten million gallons, whether they use it or not. And so, uh, we're proposing, uh, on the inside, to increase that to thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. And, and, and part of that is to converge that with the outside large volume, that we're going to reduce theirs down from forty-something thousand to the thirty-eight. Here's the outside of retail monthly minimum charges. Again, in two years, we'll come back, try to converge those. That's our, going to be our recommendation in two years, so that the inside and the outsider are the same. And again, we, we determined, you know, we kept that at one point five times the inside and then graduated that by the meter equivalency factors. And on the large volume user charge, we just decreased that. We tried to make it revenue-neutral and that it would be thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. So whether they use ten thou- ten million gallons or not, they pay that thirty-eight thousand. So here's where, uh, Councilmember Compos, here's where they would be because if you took that thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, divided that by the ten million gallons on a per-thousand-gallon basis, they'd be paying three dollars, eighty-two cents, just over that. And so next, we'll see on their volumetric, and I'll relate that back to their volumetric charge in a couple of slides.
Can I think we're off one slide, Andy?
No.
Goodness. So one, yeah, maybe one-on-one, is that where you're on?
So I was on the outside, and so I was going to the retail inside, which is that. Okay. So mine is totally off from what's being shown up there, so I apologize. And now we're in sync. Okay, that's why I brought my paper notes just in case because technology fails when you, uh, need it the most. So for the raw water, for all the retail customers, currently they're paying ninety-seven cents per thousand gallons. And, uh, that would go up to a dollar twelve under New Gen's proposal, and that would be for twenty-four and twenty-five. The inside residential, which has an inclining block rate, which means it steps higher. The more water you use at higher levels, the more you're going to pay. Thirteen years ago, there's a big conservation movement in the industry, and they really pushed, um, to have inclining block rate structures. I know the TCQ was trying to get rid of the declining block rate structures, meaning that the cost per thousand gallons, as you use more of it, actually decreased on a volumetric basis. They didn't want to see any more of that, so you saw the shift from decreasing to uniform and from uniform for residential to inclining block. Because I live in, outside the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex to the west, and I remember back in the late nineties, the, uh, the media was call, uh, calls, uh, calling the residents up there water hogs because we were using more than two hundred and fif- two hundred and fifty gallons per capita day because people were watering their yards. And since then, due to the conservation rates getting very popular in two thousand and ten, which you have for your residential, that gallons per capita day decreased to just below a hundred and sixty gallons. So they cut out a lot of that outdoor water usage. That's why I mean, that phrase, "Don't frown when your grass is brown." Uh, you're helping the water supply. So we, we're proposing to increase those rates. Uh, ten cents for gallons in excess of two thousand gallons, up to six thousand gallons for inside city residential from five-oh-eight to five-eighteen. Uh, the next block would be in excess of six thousand gallons, up to fifteen thousand gallons. So that would go from five-eighty-three to five-ninety-four, which is an eleven-cent increase. And, and just remember, we're, we were trying to set rates for two years. So we were trying to get as close to the twenty-five cost of service that we could. And finally, that end or tail block for, for usage greater than fifteen thousand gallons, that would go from six-thirty-six to six-forty-nine, an increase of sixteen cents per thousand gallons.
Okay, Councilman Pusley.
So you, you, so the user, if you're using less than two thousand gallons, you're not going to charge anything for that?
It's part of that monthly minimum charge.
Okay, what's the monthly minimum now?
Uh, for inside, for a five-eighths inch meter, it's twelve-ninety-two currently. We're proposing that to be thirteen-forty-four.
It's on slide ninety-eight, Pusley.
Okay, and that's based on the meter size?
Yes, sir, that monthly minimum charge is.
Okay. Yeah, so you pay, it's the cost for the meter service and then the first two thousand gallons, right, first two thousand?
So if your, the standard is five-eighths inch meter, and so your current rate is nineteen-thirty-nine from zero to two thousand?
That's if you're outside.
That's if you're outside.
Yeah, go back one more slide to ninety-eight, is the inside?
Ninety-eight, I'm sorry, I was looking on the wrong page. Twelve-ninety-two, you're going to go to thirteen-forty-four.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Commercial would increase from five-fifty-six, and this is for in excess of two thousand gallons. Again, that first two thousand gallons is included in the monthly minimum charge. Go from five-fifty-six to five-sixty-seven, again, an increase of eleven cents. On the inside large volume customers, which is NAS, Havelina, and South Texas Beef, they're currently paying three-ninety-four per thousand gallons. Uh, they would see an increase of eight cents per thousand gallons up to four-oh-two. Uh, the inside irrigation, um, currently, uh, beyond two thousand gallons is six-thirty-six, and we're proposing a thirteen-cent increase, uh, based on that customer class cost of service to six-forty-nine. And then we've got, we just, we're just showing the inside golf course irrigation, but those rates would need to be collapsed in and be with the irrigation and eliminate that customer class. So they would be billed the same as the inside irrigation.
Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you. What, what does that comprise of, the fi- the, your five-night, or your, for inside retail, you got the volumetric. What does it comprise of? I mean, what is, in your earlier, you, uh, one of your earlier slides, you had your raw water costs, which included the five cents, uh, for, um, water supply. And then you had, I guess, pumping expenses, treatment, uh, transmission and distribution. What is the breakdown for all of those?
All of those functions?
Right, so you have a total of five dollars and eighteen cents for two thousand to six thousand gallons, five-ninety-four for six thousand and fifteen, but, okay, so on the five-eighteen, what is the breakout? If a dollar twelve of that is raw water, what's the rest of it that gets you to five-eighteen?
It, how we allocate that is, once it goes to the customer classes, it loses its characterization. So it's, we're not doing that functional rate-making anymore. So it would be part of the cost of, of basically, uh, outside of raw water, which is a separate charge. I know administration, billing, metering, that goes into the monthly minimum charge.
Right.
But this would be like treatment, pumping, storage, uh, distribution, things of that nature.
So you can't break it down?
No. In California, because of Proposition Two-eighteen, which is a state government requirement, these tiers are, have to be tied to water sources. But we're not California, so it, it makes rate-setting in California much more, uh, difficult.
Okay, so I don't, I'm not sure what California has to do with us, but, uh?
But, but within the, once we have the customer class cost of service, then the design of the rates within the customer class, I mean, we're following what you had before, but the rate design is actually an art, designed to bring back the customer class cost of service. It's a policy decision.
Okay, so let, let's break this down in English. You have?
And I'm trying as best I can, sorry.
I mean, because you're, you're, you're basically telling us all that is bundled in, but we can't separate it?
No, it loses its characteristic.
So this is one of the questions that, that I, that we had asked, a few of us had asked, to see if we could break it down, so explain what goes into the rate. It's very difficult to explain to the rate payer, uh, okay, this is your raw water cost and everything else is bundled in here at the bottom. Right, so you, you, you show us a chart that has all the little X's on it.
Yeah.
Right, that shows what goes into it.
Yeah.
But yet you can't break it down into what those costs?
We have not broken it down, and traditionally, that's not really been done.
We, uh, Reba has a comment to make, and we may want to, well, on slide one-twenty-two, we have what you've been asking for, for the large volume.
For the large volume.
But go ahead, Reba.
Uh, because of the questions you had asked about breaking it down that way, Mr. Hernandez, we spent some time working with Andy over the last two days, making sure that we could, uh, provide that information. So we did it for the inside large volume and the outside large volume customer, but we, we didn't do it for every customer class. Because remember, every customer class is, uh, we're doing a full cost allocation by customer class now. So I could complete one of these for those other, those other, uh, classes, but the only ones we were asked to do for today was inside large volume and outside large volume.
So we do have that, so?
Okay, I'm, I'm even looking at those, and I, I looked at those, uh, but it, it doesn't ha- I mean, it doesn't have it on the per-thousand-gallon basis. You only have the, I guess, the bundled, right?
No, it's per-thousand gallon.
It says, there's a column for per-thousand gallon.
Yeah, if you look at, like, are you looking at one-twenty-three, Councilman?
One-twenty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at one-twenty-two.
Yeah, that was just the, look at, so like, uh, if you, this is inside large volume, so distribution, a dollar fifty-eight per thousand gallons, meters.
Diversion, water treatment.
Then you have raw water, raw diver- raw diversion, water treatment.
Network.
And then the network, the pumping, storage.
So how do you include stuff, uh, like, I mean, is it included in your overhead where you have the, uh, on the fixed costs, where you include all the, your debt service?
No, it's, it's, it's recovered by, you know, a combination of not only the mon- monthly minimum charge, but through the volumetric.
Okay, so you're just doing the cash needs basis here, right? So you're not?
Right.
You're not taking in consideration debt?
Yes, debt service is built in because that's one of the revenue requirements. And then we functionalize it, we functionalize it based on the projects and that debt issuance that it was, that it funded. And so we develop percentages for each debt issuance, as, as, has to be done for the contractual customers. And so we follow that same methodology.
Each one of the segments?
Each one of the functions.
Yeah, depending on the project, right?
It's project-specific. Uh, again, it's like a funnel. You start with the debt issuance. You have certain capital projects that were funded. What were the functions that those capital projects relate to?
Why not separate it out as a, as a, as a standalone, uh, line item?
Right.
To where you could see how much of your bill is debt?
Right, it's, it's, unfortunately, it's, we don't take it down to that level. You know, even with electricity, with the deregulation, it, it went from the energy cost, then you've got your wires for the T and D, and then your meter, uh, water just hasn't done.
Right, so I guess you're bundling your treatment, your energy costs within your treatment, within your pumping, your distribution, whatever.
And then whether that goes to, as a base cost or a, a demand type of cost, you know, that, that's handled in that cost, uh, in the classification allocation. To where, you know, it starts for the functions, and then all those functions go into base, demand, or customer. And then those are allocated to the customer classes based on their proportionate usage or the volumes for the year. And so it, it tends to lose its characteristic as it moves through the process, and that's just the process.
Okay, the, the question I have, the last question I have here is that you have various different costs for raw water.
Yes.
You have a dollar nineteen here on this page, you have a dollar twelve on the, on the previous page, and then you have, you know, obviously, the contractual stuff with much lower cost.
Right.
At that point. Can you give us the actual cost for raw water? What, what, what is that actual cost?
The whole?
It's on the customer class.
Okay.
The, the, for the entire system?
No, no, I'm talking about what it costs us, right? Not, not what we're charging the customer. What is the raw water cost us? And I, I don't know if you want to do it a weighted average, or if you want to give us the, the percentages and then give us the cost from each of the individual sources?
We'd have to add up all the raw water costs for the system and divide by all the?
Okay, well, I, I'd lo- I want to see what that raw water costs because, um,
And it's?
This is, it's confusing with what you're giving us.
Well, and, sorry, but I've given these presentations to multiple councils over the years and, and, um, unfortunately, some like to stay at the, at the higher level and not drill down to the, to the?
You're talking to the wrong person.
Councilman, this, uh, we went over this yesterday.
So just, eh, for, for, for our sake, in terms of understanding what the raw water costs?
Yeah.
Because, uh, I mean, that?
We can, we can get that for you.
Okay.
Just like, on the slide one-twenty-three, we broke that out.
Okay.
Now, it took, it took several hours to do that, but we're, we're able to do that, so?
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hunter.
Councilman Hunter.
Okay.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question, I guess, about slide 100. And again, kind of speaking to Councilman Hernandez's comment about kind of breaking down the means by which the final cost is arrived at. You know, for inside residents, the cost is going to rise from $5.08 to $5.18 for the first, was it, I guess, from the 2,000 to 3,000, to 6,000 gallons. Public comes to us and asks, why is my water rate rising? I don't really know what to tell them, because there's no breakdown of what constitutes that $5.18.
And it would be due to the increase in O and M expense and the debt service related to needed infrastructure. Those are the main cost drivers causing their bill to increase when you break it down. And in simple terms, because you want to, you know, relate that to the, you know, to the rate payer. They just want to know why their bill is going up. You know, it's not like a cell phone bill where, you know, there's a process. They just hit you with it, you know? And you don't know what all these additional little fees are on your cell phone bill either. And if you call them like I did 20 years ago, they can't explain it to you.
Yeah, that's, that's... It seems like we're having a hard time getting it explained to us right now.
Yeah, and I'm trying to break this down as simple as possible based on my experience doing this. And so, again, you're going down into the weeds, and I'm trying the best, because, you know, we've spent a lot of time on this presentation trying to explain stuff the best that we can. And, you know, you're asking for things kind of outside the rate making process, wanting, you know, greater, you know, levels of detail that, you know, unfortunately, we don't have to do to come up with defendable rates according to the M1 manual.
Right.
Or accepted practice, you know, at the PUC. Huh?
No, no, to that level.
Yeah, to that level.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilman Hunter. Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, yeah, y'all definitely do, y'all are all running good, huh? So the 375 to 536 difference on page 123, can you explain that?
Well, can we just wait till we get there to 5123? Yeah. Alrighty. And so I think I was, I had concluded with slide 100. And so the next slide would be the outside rates. And again, here's the volumetric rates, where we're trying to collapse those from the outside to equal the inside volumetric rates. And so you can see the, you know, the outside residents were paying less on a volumetric basis than the inside. So we're moving those up, so they're seeing a larger increase at each rate block in their rate structure. Commercial, they were paying less on the water side than the inside. So we're proposing to move those equal to the inside. And here's where you probably already heard, but the large volume outside, they were paying $1.95 per 1,000 gallons, and we're moving that rate to be equal with the inside large volume at 402. And we've talked about that already. The outside irrigation, they were paying less. And so the outside wastewater were paying more than two times the inside. And so you had this wide diversion, because in my opinion, the former consultants were just trying to take the path of least resistance in coming up with the rates. So long as it came back to that huge part of the pie that's retail, the cost. So long as the rates that they came up with generated that cost of service, they did not look at customer classes at all. And that's the only way that you can arrive at these rates, is by, or piecemeal rate design. Because they were all over the map, quite honestly. And so unfortunately, they left a huge mess for me to try to explain this to everybody. I'll be frank.
Yeah, yeah.
And so those are the outside retail volumetric rates. Next, we wanted to go through and show how the cost of service for these customer classes compares, you know, to their revenues at their current rates, as well as the revenue at our proposed rates. And so the first class is the inside residential customers. And so you can see their cost of service for 2024 is just over $41.5 million. And that equates, when you divide by their volumes, it costs, if they were just charged a simple uniform rate, no monthly minimum charge, no inclining block, if they were just charged for each 1,000 gallons of water service they took, they would, their cost to serve them is $7.04 for 2024. Again, their revenues at their current rates, they're about, they're about at their cost of service for 2024. At their proposed rates for '24, they're a little bit over their cost of service by 5%. But remember, what we're trying to do is set rates for two years. So if you look down below at the 25 cost of service, that's $47.6 million. So all those cost increases we talked about on the O and M side, on the debt service, that's why, and their proportionate usage of the system, that's why their cost of service increased to $47.64 million and 25. If you divide that by their volumes, it'd be $8.08 per 1,000 gallons. That's what it costs to serve an inside residential customer. So their revenues at the current rates that they're paying now that we went over is still that $41.438 million. What we're proposing, the rates that we looked at previously, those rates would generate $43.8 million. So they would be not at their cost of service, but a little bit below. And that's why we're trying to phase this in, and they've been subsidizing other customer classes over the years. It appears in the former rate model. The next would be the outside residential customers for '24. If you took their cost of service, and again, there's like 500 customers, the cost of service is $9.59 to serve them, without regard to monthly minimums or an inclining block rate structure, just their total volumes divided by their cost. Their revenues at current rates, they're below their cost of service for '24. And the rates that we would propose to move their volumetric rates equal with the inside, they would still have a revenue deficiency, or their revenues wouldn't be adequate to cover their cost for '24. Again, we're looking at '25, those costs go up to just under $840,000 per year, and that unit cost is $10.61 to serve an outside city residential customer. Their revenues at the current rates are way below that cost of service, and at our proposed rates, they're still under. Again, we're trying to phase this in over time. We can't get there at one time, it's just too much of a lift. So that's what it is for residential. For inside commercial, again, their cost of service, how we broke it down, was almost $23.2 million divided by their volumes, $4.99 per 1,000 gallons to serve them. Again, they have that first 2,000 gallon minimum built in there. It's excluding that, all volumes divided into that cost of service number of $23.2 million gives a $4.99. Their rates, their revenues at current rates are currently above their cost of service, and that's because residential are under and large volume are still under and irrigation's under. We're trying to migrate to get to, everybody's at their cost of service. Going to '25, that cost of service for inside is $5.70. There's about a $6 million revenue sufficiency for this customer class, and at proposed rates, there's an even larger. Again, there's an imbalance, we couldn't fix everything at this point in time. But that's the goal later on. For the outside commercial, instead of $4.99 like the inside, it's $5.52, taking their customer class cost of service. They're just about at their cost of service for '24. So if we were setting rates for one year, we wouldn't really have to do anything for the outside commercial customers. But again, we're trying to collapse those to pay the same, because they're currently paying lower than the inside commercial customers. So at proposed rates, they would actually be generating more revenues, but those are rates set based on the '25 cost of service. So if we look down below, again, we calculate that unit cost for that customer class, $6.23. Total cost of service of $3.6 million. So the revenues at current rates are below that, so there's a, what we call a revenue deficiency. But at our proposed rates, there is a revenue sufficiency, and it's beyond the cost of service. And we understand that, we're trying to take time to move it all. The inside large volume, the cost of service for those three customers is like $2.6 million. If you divide by their volumes, it's $5.17 for every 1,000 gallon to serve those customers. Their revenues at current rates are below their cost of service for '24. And based on the proposed rates for '25, they're a little bit above. So if you look at their '25 cost of service, it goes up to almost $3 million or $5.86 per 1,000 gallons. Their revenues at current rates are insufficient to cover the cost of service. You can tell that there's a revenue deficiency, but their rates at the proposed rates, they're just a little bit over their cost of service by 2.92%.
Councilman Hunter.
Oh, yeah, the next page. Yeah, wait for it. Okay, so here's the next page. With the nine customers that are outside, their cost of service that we've calculated for '24 is just over $44.1 million. If you divide by their total volumes, it was like, you know, 9 billion gallons. It comes out to $4.88. So, you know, the cost to serve them is the cheapest on the system. Their revenues at current rates is only $29.3 million. So there is a large revenue deficiency, meaning their rates are not generating the revenues needed to come close to their cost of service for '24. And so the rates that we're proposing would generate the $46.5 million. So for '24, there's a little bit of a revenue sufficiency. But if you look at '25, because of increased debt service, increased O and M, that unit cost goes to 5.56, just over, just under $50.3 million to serve them. Again, their revenues at current rates, it's $29.3 million. But the revenues at the proposed rates that NewGen's proposing would generate $46.5 million, which is still a revenue deficiency. So they're not quite at their cost of service by almost 7.5%. So.
A lot of information, but in the current year, Andy, so it's about a $15 million deficiency. 44 million, costs is 44 million, we collect about 30 million.
Yes.
14, 15 million under collection that somebody else is paying for.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so that leads up to 108, and that covers quite a bit of everything, those last few pages. And I was waiting for the end of this page to ask you a question. You've already stated it three times in this presentation, but I want to ask you, because I asked the same question a month ago, and y'all weren't here. And I was looked at like an idiot, I'll just be blunt about it.
Oh.
Are we subsidizing water users?
Large volume.
Large volume outside city limit water users.
In my opinion, the other, there might be some subsidization by the contractual customers as well.
If I'm paying more, I'm trying to save you.
But for, on the retail, the residents are subsidizing, and the commercial are subsidizing large volume.
Thank you.
And commercial, to some extent.
And I haven't voted for a water rate change in seven years. There's a lot in here that I think that y'all are hitting, some very good points. I really appreciate this work, because it shouldn't fall on the residential rate pairs.
That's right.
Why are these giant groups, I know Sylvia is probably going to think I'm crazy, because she thinks I always vote for the water rates, but I have never voted on one.
Yeah.
Because it was always on the residential rate pairs going up.
And we went into this with no...
Go back and look at my record.
We went into this with no preconceived notions at all.
DSAL, everyone's fair, except the industry has to pay 25, 35 cents more, somewhere between there. Can't remember. But I just want to say thank you, and I would like staff and some of the council members to remember that when I said we are subsidizing other rate pairs, to look at these numbers. Thank you.
Councilwoman Campos.
Thank you, Councilman Hunter. Yes, we've been saying this and knowing this for a long, long time, but I must also give credit to where credit is due, which is our city manager for finally tackling this elephant, you know, that has been in the room forever. And it is going to take, hopefully, I think this is making it simple for us, I hope. That there has been some disparities for a long, long, long time. And this is not even, like you've been pointing out, not even to where we need to be. We're still going to be subsidizing. But this is a step-by-step process, and I appreciate your presentation. It really is an eye-opener for a lot of us here, so again, grateful.
Well, thank you, it wasn't just my presentation. There's, it was a collaborative group effort, because I've been working with city staff, Peter's office quite a bit, budget on coming up with this and communicating. Because when I used to have to do the presentations when I was on staff at Fort Worth Water, we had to tell a story, because the city council there, they didn't want all this detail. They wanted the story, what's the main drivers? And we, we've tried to flesh this out as much as we could. We've had individual meetings with customers, and they've had public workshops. And so I wasn't part of those public workshops. I have been in the past in my career, and I can tell you that there's a lot of work that's gone on by staff as well. So we had no preconceived notions coming in. It was just looking at the rates going, something's, something's going on here.
Right, yes, that's what we've been saying.
Because on the water side, no way should outside ever pay less than inside.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
And the other, the other part is my fellow Councilman Hernandez, who, I have to say, you know, he does get into the weeds, but he does make some valid points. So I am grateful that, you know, he does raise those issues, so.
And I met individually with Councilman Hernandez, with Reba, and I told him right from the get-go, when he walked in with the M1, that I'm going to make sure if he's still working in, you know, as a council member, I'm going to get him an eighth edition of the M1. Because if somebody's going to take the time to read through the M1 and not fall asleep at night, that's pretty remarkable.
Well, he sits right next to me, and so I can hear him underneath his breath, I didn't know this, I didn't, you know, so, yeah.
So kudos to him, and we met with Councilman Barrera last night as well, so.
Okay, thank you, we have a few more, and in the interest of time, I want to hurry up, get through these questions or comments, and then move forward so that we can get through this by...
We just have a few more slides left.
Yeah, well, and a lot of convo.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. We'll do more accolades when we're done. Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Andy, I just want to appreciate this presentation, this is long overdue. Residents, as Councilwoman Campos has said, have been talking about this for a number of years already. It's good to hear these numbers put out here. But I want to make sure as well that, you know, if we're talking about increasing water rates to make them equitable in a step-by-step process, that we don't lose sight of the second, third, and fourth step. And so I'm really going to direct my comments maybe toward Peter, more so than you, Andy, that down the road, you know, if we're not going to be equitable yet by 2025, we need to be looking at that, making sure that that second step, and that third step, and the fourth step, if necessary, follow through as well.
Right, we agree, Councilman. You can see here, Andy went over it in the last couple of minutes, but the commercial account is subsidizing a lot of customers. So it's getting, it's getting the large volume stabilized in terms of rate equity. But we have to look at the downcharging a little bit, the commercial account as well.
Right.
The good news is, we have a five-year contract with NewGen, so Andy's going to be here for the next rate setting process.
Oh, that's good.
Yes, and we'll be working with them, because there's a lot to do, like I told the council here moments ago or hours ago, on those contractual contracts and just the overall rate structure, so a lot of work to do.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Councilman Pasley.
Just a couple of quick things, because I know we're running way behind. On page 103, outside residential, and I know there's only a handful of them, but why are we suggesting, and then explain to me again, and I guess you're going to go back to this fair and equitable thing, why are we taking a 36% hickey? and equitable thing, why are we taking a 36% hickey on water rates to the outside residential? Is that what you're indicating here, that in 2024, the revenue generated is going to be 36% less than what our-
That's at current rates, without any change, compared to the cost of service of $7.58, $8.63 in 2024.
I meant 14. Why are we taking a 15%?
And again, that was for '24, so we're trying to set rates for '25. And so it's trying to equalize them, so we're bringing their volumetric rates up.
Well, it gets worse than '25. It goes to 23%.
Yes. And there's only like 500 customers, and so it's to consolidate.
But again, why are we doing that? Why are we having them pay less?
Well, they're actually paying less now.
I mean, why are we having them pay less than what it costs us to provide them water?
Because we're going to migrate in and eliminate the inside-outside city limit differentials.
So eventually, we won't have an ICL and an OCL.
That's my recommendation, to be like Austin Water.
Yep. So that's going to be 10 years from now, or?
No, hopefully not. Hopefully in two years. It depends, of course, it depends on the appetite of council for that, but that's our recommendation. And we made that recommendation, you know, to the utility management and to Peter's office, without really knowing how it's going to be received, but that's still our recommendation.
Well, yeah, I agree with that. I don't think there ought to be an inside and outside. Everybody's going to pay the same.
Yeah, treat all customers the same. That way, you don't ever, you know, you can't be accused of any, you know, of discriminating against your outside city limit customers.
Right. Okay. And I just want to make one more point, and Peter, you tell me if you disagree with this. Just because we're going to equalize and adjust prices for all classes doesn't mean we don't need more water.
We still need more water, Councilman.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We're at 36, despite the storm in the Gulf today, we're at 36% of combined levels. So we're not even through the summer, and we're in trouble, you know? But we know the storm's coming in, but we do need more water sources. We'll be providing you an update tomorrow on the work we've been doing, on the four sources that we're looking at.
Want to repeat that.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean we don't need more water.
No, we need more water, without a doubt. We're definitely saying that, we need more water. Yep.
Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so going back to the inside and outside, I recall that we had an issue with stormwater because it was part of the rate with water, and when we separated it, we still had some debt that we left with the water, so that's why there were some differences between the rates in terms of what it is. But you still have a higher cost of service for the outside the city limits.
Yeah.
It seems like you would have some aspect of that as a charge for that, and not necessarily make it all the same. Am I incorrect in that assumption?
Well, we've decided to, what, utilize fund balance for that?
Forget about the debt, Andy, you're just talking about the cost that we see on the page.
Oh, the cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, again, we're trying to equalize the volumetric rates between inside and outside without, because, you know, as far as stormwater goes, whatever you do inside the city, because it drains-
No, no, we separated that.
Right, okay.
Some of the debt stayed with the water department that was utilized for stormwater.
Okay.
So there was some aspect of needing to account for that.
Have the lower, much lower rate, and so you've eliminated that, and that's what we're trying to converge those rates.
Okay, well, I don't know if there's any issues with that legally, or that, because I mean, I remember that was a whole issue with that, was because we were charging for something that they weren't getting the benefit of.
Yeah.
So if that's not an issue anymore, then we should be fine.
Yeah.
However, the cost of service is much higher.
Right, and for, yeah, for these two years, for, you know, a sample of 500 customers. So we'll take a look at this in two years and look at, you know, because part of it's the monthly minimum charge of having that differential, so we're going to look at it and eliminate it on the monthly minimum charge and the volumetric charge as well.
It's kind of, it's a little bit of apples and oranges, where you're using the current fixed cost methodology compared to the cost of service, maybe, I don't know, but we'll-
Yeah, and-
So are we going to be going forward, are we going to still use the cost needs or the cash need method?
Yes.
Or are we going to do something different?
No, cash needs.
Okay, so we're going to do cash needs going forward, so we're comparing apples to apples.
And that's what we recommend, yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine. Last thing, because I want to just make clarification here. The 25-cent drought exemption surcharge, it's for alternative water, not just D-SAL, correct?
Right, it's for alternative water sources, so if we pursue Evangeline's-
It is not earmarked for D-SAL.
It says nothing about specifically D-SAL. It's for alternative water sources.
Thank you.
Yeah, should be just for D-SAL. Ms. Campos.
It was designed for D-SAL. It was designed for D-SAL, and then a council came in and changed everything, because we always think that we're the smartest people on every decision. It was designed for D-SAL, and it got changed.
Okay.
My turn?
Ms. Campos, yes. Thank you. It may have been designed for D-SAL, but we missed some chances here in Corpus Christi for alternative water sources, I think four years back with Evangeline. So I'm glad that we still have that money set aside, even though, you know, I personally would not have voted for the 25-cent exempt charge, because that would not help the water users cut back. But again, back to my Councilman Pusley's comment about that we still need water, yes, we need water, but it's, is it industry that mostly needs the water, or is it the people? And you don't have to answer that. I know what the answer is, but I also want the public to know that it should not be at the public's expense, you know, for the handful of big water users that use most, you know, at least 50% of our water. But yet, we've been, and we're not even asking, that was the other comment I wanted to make. I know that there's some friction of the proposed water increases for our large water users, but like I mentioned to our city manager, we're not even going back and asking for all the discounted water that they have been receiving for decades. So, you know, when they do look at these increases, I hope that they will consider what this is going to do for the citizens of Corpus Christi, which is, we don't need to keep paying, you know, for their water. So just wanted to make that statement.
Good, and Councilman, we're going to show tomorrow, we really haven't missed the opportunity for Evangeline. Up until this last year, now they have developed a business plan, and they've hired some engineers. They didn't have that four years ago. So those things are looking better than ever in terms of having data and a business plan for Evangeline. We'll give you an update tomorrow on it. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, go ahead.
We're on slide 108, and it's Reba, Murphy. Murphy's going to go over this. So this is the, as I mentioned, at nine o'clock, we recommending a rate reduction-
Right.
-in terms of the rate increase for all users, and that's what these next couple of slides show. They also have the cost of service that Councilman Pusley and Hernandez asked for, and there's a chart that shows utilization by customer class as well, so, Murphy?
Yeah, thank you, Peter. And so like we were talking about a couple hours ago in wastewater, we are amending what our consultant is recommending to maintain equity in our water rates, especially for our residential customers. Consider it after city council and community input. So we're working on this plan. Developed a two-year financial statement to analyze the fund balance and the impacts, reviewed the current and future debt service, and in-depth discussion with, obviously, with Andy and Tia. So the impacts, it could greatly reduce our capacity to cash fund our CIP, known as pay-as-you-go, future proposed changes in fund balance and policy delayed, lacks structural integrity, and Peter described that earlier, and then our credit rating could be impacted, and I think we're going to talk about that Friday morning. So here's where we are. Raw water, this is across the board for all customers, and the current rate is 97 cents per thousand. We're proposing to, based on what Andy's study presented, a dollar and 12, and we're not recommending any changes to that. Minimum monthly charge, this includes the first 2,000 gallons for residential and commercial customers, and typically residential customers are in the 5/8 and 3/4 inch meter size as you get into the 1-inch and larger, you get into the commercial class and the large-volume class. So current is $1,292. The proposal from consultant was $1,344, and we are amending that to $12.92 at a 0% increase. And you can see how they modestly go up as you go through the various sizes of the meter. But residential, no change. Okay, so 2024 residential volume rate adjustments, currently it's $5.08 per, I mean, existing. The consultant has recommended that we increase that to $5.18 for the first 6,000. We're recommending we go back and we keep that at 0% increase at $5.08. Same thing with 6,000 through 15,000, and with the small, and also from 15,000 and up. These are residential volume adjustments. Outside the city limits, the current value is $3.11 per thousand. The proposed amend, the consultant recommended $5.18. We're recommending $5.08 or 63% increase. 6,000 to 15,000 is currently at $388. Consultant recommended $594, and we're adjusting that down to $5.83 or a 50% increase. And then 15,000 and up is $490. Recommendation was $649. We're recommending $6.36, 29% increase. Okay. Large volume water rate adjustments for the first 10 million. The current value is $24,202. That is a take-or-pay contract. Recommendation was to increase that to $38,000 per first 10 million. We're recommending that it stay at the existing price of $24,000, no increase. 10 million and up, $394.
I think we're on the wrong slide. Oh, there we go. Okay, we're on it.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry about that.
I'm not even watching that one. Okay, sorry about that. So 10 million, so the $3.94 and up, this is for above the 10 million, let's put it that way, $3.94 per thousand. Consultant recommended $4. We're holding that at $3.94 per thousand, 0% increase. Outside the city limit, current is, the first 10 million gallons is a take-or-pay of $40,382. Consultant recommended that that be adjusted downward slightly to $38,000, and we are amending that a little bit further to $24,000, and that's a reduction of 40% based on what Andy described earlier. 10 million gallons and up, $1.95. The proposal was to raise that to $402. We're recommending a 3.94% increase, 102% change.
So a little bit of a decrease there for the nine large volume users?
I'm sorry, yes.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Because it was $402, but it's $394, so even the large volume users under this new plan will have a slight reduction in the increase.
Yes, sir. Okay, this is just an example of a sample water bill. Residential customer, 6,000 gallons, basically their water rates are, based on the raw water increase, going to go up about 90 cents.
90 cents, that was $1.82, Reba, right, Murphy? Yeah, so it was $1.82 in my proposed budget, and because of the changes, we're recommending now on volumetric, it would be 90 cents per month increase for the average residential customer in the city of Corpus Christi.
And that's 15 cents.
90 cents.
No, I know, but 15 cents per thousand.
Right.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
So half the rate increase that we recommended.
Okay, residential outside city limits currently is $37.65. Recommendation was $46.43 for an increase of 87, or the amended was increase of $46.43 or $8.78 per 6,000 gallons. All right, so commercial inside city limits, 20, this is a 3-inch meter, 20,000 gallons, it goes for, current is 222, goes with amended is $316 or an increase of $93.44. Commercial outside, $250 is the current, amended is $413.33 or 162.92. Large volume, 10-inch meter, 90 million gallons per day, or, sorry, per month, sorry to admit to scare you there, per month. Inside city limits, $427,348, amended to $442,140, increase of $14,192 per month. Outside city limits, $284,651, amended, pretty close to the inside city limits of $443,110, increase of $158,459. All right, so this is raw water rate adjustments for, I guess this is South Texas Water Authority, San Patricio Municipal Water District, Port Aransas and Violet, and you can see how that is going, how that is changing for them, slightly going up, from $1.3 to, and so raw water, $1.3 to $1.3 per thousand, treated water, $128 to $174, and Port Aransas Violet, treated water from $171 to $231. So sample monthly charge, residential inside the city limits, an increase of $1.82. Original proposed was 40, or, I'm sorry, currently is $39.06. The proposed was 40.88, increase of $1.82. And then the amended was to keep it, or to move it to $39.96 for a 90 cent increase, and that's basically the water, the 15 cents per thousand on the raw water.
Yeah, that was, this is just a combined statement, so the water, wastewater, it would have gone up in the blue, $4.21 per month, but with the new recommendation, it's 90 cents per month in the second blue column.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Murphy.
So the, yes, thank you, Peter. So the, yeah, so the recommended increase for wastewater was $239. We're keeping that at a zero, and the overall recommended increase was $421, but we're only going to adjust 90 cents for, to cover the raw water charge. All right, turn it back over to Reba, take us home.
Councilman Roy, do you have a question?
I guess it's-
Get away.
I guess it's a good time to ask this question, because I've kind of been waiting for this period of time to get here. So the presentation that you gave, sir, was based on the other numbers, correct? So when we took a look at, in terms of your fiscal year 2024 revenues and that, and we were looking at the information in terms of the projections, it was projected on the numbers before staff came back and changed those numbers, correct?
Well, they didn't change the budget numbers, they just amended the proposed rates from what we had proposed, the revenues.
The revenues?
Yeah.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So that's what I said, your projected revenue for your fiscal year 2024 or 2025, what you projected-
Would be different.
Was different.
Yes, sir.
So that, your presentation actually, and I say that because if we went back, just not to confuse my fellow council members, and if you looked at your projected revenues, it's not going to be accurate of what we end up proposing right now.
Yeah, the amended proposed, yes, sir.
That's right. So I think that's important to understand, because also that was, led us to, well, I don't know how much that led us to looking at overall what our impact was going to be, because this impact now on this proposed rates are certainly going to be different than what the impact was under your presentation.
Correct.
Correct. I just wanted everybody to know that. And one other thing, let's see, what was the other thing I wanted to ask? Well, I'll leave it for that right now. Thank you.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question about, this is back on page 114, yeah, the increase, now this is for residential inside city limits, it's going to be an increase of 90 cents. ninety cents. If the, if the rates are remaining flat, I thought I saw that on a previous frame, what is the additional ninety cents coming from?
That's coming from the raw water charge, which going from ninety-seven to one-twelve, that's fifteen cents per thousand. So for the average customer, which this is based on, be six times fifteen cents, ninety cents.
Okay, so increasing the raw water charge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. And then back on one, page one thirteen, I was looking at the outside city limit. So again, for those that are large volume water users using more than ten thousand, sorry, more than ten million gallons of water, they're going to pay a rate now of three dollars and ninety-four cents. Residents are still paying, are going to be paying five dollars and eight cents, I believe that's still going to stay the same, right? So there's still not equity there yet, so there is, I guess, an intention to come back again in two years then to try to step this up still more yet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, I just wanted to double check on that. And then I also got a question from one of my friends who lives up in San Patricio County, wanted to know how these changes in rates are going to affect them, residents up there. That's going to depend, I suppose, on whether they get their water from the San Patricio.
Yeah, they need to check with their water provider.
Right, okay, all right, thank you.
Probably San Pat, probably San Pat Water District.
Right, yes, sir.
Go ahead.
So I'm, I'm on slide one nineteen, real quickly, or just quickly. This is just another summary of the customer by build usage. It reflects the same numbers, except these are not rounded to the nearest billion gallons. And then that was one of the questions that we received is how much usage there was by customer class, so this outlines it for fiscal year twenty-two. This is, also breaks it down just strictly by the broad categories of municipal and industrial, and I believe we might have these labels backwards. Looks like our total industrial is fifty-two percent and our total municipal is forty-eight percent, but they're labeled incorrectly.
The widget's right.
One more time?
The table's right.
The table's correct, the, the chart is not correct.
Industry uses fifty-two percent of our water.
The pie chart's not correct.
The pie chart's wrong.
Okay.
The table is right on the left, industry uses fifty-two percent, that's correct. We got to redo the pie chart.
We were asked to provide a list of our large volume wholesale and raw water contract customers by specific customers, so that's what this outlines, and these numbers reflect what you just saw in the, the chart that I first showed you by build usage, because we, we bill our customers by these particular customer classes. So that provides you with that, that breakdown.
On the left, right, Reba, so that's the eleven largest volume using customers?
Yes, and that is, that's our inside and outside designated such. And then on the right side is our wholesale treated water customers. This includes the wholesale and the network customers. And then our raw water contract customers in the lower right.
This is based on actual usage in twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-two?
Yes, sir.
So you can see Valero, Lindell, Basell, Sitgo, Flint, Calpine, those are the largest ones. And then San Pat Water District's a big, big customer as well, three point eight million.
It's billion, by the way.
Billion gallons, sorry.
That's in thousand gallons.
Three point eight billion gallons. Another eight point one billion in raw water.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow.
We're getting close to the end, Reba, go ahead.
I know, okay, let's go.
Go, Reba, go.
Slides I probably spent the most time on, too, so, but that's okay, no feelings hurt. This gives you a comparison between what we might bill an inside city limit large volume or outside city limit large volume for ninety million gallons for a month's usage, and then using the cost of service information that Nugent has provided us as, in an annual amount, broken down again into the per thousand gallons. And you can see that in both cases, the cost of service amount is less, is more per thousand than what their amended proposed rates will be applied for the ninety million gallons as an example.
Cost of service, so the five thirty-six.
Yeah, if you look at the inside city limit large volume?
Right.
It costs us five thirty-six per thousand gallons, but the charge with the revised rates is four ninety-one, so there's still some.
There's still, right.
There's room.
Yeah, but today, the cost is.
Today, well.
I didn't calculate based on the current rate.
Yeah.
This is, this is the amended proposed rate, four ninety-one.
Right, right.
It would be considerably less for the outside city limit customer, large volume. And finally, drum roll, the inside large volume and the outside large volume, the next two slides, just that additional level of detail that Mr. Hernandez had asked for, and Mr. Puzzlely asked also, dividing, they're taking the fixed costs and the commodity costs that makes up the cost of service total, divided by the number of gallons, and to match, that, that amount matches up with what we saw in the previous slide. So it just provides you another level of detail, also providing the allocation method used to determine those costs.
Councilman Barrera.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I'm going to go back to where I started earlier. Hold on, I got dual factor authentication here on my computer. So historically, we have not, man, we shut down here. What, what's our, what's our anticipated fund balance at the end of the, at the end of twenty twenty-four?
With the amended proposed rates, nineteen million, nineteen point eight million, no, that's wastewater, sorry, seventeen point three million.
Seventeen point three million for water.
And I believe these are the numbers we'll be sending you later today.
What's that?
We're going to be sending them the updated fund balances.
Yeah, what is the year two one, what would the twenty-five fund balance be?
It would go down to twelve point nine.
Okay, and that's after the twenty-five, that's after the three-month reserve? So twelve million after year two?
After the reserve.
Okay, twelve million by the second year, Councilman Barrera.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to pull this up, I had this already, and my computer shut down. Because I, I saw a number in here that it was like forty-five, and maybe I'm way off.
The estimated fund balance, gross fund balance after twenty-three is forty-five, but twenty point eight of that is for our continued, or twenty-five percent, so that would have left a twenty-five million, that's an estimate, going into twenty-four.
Okay, say that again?
The gross ending balance after our estimated expenditures for twenty-three is forty-five point nine million. The twenty-five percent is twenty point eight million, so that would leave a net ending balance of twenty-five million.
If you're taking out the twenty-five percent, but it's still real money.
I'm sorry, what?
Why are you taking out the twenty-five percent?
Because that's required by financial policy to account for.
Okay, so, but it's still the fund balance.
Yes, it is, Councilman.
Yeah, so there, yeah, there's, so there's forty-five million. And, and here, and once again, I went back to the CAFR, and so, and, and so the anticipated expenses for the water department, I, I guess, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not ready, but the last time I remember was like a hundred and sixty-two million?
On the capital budget, Councilman?
The expenditures are a hundred and sixty million.
Yeah, expenditures, yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's, that's inclusive of debt service. So, so based on the CAFR, actual expenses were one thirty-six for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, one thirty-five, nineteen, twenty, one forty. So I, I guess, if we had so much disparity, if we had so much disparity, then, then why is it that we're still operating where our revenues, our revenues in essence, like for, for the prior year was a hundred and forty million, for the year before that, one forty-nine, one forty-one, so, so we're still operating in a surplus. That, that's really my, I don't, I don't understand why it cost us more, and I know things go up, but during the pandemic, I mean, last year, we only spent a hundred and thirty-six million, and.
This, this year's budget included more expenditures than revenue. Our revenue for this year was going to be one thirty-five, and our expenditure is one forty-four, so we went into this current year upside down. So that's going to impact our, our estimate at the end.
Well, every year, every year, it looks like if you go back on the CAFR, our budget expenses versus our actual expenses, or there's still a disparity, probably about eight percent, in some cases, ten percent, eight percent. So I, I'm just wondering, now, I know, obviously, there's been, there's been inflation, there's been, the cost of labor has increased. I, I just think that we're, we're, we have this drastic increase that, that, that's going to be to, you know, I'm sorry, I'm like my, my good friend Mike over there, who's had a sidebar over there, is that we are, we have our industry partners, and what is it, and all of a sudden, we're proposing to them, you're going to have a hundred percent increase. And grant, and granted, this community, this community, I can't remember, I mean, we'd have to ask Constance, Constance, when was the last time we, we didn't pass a bond?
What?
It's been, it's been a long time. So, so the, the community has been a good partner to tax themselves, to be able to, to fund infrastructure. If there's a cost associated with it, then there's a cost. I mean, there's, the, the community has been a good partner. I mean, the last bond election passed overwhelmingly, you know, I mean, in the short time that I've been here, they passed overwhelmingly. Industry, during this coalition for this future water surcharge, including all our water partners, well, with the contractual arrangements, I think the contractual arrangements, it's only like five cents or ten cents for a future water surcharge.
Right, everybody pays that.
Yeah, so they pay that. Now, and, and industry, because of this coalition of industry partners that came together, they said, okay, we're, we recognize what the cost is going to be to cover the debt to be able to fulfill that obligation, so nine of them decided to, to charge themselves an additional fee to be able to cover that. So it's, 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 I, I would think that they're, once again, they're community partners, and they recognize that, that we're all in this together. But I come back to, we still haven't figured out what the cost is. I mean, you, you said that that's what the cost is, but it's just not broken down because it doesn't come up, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't reconcile with the CAFR. Because if we've been shortchanging everybody, or we've been shortchanging, you know, and, and I've always said, you know, why, why do we have to increase rates if we're not spending the money? You know, so, and then I understand, you know, the, the idea that we want to have a good rating on our bonds, you know? And then I have another question. So let's just assume that because industry decided to assess themselves a fee for this future water charge, so have we calculated what would happen if industry says, okay, you know what, I'm going to apply for my own permits, and we're going to go ahead and utilize this service and, and, and use our, have, have our own fee rather than pay this, pay this additional fee that we've been paying? We feel that it would be more beneficial to pursue this endeavor on our own, because we, we feel that we can do it bigger, faster, stronger, cheaper. Have we thought about if San Patricio, because the, the Evangeline Aquifer is in San Patricio County, if perhaps the San Patricio Municipal Water Department or, you know, decided, you know what, we can probably do the same thing for all our customers instead of just doing incentive? Have, have we, have we considered those scenarios?
Yes, we have, Councilman. You talking about the San Pat Water District in San Patricio?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, they have, they're, they can't, they have told us, and Mallory's here representing them, but that they, they, they need substantial investment in their own system, and they're not, they don't want to do anything with Evangeline right now.
Okay.
Their system can't handle it, because similar to ours, it needs extreme maintenance, millions of dollars of investment.
Yes, sir. Okay, so I know in these extensive community meetings that you had, and as I was told that you've had meetings with industry, have, have, have we talked to them about the oper, that if they said, hey, you know what, we feel that we could be better stewards of our own dollars, and we're going to go ahead and, and we, we feel that we can be bigger, faster, stronger on our own, and we, they're constantly investing in their infrastructure, have we, have we considered that?
We have, and they haven't really said it, like you're saying it, Councilman. We know that Valero years ago looked at using our effluent, but the city didn't pursue that. We're working with Exxon or Gulf Coast Growth Ventures to see if they want to pay for infrastructure to get water from Evangeline as an example, so those conversations are ongoing. I don't think any of them have said, hey, you know what, I think it's going to be a lot cheaper for us to do it by ourselves, so.
Well, that's why industry came to us, because they felt that as a regional water provider, it would probably be more prudent. The unfortunate thing is it gets politicized with us on a regular basis. Is there a possibility of somebody putting together a, first off, thank you so much for putting together that graphic, because I know, I'm going to point at Steve here and pick on him, when I first got here, he's told me, he's, I'm, because I'm the one that was saying it, eighty percent of our water goes to industry, you know, and so perhaps that was misguided or whatever the case is, but I kept using that number, and I wasn't, I didn't, never shied away from it. I never shied away from it. So now we have that information. Can we tie that together by revenue based on, because it's public information, tie that together based on revenue, based on those nine partners? I'd like to see that. And then what is it, so, so right now, I guess the thing is, is I'm having a hard time justifying, once again, I, I think there, there should have been a, for, you know, for the storm water fee, for the storm water fund, which we increased the fees last year, which took a lot of political courage, I know councils before were not able to do that. We had a ton of community input, we had a committee that each one of us had our appointees. My committee member didn't want to increase fees, and it was very divided, and there were a lot of meetings. Right now with impact fees, we've been doing that for three years and getting a lot of, a lot of input, and so I think it's something, it's such a highly, highly professional organization that is within itself a, 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 so integral to the community, and once again, having its own chief executive officer and having, how many employees, three hundred and nine?
Three-four.
Three ninety-four, three hundred and ninety-four employees that I, I think it takes a little bit more. Huh?
Five hundred and ninety.
Five hundred and ninety, thank you. So what is it, Reba, how long you been here?
Twenty-six years.
All right, okay.
Twenty-six?
All right, so yeah, don't say the decade is a gl, because Reba's been here keeping it together. So my, my thing is that you're springing this on us, and like I said before, what I thought would be three hours is now turned into five hours, and I, I think it requires a whole lot more community input. And how did we figure the methodology to do the rate adjustment? I mean, we paid Andy, what, three hundred thousand dollars, and now all of a sudden we're saying, hey, you know what, forget what you're telling us, we're just going to go ahead and come back, and we're going to reduce that.
I wouldn't say it like that, Councilman.
Well, then how did we come to that decision?
We.
What was the methodology?
Right, we, we, everything's consistent with what Andy recommended, and we, we dropped, we kept steady the volumetric rate, right, Reba, is that what it was?
The biggest recommendation he made was to normalize the inside and outside city limit rates, the volume rates, and we're, we're keeping that. We're just not increase, adding an additional increase to our inside city limit retail customers.
And what, but how did we come to that?
We looked at, we listened to the community, we listened to the council, we looked at a two-year financial statement, we looked at debt service, we wanted to see how much the fund balance could, could, could pay for, and not raising everybody's rate as was proposed.
So that, then, based on that, how much, how much of a revenue reduction was as an aggregate based on those recommendations?
You want me to do math in my head?
Well, you can get it to me, you can get it to me, it doesn't have to be right now.
We, we have those, that's one of the, some of the information we're going to send out later. We didn't, I haven't.
Yeah, how much fund balance we use, right, the two? Yeah, we'll get you that.
Yeah, and I just want to know how we figured that out.
Well, so if we look at the water rate, we kept the raw water increase Andy recommended consistent, we didn't change it, because that's a.
Well, no, no, I know what you did, I just don't know why.
Why? You don't know why we do it? Because the community and the city council, the majority of the council said, that's too much of a rate increase for the average residential customer, and so we went back and looked, how could we reduce the rate? Because the community and the city council, the majority of the council said, that's too much of a rate increase for the average residential customer, and so we went back and looked, how could we reduce the rate?
So, so you want, you want our industry partners, and I won't use my hundred thousand dollar number, let's just say, then bring fifty thousand of their employees in here, into the council chambers, to say that, you know, we're opposed to a rate increase for industry?
They're more than welcome to, Councilman.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I, I guess that's the thing, so you're telling me political pressure is the way I'm pointing, when you go, when you went to, when you went to these public meetings where individuals said, I mean, I agree, I don't think that we should raise our rates, and I can't justify raising any rates, because of the fact that you haven't been able to spend the money. So, that's the difficult time I have, so, yeah, so, okay, homework is, if you could, if you could basically tell me what the difference in revenue is by reducing that. And then, if that's the case, and here's the thing, I mean, I figured the same thing, unfortunately, with something else, if it's only a couple of hundred thousand, if it's four hundred thousand, in the grand scheme of this a hundred and sixty million that you're granted on expending, then why raise them at all? You know, and is that, and then we can ask Victor, what is it, if it's only four hundred thousand, or whatever the number is, then is that going to have a significant impact on our bond rating? Well, then, why raise the rates at all?
Yeah, Councilman, in the, in the wastewater, we were able to not raise them at all, because of the two-year ending balance is still sufficient. In the water side, if we don't raise them that ninety cents on the average residential customer, we'll be in a deficit situation in the second year.
Okay, I, you tell me that, but once again, I'm looking back at the CAFR.
This is, but, we're doing budgeting, Councilman, so we can't tell the future, this is...
I understand, I understand, I understand.
This is based on trend analysis in the past, cost projections going forward.
And we had another conversation in a different department, and I told you your methodology was flawed, and unfortunately, I'm just not convinced here. But, but anyway, you know where I stand.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, okay, so once again, homework, if you can get me that, the, the, the revenue based on the nine utilizers, and the increase, what the revenue is going to be, what, what the revenue is, if we want, if we increase the, the, the residential rates as a whole, and then what the revenue is if, if, based on the adjustment, and that, yeah, so that way I can see exactly how much money we're raising as a result of the cost increase. Okay, and, yeah, and then also the revenue, once again, the impact that it would be for the nine users. Thank you so much, Reba, I appreciate you.
Councilman Pesley.
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick, and, and Reba, I'd like a copy of that, too, I guess just share it with all of us. Yeah, that's good information. And I, Peter, I assume at some point, the, the council will make the decision of exactly what we want to do on these rate recommendations.
You're absolutely correct, Councilman, you, it's the council that has to decide the rates.
This is not, this is not chiseled in stone yet.
It is not, this is a second option, we've given the council consideration, if you want more, we can develop more.
Okay. And, and I want to thank everybody sitting out here, because I know all of you put a great deal of effort and time into this. Many of you were up here yesterday on, on your Sunday, working on this till nine o'clock at night, and Constance, I apologize for sending you an email at ten o'clock, or whatever it was, and asking questions, because I hadn't, I hadn't dug, I just stumbled through the part where I thought my answers were going to be, and they weren't there. And so, anyway, thank you very much, and I apologize for that. So, just, Peter, a couple of quick questions. You know, and this deals with, kind of with, while we're talking about water, water and storm water, and something we, we don't need to talk about today specifically, but at some point, we, we need to address, and that is, back when we courageously, as Councilman Barrera put it, decided to take storm water and take it out of the water bill, and we, we told people, we sold people on the ideal that, okay, we're splitting this out, and you really won't see a difference, because many of you have been paying more than your fair share on the water bill for storm water usage that you're not actually using. Right. But a lot of people are not understanding that or seeing that, and...
That was just, not to interrupt, Councilman, that was just for the first year, we, and we continue to show that five-year graph, that we knew there would be a...
Yeah, and I guess that's a part maybe I didn't understand, and maybe a lot of other people didn't, is that over this five-year period of time, we were going to make up the difference, and...
Not make it up, but have a gradual increase to provide the level of service that the community deserves.
Your definition of gradual and other people's definition of gradual may be different, but I think there's something at some point we, we need to have some discussion about, and because, you know, a, a past member, a very distinguished past member of this council, went on television and said, we are punishing these small volume users to subsidize large volume for storm water, and I thought our plan was to do exactly the opposite of that. That before, our, our residential customers were subsidizing large parking lot customers, because they had impervious surface and no water bills. And so if, if, I'd like to know whether he's correct or not.
Okay.
And so, and then finally, Michael, I'd like to know, in all of this, are we going to fix the low water pressure problems in Cal Allen? Okay, because that's, I mean...
Is it in the capital program, Murphy?
Okay.
Okay.
So currently, a large diameter water line is under construction, we look for December completion on that. We originally had a elevated, an elevated storage tank located at Inner Harbor, if and when that D cell plant came online, but because we're creating that as its own individual water treatment plant, our proposal, and I've already talked to the city manager about that, and we're already working on plans to move that elevated storage tank out to the Cal Allen area, which will help maintain pressure in that area. So, you will be seeing coming forward, probably in the next month or so, a contract for an engineering firm to do that design work, and hopefully, in, where's Drew, twenty-four, or Nick, you want to talk about, timeline on that?
Hi, Nick Winkelman, interim assistant director. So as part of the elevated storage tank project, like Mr. Murphy said, we'll move a water tower to the Cal Allen area at a pump station at Owen Stevens, and then we've got pipeline improvements as well. And that's in the capital plan.
Okay, did, did we get any help at all from the water tower we put up at Rand Morgan Road?
No.
Not, not for the Cal Allen area.
For any area?
So, and when I refer to the Cal Allen area, I mean, west of seventy-seven, north of six-twenty-four.
Trust me, all of us who live out there know where the dividing line is, but there is a Tolosa Midway and a Cal Allen, trust me. But the Tolosa Midway area is served, I assume, by the water tower that was placed at Rand Morgan and Leopard.
So the, the small tank, the one at Rand Morgan, is, is just too small. It, it provides temporary relief, but not, not as much as...
It just wasn't built big enough.
Yeah, it just wasn't built big enough. But the, putting the pressure-reducing valves, or the pressure actuated valves on it, has helped a lot.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all I had, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Roy.
Before I say what I was going to say, I know this neighborhood out there toward Tolosa Midway, near McKenzie, that would be a great neighborhood for a, a water tower.
Well, that's one of the things that we're going to be looking at, I mean, you have to have somebody that's willing to have that location close to their home, or close to their neighborhood, so we're definitely going to look at that, but you can see the, the water towers that we're putting up are, are very nice, and so with the great CCW logo, even better.
Anyway, I was giving Mike a hard time. No, one of the things I want to say is that, you know what, going into this, I, I can tell you, first of all, thank you. You know, whether or not you've come across a council like this before, you've come across one like this today, and in terms of just the history, and, and some of the milestones, I think we've, we've accomplished here. Number one, I feel confident that we've got a better system of assessment now. It sounds like before, and I don't know how many years we used this other consulting firm, but it sounds like we just have a, a better way or methodology in terms of looking at everything, and for that, I applaud you guys. The other thing is, is I think it's answered a lot of questions that we've thought about in the back of our mind, or talked about here from, from the deus, and said, we think that, you know, certain groups are paying more than their fair share. So, I know this, we spent a lot of time, and it was well-spent, and I just, at the end of the day, I, I want you to, staff, city manager, my fellow council members, know that at least this council member, I learned a lot today, and it makes me feel a lot more, I think there's some other things with the questions that, and takeaways, that we need to know, but I can tell you right now, I have learned a lot, more than just reading. I, I went through and read the material, and went back and read some more material, and I appreciate it deeply, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So we're going to wrap up, excuse me, but I think, and I want to thank Andy, you did a, you did a stellar job today, you really did. You know, I appreciate how much information was in this presentation, because it is getting into the weeds a bit, we are policymakers, however, more information is better knowledge. And today, any workshop is, 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 the reason we have a workshop, right, is to educate us, to make sure we understand it, to come back, there's nothing wrong with saying, well, this certain piece of information is not in this presentation, okay, well, let's follow up with it. That's what these workshops are for. I, I want to make it clear, there is no perfect presentation with every bit of information, because you have nine people, you don't know, everyone brings something different to the table, and it is a wonderful value to the table. So, I, I really appreciate what you've done today, we've spent invaluable time, we really have. This is also historic, and, and I know, you know, sometimes you get some, you know, hard knocks about, you know, some of the things you're trying to fix, Peter, and that staff is trying to fix. This is by far one that needs to be fixed, and it is being put on our hands. We are the council that are going to be able to fix it, begin the fixing, because we, we have to turn this tide. The bottom line is very, very simple, we can ask for all the numbers, and I'm all for it. Everything that was asked today needs to come to this whole deus, and I know it well. But it's very simple. The question was asked, Mr. Hunter has been saying this for quite some time, and, and Mr. McCartney, you answered it. Is the residential payer subsidizing? Answer, yes, that's it. Now, y'all, everybody, we can go into how and why, and per how much, and, and we need that, because we do have to answer to our constituents. But if the answer is yes, and you are our professional, as is the rest of our team, then we must move in the right direction. And, and moving in the right direction sometimes is very difficult, and it can be painful, but that is why we ran for office, to get things done, to make things right, and to do what's best for the quality of life and for the people of this city. So, thank you, team, you guys are wonderful, thank you, we look forward to all the information coming back. Peter, thank you, I think Friday, we're going to come back and, and finish off, and, and one thing I'd like to throw out there, that some of you know, that I've mentioned, that is going to add to, you know, in a positive way to the impact, is non-renewing that street fee of five dollars and thirty-eight cents, which is going to make a big difference, again, for the rate payer. I know we'll talk more about that on Friday.
Right, yeah, we will, we know we have numerous utilities, the budget that I proposed had a six-dollar increase overall to the residential customer. Many councils, Mayor, you and several council members have asked to look at reducing the streets fee, or eliminating it, not renewing it. In the end, there would be a savings to the rate payer of two to three dollars, we'll get the final calculation, but it'll be the reverse of what we proposed in the budget, by eliminating the streets fee, so there'll be actually a three-dollar savings per month.
And, and that's proposed, and I think, I don't remember who made the comment, but we do, we really need to look at it, everyone needs to go home with all the information that you got today, and, and we are operating. This is an organization that is operating, and there are operating costs involved, we have to make, we, we have to really think about and consider what you have proposed, you know, what, what has been amendedly proposed, and then move forward.
Right.
So, thank you.
Good, and Mayor, just, we did want to thank Tia as well.
Well, yes, and I was looking at Tia's, as well, the team, thank you.
Yes.
Yes, Reba, everyone, Drew, yeah, Nick.
Yeah, good. Okay, so Friday, we'll start our workshop with the follow-up from several of the questions that council had, and then we'll working, work on our capital budget, and then any proposed amendments as well.
But you're going to send, you're going to send the responses first?
Right, we'll send information ahead of time, we have several days now to get all of these answers, and then we'll go over it with the council on Friday morning, at nine o'clock.
Wonderful.
We do have a council meeting tomorrow as well, at, I was going to say nine, but eleven-thirty.
Eleven-thirty, we don't have anything before, right?
Nothing before, you're right.
Okay.
And we'll begin the city manager's report tomorrow with an update on the four water sources that we've been working on with the city council.
Great, perfect. Did you have, were you, yes, did you make a comment?
Yeah, I think, okay.
No, no, I'm talking about, what's that? You, you can come forward. I think he wanted to make a quick comment, one eleven, make a, oh, we cannot do it? Oh, I thought, okay, I'm sorry, I thought we could do it, we can't make a comment, yeah, sorry, yeah, tomorrow.
City Council, eleven-thirty.
Today you had the supplier's perspective, in the future, you might want to get the customer's perspective.
I know, sir, and I'm so sorry, yes, thank you, thank you. Okay, so, okay, we'll see everybody on tomorrow, yeah, yeah, so this meeting's adjourned.